Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We're going to go ahead and gavel us in officially here this morning for the clerk. I'm going to start doing the time first. By the time we go through everything, it seems that time elapses very quickly. So it's 8:32 a.m., and I would like for everybody to please rise as we call for invocation. We are joined today by Pastor Carver. We welcome him. We ask you after invocation to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and also to our Texas flag. Pastor, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, guys, all for serving and putting up with politics that you guys are involved. And it's always good to bring in the eternal when we work on the temporary. So let's go ahead and bow our heads and ask God to be involved in this. Lord, we do thank you that we can be here, Lord, that you have brought order in this country by your principles established at the beginning, God, that we can gather together and civilly bring to agreement, Lord, those things that matter here in the temporary. And, Lord, we just pray that even the temporary would affect the eternal, and the choices made here, Lord, would be done with your wisdom and with your blessing. And, Lord, we thank you for Texas. We thank you for Corpus. We thank you for the unity of the churches, the body of Christ, the peace in times of chaos that we've been able to have here, Lord. And we are so thankful. So I just pray again, your blessings upon this meeting, Lord, and just further meetings going forward, Lord, that your will would be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Again, welcome to everybody as we begin our meeting. It is February 2nd. It's Wednesday, 2022. Yesterday was 2-2-2-2. But I'm sorry, today is 2-2-2-2. I said yesterday. Forgive me. So maybe, as I said, there's something to that. Please note for the record, for the clerk, that we are in the third floor of Commissioner's courtroom in Oasis County Courthouse 901 Leppard. Again, I noted the time when we gavelled in at 8:32 a.m. I do certify that we have a quorum present, Commissioner Hernandez, Commissioner Gonzalez, Commissioner Chesney, and myself. I'm going to look to see if Commissioner Modis is online. Not yet. If he joins, we'll make that addition to the record. At this time, I'll direct your attention to Rebecca, who will give you a safety briefing. I ask that you give her your attention for these important comments.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, February 2nd, is being held in the Oasis County Commissioner's courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium, past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed controls are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be calling. Participants CPR-certified in attendance will be there. Remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot. Across the street, it is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Oasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Michael. Our safety topic for the month of February is winter fatigue. The low visibility and dark evenings can cause worker fatigue. While this is a year-round concern due to long hours, irregular working patterns, or shift work, it is often amplified by poor weather and the lack of sunlight. The short days also mean that it may be harder to get up in the mornings, making your staff feel rushed and disoriented when they get to work. Winter fatigue shouldn't be overlooked because it can cause a decrease in hazard perception, productivity, and adherence to safety measures. It can also affect workers' mental health. Fight fatigue with quality sleep. Make the room as dark and quiet as possible. Ask family and friends and roommates to do not disturb you while you are sleeping. Develop ways of unwinding after and afternoon or night shift. Take a relaxing shower or bath before you go to bed. As always, if you find yourself unable to sleep, consult a doctor. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today. Thank you.
Thank you. As we progress into general information reports, we're going to talk more about that winter weather. But for now, I'll ask, and she's already here, Belinda, to bring the public comment. I'm showing 11 individuals who are here as residents and others to share their public comments. I'll just call you in the order that you have signed up. For those online, I always announce that if you wish to make a public comment, we do so in the fashion of raising the icon of the virtual hand. Connie Morgan Monitoring will let us know that we have somebody who wishes to make comment, and we will call upon you at the appropriate time. Let me also suggest that we don't often remind everybody, but it's a good thing to do, is that we're trying to get more technologically savvy and sophisticated here. There's going to be, at some point, I don't know if it's going to be up today, but in the future, it is up today. You're going to see, you know, clocks that will sort of do a countdown. Anybody that knows me knows how much I value and appreciate the public comment process. It's the one time, I think, that it really represents that the people's house is this courtroom. And so I'm not going to be overly rigid, but I do want you to respect the fact that there's many people who want to share their comments. And so if you'll just be mindful, please, that that clock is there to support everybody's opportunity to speak today, that would be of great appreciation to the court. Also, a reminder that during public comment, we don't visit back with you, but don't take that as a sign that we're not completely absorbing and listening everything that you say. If there is an agenda item that's related to your particular comment, we always say, hey, please, we invite you to stay. The court might be able to address some of your issues at that time. With that, we'll begin. Brandon, is it Bignell or Bignell? Brandon, welcome.
Thank you for your time today.
Yes, sir. If we could just ask you to raise, it's only for the purposes of online, I can hear you fine. Thank you.
My name is Brandon Bignell. I'm the president of Russell Marine out of Channel View, Texas. Wanted to make a couple of comments today. Russell Marine sent correspondence last week to the court after the recommendation of CSP 3187.21 for the Bob Paul Peer Demo, where it was recommended that J.M. Davison would get the award. Our correspondence protested that recommendation. I just wanted to kind of fill in a couple of things about who we are, what we do down here in the area. We feel the recommendation of the court wasn't made within the confines of the bid documents. We feel preferential bias was given to J.M. Davison due to their locality of their home office. With that being said, we were approximately $100,000 low on the bid, which was a CSP, which we understand. But the program manager, L.A.N., recommended us as the award. And then behind closed doors, when the court came back, they recommended J.M. Davison. With that being said, prior to the award of this project, we want you guys to know that we feel we fulfilled all the requirements in the bid documents to be awarded the project. Our price was low. We have the experience to do the work. We have great references that were provided to the court to call and call upon, and we've done a lot of work down here in the area for 10 to 11 years. Although we're not local, since our inception, we've done over $100 million worth of work in Oasis County and Corpus Christi. Some of that public, some of that private, but that work has been done here in the area. Our team's housing the area. They spend money locally. They support local businesses. We utilize local businesses, vendors, subcontractors, to help us complete all that work. You know, so we feel that although not local, about 25% of our revenue since our inception has been in the area, even though we're located out of Houston. So with that being said, you know, we would just like to let you know that we're currently in the area. We have about $15 million worth of work going with local businesses. Our guys are living here in the area, paying, you know, housing, eating at local restaurants. And we hope that the court will see that just because we're not local doesn't mean that we don't influx money into the community as a contractor from Houston, Texas. I really don't have much else to say, but I appreciate your time, and we hope you consider our comments that we've given here today to hopefully change the award from J.M. Davison to Russell Marine. No offense to J.M. Davison, they're good guys, good people, but in the confines of the bid, we feel we were the successful bidder. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Margaret Baldwin will be next, followed by Ronnie Baker.
We would ask if we could defer the items.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Judge, are we going to advance them? Because that could be three o'clock.
I will. I will advance it. I will. I have one other item, Court, to advance in front of game room regulation items, but if you'll indulge me, we'll get you to the front of the line. Just for the purposes of announcement, that's going to be Margaret Baldwin, Ronnie Baker, Suzanne Taylor, Betty Sheets, and is it Tamara?
Yes.
Okay. Is it Brennan? Tamara Brennan. How about Gary Valencia? Are you hearing the same item, sir?
I'm basically here for the.
Okay, so I'll put you as C2 as well.
Good.
Yes. All right. And now I'll call, how about Norman? Is it Morton?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Sorry. These are good for up close and really bad for far. Norman, welcome.
Good morning, ma'am. My name is Norman Morton. I'm an investigator with the District Attorney's Office. And basically, I just have a short letter I'm going to read to you, because I get sidetracked sometimes. I'm a little squirrel. Okay? The letter is in reference to a liability risk and a lack of concern on vehicle maintenance for the District Attorney's Office. For almost two years, the District Attorney's Office, namely the investigators, have petitioned for proper working vehicles to allow us to perform our jobs. The vehicles assigned to this office were hand-me-downs. What I mean by hand-me-downs, they were old patrol vehicles with already 60,000, 70,000 miles on them. I have tried addressing this issue as professionally as possible, but nothing seems to work. I've taken the issue up with both the District Attorney and the First Assistant District Attorney, who have brought it up before, and nothing seems to be done about this. I understand the county is currently trying to replace and update its fleet. I would like to again state that our office seems to be passed over for reasons I do not understand, and the problem with these vehicles only continue to grow and cost more each year. We are told that new vehicles were coming to this office. This was almost two years ago. Then in July, we were told vehicles were coming. Again, nothing was done. Then we were told they would be here by December. Again, nothing was done. I've submitted reports to Mike Robinson about the cost of these vehicles. To repair one vehicle alone, which was mine, was going to be almost $6,000. The vehicle alone is only worth about $4,000, maybe at best. We had another vehicle that was given to us that was a hand-me-down, and we had to spend another $4,000 to fix that up. There are still repairs that need to be done on these vehicles. The cost, we estimated, I just, with the mechanic I had him running through, was probably about $25,000 for four of these vehicles. This is not good use of taxpayer money. This is not good use of these vehicles. We can't even go out of town to pick up witnesses or victims for court trials or anything else because we're afraid these vehicles won't make it. My concern is, when are we getting the vehicles, and why is there such a delay? I mean, I understand the county has issues, and I understand there's issues with the vehicles. But the problem is, when you're spending more money than a vehicle is worth, that's not very responsible spending, and it's not very smart, especially if we're having to transport someone and something happens to that vehicle. The liability now falls on the county. And what I mean by liability, I was sued once before when I was with the police department for a vehicle accident, and they subpoenaed all the vehicle maintenance records. Luckily, everything was intact, but that's what they're going to do. They're going to attack the vehicle maintenance, they're going to attack how well they were handled, where they were before. When you have an old patrol vehicle that has 100,000 miles on it, that's like having a vehicle with 300,000 miles on it. Yet still, we're being told the vehicles are on hold. We can't do our jobs if we don't have these vehicles. That's like giving us a gun but no bullets, giving us a pepper spray with nothing in it. If I don't have a car, I can't do my job, and I'm just concerned that this is taking way, way too long.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't know if there's any agenda item on this, but as I said, rest assured that we will respond when we can respond, which is after this meeting. At this time, I will call Angelica Hernandez.
I would defer. I'm here on 3C2.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Rolando Garza, you're also on C2 on the game rooms.
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Judge, I have an appointment, so I wanted to speak before the presentation.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. Rolando Garza, I've been a citizen here for 62 years in Oasis County, Corpus Christi. I was mulling through y'all's agenda, and I ran across the C2. I kind of saw some of the comparisons that other cities have taken for ordinances in regards to game rooms. I don't know how Oasis County is going to address this, but if it's, my concern is safety. I'm sure that's your concerns as well, how you put the ordinance together. You have a lot of players involved with law enforcement, the owners and operators of these game rooms. I'm in support of a strong, stringent ordinance and allow them to conduct business in Oasis County, and I just hope and pray that y'all can hammer this ordinance out, correct me in a proper way, learn from the other cities' mistakes, what they have and have-nots, that we put together something that's solid, that you guys, I mean, ladies and gentlemen, our commissioners are right, you guys, that we can all support, live with, and that we can, that is palatable. I think that they're legitimate. The operators want to do business in our community, and with COVID and short of jobs and stuff like that, I think whatever we can add, a piece to the community, I think it's always good, as long as there are stringent rules that are followed. And I love the idea about working with CCPD and partnering some money with them to help enforce the rules. And I think that that's gracious of the county to do that, you know, to help work with our chief, Marco. That's something that hadn't been done in the past, and I think that's great for enforcement. So that's an added bonus and plus on y'all's behalf and just your thinking process moving forward to gain support for the game rooms. And that's what I was here to speak about, is please support the game rooms, put together solid ordinance, work with CCPD, local law enforcement, to make it workable, make it happen, right? Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it very much. And before I go, you're always welcome. You have an open door at Magic 104.9 for the only Mexicano, bilingual, Spanish, right? Talk XoHo to come on and share what's happening at the county and some of your agenda items, some things that are happening now, currently, the future, things that you're addressing. Lobed Broadcast is the only minority radio and TV station in all of South Texas. We have 10 sister stations in Victoria, Houston, San Antonio, and Austin, and we are the only local one here, so we encourage you to come over and join us and share your thoughts with the entire community about what's going on in your jobs here at Oasis County. And we appreciate your service. We thank you so much, and it's nice to see y'all anytime. Thank you so much. God bless.
Thank you. David Loeb, I'm going to ask if you would like to be now or later. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'm here today to talk about what to do with the federal aid money you've gotten. About a month ago, I started talking to Judge Klein, who has been working on your jail overpopulation issue. And she talked about an idea that had been kind of going around the county of finally starting to fund mental health services and diversion to keep people out of your jail. I started working on this when I was at the city, when I found out that 25% of CCPD arrests, and therefore 25% of your inmates, were mentally ill homeless people that were just getting arrested over and over and over again. And so one of the issues with that problem has always been that we needed to summon the will to have, to raise the money to actually build a facility where we could take these people other than the jail. The jail's not a safe place for them, for either them, the other inmates, or for the people who work for you in the jail. And so I'm here, as you're kind of beginning that discussion, to just really encourage you to take a section of that money and put it aside for mental health treatment, particularly with people who would otherwise be your jail population. I realize, you know, it's a big slug of money, and there's a ton of ideas because it's, hey, what's everything in the last 20 years we haven't had the money for at the time, and now we've got some money. I think what's special about this one is not only will it help people, but if we can really work this problem and reduce it, reduce the jail population, that saves you money. You know, I, the judge asked me to go start talking to folks at the city about this, because it's definitely a place where both organizations can work together. And I ended up talking to the judge's opponent in the last election, and the first thing out of his mouth was, it costs $81 a day to house somebody in jail. He said, this is an incredibly important issue, and he wants to work on it with you all. And so I think as I've, as I've talked to people about this, this is one of those issues that everyone's in favor of, but it's just one of those things that needed a tranche of money to help solve. And so as you're having this discussion about where to spend, I really hope that you invest in our community and invest in this project, because I think it will pay dividends. It's not something where you just pay for it and then you have to pay to maintain it. It's something where you can pay for it and then reap the benefits of the cost savings in the future. And so I'd hope that you'll keep an open mind and an open heart to that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That concludes all of the public comment that I have signed up. Deputy, anybody else waiting in the hallways to come in? Are we good? I see nobody online, but Connie, would you do a complete check for me? I have a lot of people online today. Okay, then, hearing none, I'll close the public comment, but of course, we have a good group of those that will be making comment on an agenda item that's listed in your packet as C2. I did make one allowance, and that is we have somebody who's going to catch an airplane but is representing Spectra Global Management from Denver, Colorado, here with Jason Green. And they, could I bug you to tell me which item that is for the clerk?
It's under purchasing, it's F1.
Oh, purchasing. Okay, got it. F1. Commissioners, I would like to, out of courtesy, advance item F1, and then I promise we'll go to the game room discussion after that. If somebody would let Chief Cook know, that way he'll be ready. This will be only one item prior to his presentation. This is discuss and consider authorizing execution of agreement with Spectra Venue Management. This is RFP number 3159-21, Oasis County, Richard Portred Regional Fairgrounds and Management Services. Jason, welcome. Keller, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you introduce who we have and give us a little bit of background? And then I will ask Purchasing to introduce the, he's online, by the way. Michael Robinson is online, so we'll ask him to kind of introduce the item, but give us a little background about Spectra and your role here today.
Sure, I can take this. Judge, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in person today, and certainly the courtesy. I'm in town for a little while, so, but I appreciate you moving.
Oh, you shouldn't have said that. You'll take a chair in the back, sir.
Yeah, so I'm certainly excited to be with you here today. First and foremost, to thank you for your partnership over the last 15 years with Spectra. We have enjoyed our management out at the fairgrounds. Obviously, Jason Green, our general manager here to my right, has been our leader out there for quite some time, and we're proud of not only the events we bring in, but the community, you know, service we've done over the years with disasters and COVID relief. So before you today is an extension of our existing contract. I know there's been some discussion, and we've enjoyed the process with the County Attorney's Office as well as procurement to this point since the RFP. And I think we're at a point where we can make a decision. You know, Spectra is an organization is based in Philadelphia. We operate in over 180 different venues across North America with our three divisions, which are food service, venue management, and partnerships. You know, at the fairgrounds, we deploy all those services for you all and leverage all of that scope across the country for your benefit at the end of the day. You know, we're stewards of your funds, and we hope we represent you in the best way we can every day. So before you, you know, during the RFP process, we did bid a five-year plus two one-year extensions. That would be our preference, and as you see on the agenda item, there is some cost savings with that potentially. But I'll let Michael talk to that. But again, we appreciate your partnership. Thank you for the collaboration on getting here to today. And certainly, if there's any other pieces to the contract or about us as an organization, we're happy to answer that while we're here today as well.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Michael Robinson, Purchasing Agent, to unmute and lay out this particular RFP and the recommendation by Purchasing. Good morning, Michael. Give him just a moment.
Away from the, there he is.
Yes, there he goes. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. I might have missed what y'all just are asking for. Could y'all please restate what you need me to comment on?
Just, we're just ready to hear your presentation and recommendation on the execution of the agreement with Spectra Management. It's the RFP 3159-21. It's basically for management services, and Keller's just giving us a little bit of a background, and we're pitching to you now.
Okay, thank you very much. We've worked really hard with Charles and Keller and Jason, a couple of months, to iron out some idiosyncrasies with regard to short and long-term use of the facility there. They provided a bid which indicated, and it's there in your agenda item, of the base management fee was proposed at $145,000. There are two options for the court to consider. Both options have the same base management fee. The differences are primarily in the length of the term. Their option one has a five-year initial period with two one-year renewals, and option two has a three-year contract with two one-year renewals. Under option one, there is a capital investment proposed of $100,000 in year one and $75,000 in year two. And then, under option two, there is a one-time capital investment amount of $110,000. And then with regard to the incentive fee, we worked with Charles to structure an incentive-based program where if Spectra were to hit certain elevated milestones, they would qualify for an increased amount of an incentive fee. But that incentive fee in option one is capped at 35% of the base management fee over that five-year period. And then in option two, that base, that incentive fee is capped at 50% of the base management fee. And so my recommendation to the court, based on the fact that this item has gone out for bids several times over the last decade, and in each case, Spectra has either been the only bidder or the awarded bidder. And in this most recent bid, they were the only bidder. And if, if this is going to continue to be the case, option one, although it has a long initial term period of five years, does provide the county with the best rate on the base management fee incentive fee cap being 35%, which could save us $108,750 over the course of the first five years. Whereas in the option two with the three-year plus two, we don't have that same cap, that cap. uh, we don't have that same cap. That cap goes up to 50% of the base management fee. So typically, uh, this contract was, uh, always done with a three-year plus two, um, which, uh, the county has historically exercised those two additional option years each time. And so, although the first option with the five-year plus two seems long, our practice has been to remain with Spectra over a five-year period. And, and so, the additional factor to consider, again, is on the capital investment piece. Uh, under option one, we're gonna receive two, uh, installments, uh, that total $175,000, whereas, under option two, uh, we would only receive one installment of a capital investment of $110,000. So that's $65,000 less. So, over, uh, the first five years of either contract, we could have an additional $65,000 in capital investment, and we can save $108,750 on the base management fee incentive fee cap. And so, uh, it's my recommendation to the court that they strongly consider option one. But both options are available. Uh, option two, uh, does give the court the flexibility to rebid in three years, uh, whereas option one, uh, that opportunity to rebid would not occur until five years. Uh, but again, uh, Purchasing's recommendation is that we strongly consider option one. And then I would pass this over to the court if y'all have any additional questions.
Thank you. And Michael, I'm gonna pitch a little bit of a softball, because I'm actually looking at it, but we have a lot of people, uh, who watch these meetings. And so, I just want to point out that, uh, Section 4.4, Use of County, uh, subsection A and C really address the two very unique county functions that we've had, uh, particularly over the last two years. That's our emergency use of the facility for declared emergencies. That would be in subsection C, and I would direct the court's attention to that. And then also, uh, our Junior Last Talk Show, obviously, that is key and probably our signature event. Uh, I know maybe you have wonderful events all year, but we are especially proud of that one. And so, both are addressed, again, in this contract. Um, I do note, um, that there is a reference to a supplemental agreement that would be mutually agreed to by the parties with regards to the, uh, facility rental, uh, like we've done in the past for the RIC, the Rapid Infusion Center, or vaccination, or testing. And so, I just know that those are issues that have come up before. Keller, and this is my opportunity to say, as the emergency manager, you guys have been an unbelievable partner for the past two years, um, hosting everybody from the military, um, all the way to nurses and, um, public health, uh, employees, you know, re- literally round the clock, uh, for two years, a- at a variety of, of stages. So, those are two important paragraphs. I know there's men- there are many others, but Michael, um, the supplemental agreement in its form is not attached to the contract. That's my question. Is that correct?
Th- that is correct. On this new agreement, we do not have a supplemental agreement in place. The, the supplemental agreement that the court is operating under currently, uh, is for the previous contract or current contract where we're in a month-to-month basis with them, along with that. Uh, and so, what this, what we did on this agreement when I worked with, uh, county attorney's offices, we just wanted to specify that if we're gonna have special terms different from this contract, they would need to be identified in a supplemental agreement to identify those specific terms, because we have included, uh, how the county is gonna treat short and long-term use of the facility here. And, and the difference between, uh, what is in that supplemental agreement and what is in this agreement is that here, this provides for a paper credit. So like, if we're using the facility for $1,000 a day, uh, that's provided as a paper credit for Spectra to, uh, mark as a progress towards earning their incentive fee for that given year, rather than the county writing a check out for $1,000. And that's a key difference than what we had in the past.
Yeah, that, that's, that's very important to note. Um, well, like I said, I thought that was something that maybe the court might have some questions on.
I do. I have lot, I have several on this.
I'll call on Commissioner Chesky.
Thank you, excuse me. So, um...
Could you use your mic?
I am. I've just got the book here in front of me. Sorry. Let me pull it over. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. So, Michael, I think what the supplemental agreement is one of the things that I, um, raised issue on. That was the supplemental agreement that was done, and I, I wanna make sure that that was done by the judge during the emergency times? Is that the supplemental agreement you're referring to?
Yes, that, that's the one we had talked about. Um, and at the time, you know, we started these conversations back in, in the fall last year. And a- as this, uh, negotiation kind of prolonged itself, uh, we believe that the last supplemental agreement that was done was gonna carry us through to the end of the need for it to be here. And so, that's why it's not present on this agreement, uh, because we felt that by the time we got to the court approving this agreement, we would be beyond the need of that agreement for, for that particular set of tasks that were listed in that, uh, supplemental agreement. And so, then, what, what this contract does then Brent does, uh, sets the framework that we would have to come back to court on this new agreement if the court wanted to consider any new, uh, supplemental agreements. That way, you get full opportunity for the court to review and vet, uh, those terms on their own merit.
Regardless of whether it's in a quote "emergency" or not, everything would have to come back through the court? Is that what you're saying with the basis of this contract?
Correct.
Yes, that is correct.
And so, can, can you point that language out to me that, that you believe, Michael, or Jenny believes that, that says that? Because...
It says it in subsection C that I quoted, that says that, um...
You're talking about 4.4C, Judge?
Yes, it says, "County's long-term use of the facilities respond to public emergency disasters may be pursuant to the terms of a separate supplemental agreement heretofore mutually agreed to by the parties."
Right, that's, that's a... Yeah, that's, to me, is a, um, I, I, I'd like to change some of that to where it's a little more shall be pursuant, because a- as you know, Judge, in the law, "may" is very, um, it's, I don't know how to, "may" is "may", "shall" is "shall". It's a very different term in the law. So, I would like to at least, you know, talk about changing that word to a, a "shall" provision, so that it, there's no question that anything that we do that they know and we know, and that it's going to come back to the court. So, that would be first, because to me, I, I read that and it didn't...
Well, I would, I would be happy to see a supplemental agreement pre-positioned, Michael. I mean, that's always the goal, is to have a pre-positioned supplemental that sets forth the rates. Uh, take today, for instance. We're opening up with the city. Uh, we're having winter weather expected this weekend. We always have our evacuation center, uh, being the location of the Richard Orchard Fairgrounds. Um, this is an excellent example of that would fall under the current supplemental agreement that we have. Uh, but we need to make certain that we have a pre-positioned one for the future, so...
Right, and so when it says, like I said, to me, it needs to be "shall" and...
So, um, if I might comment on that piece, uh, when I was working with, uh, Kent Brown on this, what we tried to draft is a, uh, to the extent possible that the county, under long-term use of the facilities, uh, would have, there's a structure there, uh, that indicates what the rental fee is and what the operating expenses and how they would be covered. And, and we believe that we captured the language, uh, that was in that supplemental agreement, uh, there, such that there is a way to handle the rental fee as a paper credit and also, uh, a credit for the operating expenses that occur.
Okay.
Uh, and both as a paper credit. And that's what we would prefer to have versus, uh, the outright payments that were structured in the supplemental. And the reason we have the supplemental, uh, outright payments is because there are federal funds coming into the county, uh, that are being used to, uh, fund that, uh, money coming in. And so, uh, under that supplemental agreement, I believe the spirit of that was to be able to utilize those funds that were coming into the county to supplement the overhead costs. And so, uh, to the extent possible, the reason I think we wanted to use the word "may" rather than "shall" is because we wanted to give the court the option of utilizing the contract terms, uh, to handle that emergency situation. Uh, but also give the court the option, if the court feels that those were not adequate, to then create a special supplemental agreement. So that's, that's how I read the term "may" versus "shall", uh, because if we have a "shall", then these terms, um, you know, may not apply, I guess, in that situation. So, uh, I would defer to county attorney as to whether they recommend we use the word "may" or "shall".
Well, I've got lots of more "shells" that I want to add on, too, too.
I don't believe that Inspector is there to speak on their behalf, but I, I don't believe they will have an issue with us, regardless of which way the court chooses to write that particular phrase.
So, the general questions that I have that I've got, and I'm gonna ask them on different things, and it's more of a, um, so... Um, I have a difference of opinion with the judge on what emergencies are and aren't, and we'll debate some of that later. But in all these contracts, my, my concern is, um, I, I, I want the court, and, and this isn't a Spectra deal, you're just, you're just here, sorry. I don't mean, you're just kind of in the... But I, I want these contracts to accurately reflect that, that everything that goes on out there, the court's made aware of and has the ability to sign off on, because, um, I didn't, I didn't have any input on that supplemental agreement, nor did the rest of this court. And, and the judge feels that she had every right to do that, and I, I'm not questioning her belief in that. And I have, I have the same belief that she didn't. But, and that's where I'm at, I'm, I'm, I struggle with any of these contracts that come up like this because of the situation that was out there before, where we did have a supplemental agreement that, that was signed off on without, um, the court having to be involved. So, my, my kind of questions, and you just started with this one, so, are, are gonna be like that throughout. I, I wanna know what was added to this contract that wasn't in the contract before. Um, that, that's one thing, so I appreciate, Judge, you pointing that out on the front end. I have some concerns over, over, you know, some of the language, and I still think there should be some "may's" and "shells". I do have some credits on, or some questions on those paper credits, um, too, because, and I have questions on the incentives, so I've got a lot of questions on this contract. Um, but that's kind of the first one, is I wanna know, Michael, everything that you've changed in this contract from the last contract. And I think the court deserves to have a side-by-side and a redlined version of that. So, because this is a, just so, like, the public knows, this is a, I don't know, I'm gonna say 20-page contract? May, with exhibits, maybe 30? I, I, I don't know. And, and part of the reason this has been held up is because I've been looking through this contract and asking for different questions. But I, it, there's no way, um, like, and maybe 40 pages. It, it, there's no way for the court, in my opinion, without having a side-by-side red line of, here's what the last contract was, and here's what we changed, 'cause, or we're gonna spend an hour and a half here today doing this, and I don't wanna do that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna waste the court's time, because I think there's too many questions. I've got questions that, that paid credit is a new thing. I don't remember seeing that, um, in the, in the old one. I don't know that the court's seen that. Um, I, I, I don't, and I don't know what else has been added.
The paper credit has ex- has existed before, Brent. That's not a new, that's not a new concept.
Has it been in this contract? Has it been in this contract?
Yes, we've had paper credits as part of the contract on our current contract. The difference is, is that we've expounded upon the use, the long-term use. So, uh, before, uh, the short and long-term use sections were very brief. And so, what we tried to do here was get very detailed, uh, on exactly what does that mean, uh, when we're gonna use it for short or long-term use? If we're gonna have the IRT come out, we actually added some language specific to the IRT, uh, use of the property. Um, and, and what we're trying to do is, is eliminate those questions that, that we had in the past, because it was vague. And so, we tried to be very explicit, uh, in those sections as to, uh, how that paper credit works. And so, so it's not different, it's just better explained, I guess I would say. And, and the, uh, the, the difference, um, is, was also the piece that we just discussed, uh, about making sure that anything that is outside the scope of what's written in the contract, uh, be presented as a supplemental, uh, agreement. And that's standard language in any of our contracts. Uh, we operate under the written contract as stated. Uh, if someone wants to do something different than that, they have to bring a supplemental agreement. They have to review it with the county attorney. They have to come to court and, and present to you guys, uh, those specific terms that they're asking for. And, and the court has that opportunity that, at that time, to decide if they want to allow those supplemental changes to occur or shape the way that, uh, that those supplemental changes occur. And so, uh, in that way, I feel that we are, uh, better protected in this version than what we had before with regard to short and long-term use and emergency use. And, and those are the primary areas that changed. The other area that changed, uh, has to do with the attachment on the incentive fee and how it is calculated. And, and the primary change there has to do, and, and, uh, I believe that's, uh, attachment B. I gotta double-check it real quick. But, uh, what we're talking about there is if they hit certain milestones on, uh, earning, that there are gonna be different levels that they can earn up to. And, but they're all capped. So regardless of what milestones they hit, the max they can make is an additional, uh, under the option one, is an additional 35% of the base management fee. Uh, and the base management fee on this is $145,000. And so, uh, 35% of that is $50,750. That's, that's the max they can earn, even if they hit all the milestones.
And what else do we pay them? Because that's not the total amount that we pay them.
We, we pay the base management fee. Uh, currently, we pay $132,000 a year. Uh, this proposal has $145,000. That's a, uh, 9.8% increase over the previous contract that was established in 2016 and had no increases over a five-year period. So if you average that out over the five years, that's about 1.96% increase per year.
And what else do we pay them?
And then the other thing that we pay them is the incentive fee. And they can earn up to, uh, under option one, $50,750. Under option two, they can earn... They can earn $72,500 per year. So, that, that's why I am recommending option one. Um, oh, because over the, the five years, and, and historically, we've done, we've always done the three-year. We've always renewed for two additional years. And if everything is continuing to go well, I anticipate that would likely be the case. So if you were to lay these two contracts side-by-side over the first five years, you can save $108,750 on option one and still have the option to rebid after five years. You don't have to exercise option, uh, those two additional option years. Um, plus, uh, on the, uh, capital investment, you're getting two payments, $100,000 in year one and $75,000 in year two, that we can use towards, uh, improvements there at the facility. Whereas, option two, uh, because of the shorter duration of time, we only get a capital investment commitment of $110,000. So...
Michael, but there have, there are other fees that we have to pay them, or they wouldn't be giving us $110,000 back for a $145,000 fee. So are there other fees that they make off of this, so that we can, I can, we can put that out just to show what every, what everything is paid for?
So, uh, Keller?
Yeah, I can, I can address that, Commissioner, if that's okay.
He was trying to, I didn't get that.
Yeah, so, um, so a couple, a couple comments, and then I'll address the fee, if that's okay. I think when you look, and I, I certainly respect, uh, making sure that the contract leaves like the, you know, the commission would like. So we're, we're on board with that. I think when you look at the intent of what we want to do, we, we want to support your initiatives to supporting the community, so know that. I, I feel like Jason and the team have done a phenomenal job doing that in the past. That will not change with this new contract, so, so know that from our perspective, first off. Uh, on, on the fees, um, there's, there's three components. So there's the base management fee, which is at 145, which is, is well below what, you know, CPI has increased over the last X amount of years. So it's, it's basically flat or, or a little less than flat. And then there's the financial component, the financial fee, the incentive fee. And that's based on the gross revenue. And, and as you all know, a- as, as we make more money on events or sponsorships or food and beverage, those are all your dollars, right? We're, we're, the only thing Spectra makes is the base fee and then the financial fee. We're, we're, the only thing Spectra makes is the base fee and then the financial fee, which we're capped on, as Michael indicated. So as Jason and the team book more events and, and host more activities out there, that all benefits the bottom line of the facility, which allows you to keep those dollars in other coffers instead of funding the subsidy out there at the fairgrounds. So.
I thought you said there was a third component on the.
The, the incentive fee has a qualitative and a quantitative portion. So the quantitative portion is kind of related to that gross revenue benchmark that we're discussing, um, and you may have questions on. And then the qualitative, uh, is based on five factors that, uh, there in exhibit B, that we get rated on every year, basically.
So let me just ask you, how much did Oasis County pay y'all for twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, we got our base management fee of just, I, I think it was just, uh, right around a hundred and forty thousand, plus we were awarded thirty one thousand and change on our incentive fee. And that's, that's it.
And there was no, you said there was quantitative and qualitative. There's no.
There was no quantitative, uh, fee earned in twenty twenty-one, nor has there been for the last few years, given, given COVID.
Okay, so then, on this proposal, that gives us back capital investment, a five, oh, it's a five, it's over five-year capital investment, is what you're saying? It's a, not a hundred and seventy upfront, it's a hundred and seventy over.
Uh, our, our proposal right now is a hundred and seventy-five thousand for the five plus one plus one. We would, we would suggest doing a hundred thousand now, and then seventy-five thousand next year. And our intent with, with both of those is really to enhance the investments you've already made in that, in that space out there. So in the ballroom specifically, we're thinking chairs, and, and you all will have input on where this money gets used. It's your money at the end of the day, but we'll mutually agree on how to, how to spend that. But for us, it's about driving more top-line revenue, as well as a- affecting the guest experience in some way. So the, the easy things in our mind that, you know, it's time to make an investment in is, is likely the chairs, is likely the A V, and it's food service equipment. So, um, and those are all going to affect our ability to keep retaining current clients and earning new clients.
So, I, I, I gotta be, you know, sometimes when it sounds too good to be true, I, I have to ask the question, it's not, you know, too good to be true. So if, if, if all your company makes off this is that number you gave me, which I think what's a hundred?
Call it a hundred and seventy, a hundred and seventy-five thousand a year. Yep.
So I gotta ask, you know, why would you wanna give back a hundred and seventy? If you're only making a hundred and seventy, or a hundred and ten, if you're only making a hundred and seventy, depending on the term that the contra- that the court determines?
Well, I think, I think for us, A, we, we enjoy our partnership here, and we think we can drive value. And, and to an extent, we're, we're betting on ourself to drive that financial incentive up to the cap, right? That's, that's our, that's our, that's our window, right? That's what we can earn more on. But as we earn more, you earn substantially more. Every, every dollar, you know, we may earn twenty percent of it, but the other eighty's dropping your bottom line, which is keeping it out of, out of other, you know, other areas of the county. Um, so for us, we're, I mean, we're, we're looking at this as a five-year deal. And yeah, if you, if you put pen to paper, a hundred and seventy-ish thousand a year, we are willing to invest a year of our fee, basically, to, to earn your business. That's, that's how important it is to us.
So just to be clear, there's no more quantitative, qualitative, you made no more money from the county than that one seventy-five that you quoted?
In twenty twenty-one, correct. Yes, correct.
I mean, if that's, I mean, you know, but I think people need to see this because when we keep renewing contracts over and over, you know, sometimes people will ask, well, why? Did you go out and R F Q? Well, we did. We went out. On this one, there was no other, um, uh, bidders or however, you know, requesters. And if, if that fee is all that's being paid to the fairgrounds, and you're putting money back into that, I think people need to be aware of that. And I need to get clarity on it too, because that wasn't as clear to me in trying to dig through all this when I was going through it. So that's, you know, those are, I think, good for the people to, to understand. So going back though to the contract, you, you say, Michael, that you explained it more, and I appreciate that, thank you very much. You explained it more, um, in the contract, but is there any reason that you couldn't send us a redline version of what the changes were, from where it started, from, to where it ended, so that the court can see clearly where that language is? And, and again, I still think there needs to be some tightening up on making sure that the court has input on everything and anything, emergencies, whatever, that, that happens out there, because I just do. So I, I, I need, and I need to hear from the county attorney that that's clearly in here.
So the county attorney, you have, you have spent considerable amount of time reviewing this contract, and this contract comports with state law. And we've already identified the two provisions, um, that did have changes. We also identified that we would bring back uh, a supplemental agreement if needed. I'm not opposed to, of course, having a red line. I'm just wondering why it was not asked for before, given that we've had the opportunity to review this contract. The questions certainly could have been raised before. Is this time-sensitive, where we could bring it back, you know, on the twenty-third? Uh, where you could give the red lines, even though they've been announced, and even though it's the recommendation of the purchasing agent, to, um, actually bring us a contract today that is not only stronger, but provides more dollars to this county at a lower incentive rate, and still gives the flexibility of having an option out after five years. Um, I'm wondering why we wouldn't, why we're working against ourselves so hard, um, why we wouldn't want to, take this and say thank you on the way out. But having said that, if it's not time-sensitive, and Commissioner Chesney would like to see a red line of the verbal that's already been given to him in court, I personally have no objection. Um, but there really is something strange about having the process work and then having it work twice, right? A- again, what is it about this contract that you did not have the opportunity to review?
Well, respectfully, Judge.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm addressing Jenny. I'll be happy to call on you next.
Thank you.
Kent Brown has been working a lot on this with Michael, and also with Commissioner Chesney on questions that he has. And we have a red line, uh, that if it, there have been many versions. So I don't think we have one red line that shows from beginning straight to end. But we can get the court whatever you want.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly, um, Keller, can it wait till Feb. twenty-three so that we can get the red line to Commissioner Chesney? I'm, I would like to make the motion. I, I'll be honest with you. I did not advance your item because I thought we were gonna have thirty minutes of discussion. I advanced the item because I thought that everything was in order. This is an amazing opportunity. Option one, to not only have a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar incentive. You might remind the court, Keller, that previously we had an eighty-five thousand dollar as incentive that we utilized for new carpeting at the fairgrounds. These incentives are always part and parcel of the project. You are a national um, event management service company, correct? Managing.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, uh, you, you know, I, I know I stated it earlier, but we operate in many facilities here in the state of Texas, many across all of North America, over a hundred and eighty different venues. Um, but I think what's most important is how we operate the fairgrounds for you, right?
Correct.
And so we're cognizant of that. And, and again, I, I'm, I'm proud of what we've done there. Um, Jason has led that team for a long time, and, um, we've got a great staff out there that, that I think work every day to represent the county in the right way, um, and get more events to the facility, impact the community, and then, and then serve what other, you know, whatever other purpose comes up. So, um, you know, the, the only thing I would say in respect to timeline, and, and I respect Commissioner Chesney, you wanted to see some detail. I mean, we, we've, you know, we responded to an R F P last June. We were awarded last July. We're, we're well past our contract term, and we'll certainly continue to operate like we have every day, and like Jason and the team have done every day since, you know, having a lapsed contract. But you know, i- if possible, I, I think today's the day to make the decision. Um, and, and certainly if there's other items in the contract that we can discuss, that's why I'm here, right? Cause, um, again, we, we truly appreciate this partnership. We want this to continue many years into the future. And we wanna continue to be your guide on opportunities that exist for the fairgrounds, whether that's developing other county, you know, call it owned events, um, or, or just bringing in other events that affect the community.
And I appreciate that, Judge. I, if someone can get me a red liner to the court, I'm, I'm not saying I, I need to delay it past today. It's nine-thirty. I figure we're gonna be here.
I think that's fair.
Many hours. So I, I just need, because, and I think it's, uh, to answer what you said, since you were addressing it to me, let me answer it. And I think the county attorney did. I have asked lots and lots of questions on this, uh, I've had lots of back and forth. But I didn't get the final version of this until Friday, and quite frankly, um, didn't actually get it until Monday, cause I haven't had an assistant. That's on, that's on me. But at the same time, the rest of the court hadn't had any opportunity to, to see some of the things that have gone back and forth, and I want them to be able to see it too. Um, and, and, and there were things said today that brought about different questions for me, so, which is often happens. But I, I don't want there to be any, and I'm sure you didn't mean to, but I don't want there to be any implication that I haven't spent time on this, because I ventured to, to say, and I think the county attorney backed me up, I've spent ad nauseam time on this. So, um, but I'm just making sure that we get it right. I'm still not, and, and I'm still not sure, I'm, and let me make sure you're clear. I'm fine after what you've explained to me with the business terms. This is now language that really, as I said, has nothing to do with you. It's just something that I have a, 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 a conviction on. And I just wanna make sure that those are covered. So I'm not a hundred percent, um, comfortable with the language addressing the issue that, that I've addressed. And if there's a way that, that can be amended quickly, probably with some shals and some different stuff, but I, um, I, 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 I think we can get that done today. But I would like to see kind of where, what the old contract was, and be able to, for someone to point out just in there, if someone could just point out, this is the new language. I mean.
Think we could have that by lunch? Do you think we could get that by lunchtime?
We've, we're preparing the, the old and the, the last.
That's being done for you right now.
Just needs to be the last contract, and here's the, in this contract, here's the additional language we added, so the court can see it and know what the different provisions are. And then if we need to tweak a little language later today, I didn't, I'm not saying we can't get this done today. I'm just saying I need something to look at.
That's being done. That's being done right now.
Well, in the interest of time, I'll reserve my comments for an appropriate executive session time, but we have to follow the law, and the law needs to be that it comportes with those acts of emergencies that, you know, there's only one definition of an emergency that I'm aware of, and that's if we have a declared, you know, state of emergency, or there is some, you know, extreme weather event that causes, uh, us to go into a certain level readiness. In other words, there's actual descriptions that are met and found in our approved emergency management plan with the state of Texas. It's pretty clear. Um, and, you know, it needs to comport to that. That is the law, not somebody's opinion. And as long as we can have that discussion, that's not a problem. Let's wait till noon.
No, you threw it out there, Judge. So I'm gonna respond, because you threw it out there. You don't get to throw it out, and I don't get to respond. The response here is, I don't believe long-term lease contracts with, and this, again, is another view, but I don't think long-term lease contracts do purport to the law. There is an attorney general's opinion, not law, that indicates the same thing, that the, under the emergency powers, long-term funds cannot be designated without court approval. So that's my point here, is I don't know that this contract accurately reflects what it, what it needs to reflect in that vein. Because you have a disagreement, and I, with me on this, and you say purport to the law. I don't think it does purport to the law, and you, there's no case law that backs you up. There's an attorney opinion, a gen- general's opinion, which is only opinion that lends itself to say differently than what you say. And that is the basis of my main concern over this contract. And at the end of the day, is, is that thing, that very thing, that we may need to just go get a legal opinion from the court on to, to find out what exactly an emergency is. Signing a long-term lease.
It's not a long-term lease. The supplemental agreement is not a long-term lease. This is completely different.
To funds. It committed the court to funds. It, it should not be allowed and should have been brought to the court, in my opinion, again.
First of all.
Later deal, but, but, but to say.
I think the spirit is, is that we need to get you the red line, and we can discuss this particular topic in executive session that purports to discuss a legal question. And I have no problem with making certain that we have that, uh, advice of counsel. Uh, the most important thing is that I believe this contract is ready for execution. And perhaps there is something that we can extract on that supplemental agreement. But let's be clear, the supplemental agreement that we are currently under did come to court. It has been approved by court, and is the one that we're operating on. And quite frankly, it's about fifteen hundred dollars per day under market value to, again, demonstrate the good neighbor and good partnership that we have with Spectra, uh, when we need to vaccinate, when we need to test, when we need to boost, when we need to infuse, and tomorrow night, when we need to keep people warm. That's what we're talking about.
Probably most of the things that would be, if they were brought to court, uh, uh, you know, they, they may or may not have been.
They were all brought to court.
Probably the stuff that doesn't get brought to court, might even be supported by the court, if it was just gone through the process that was, was proper.
I, I understand that this is a legal question that would require more legal discussion. And again, the appropriate time to have that uh, legal discussion is with attorneys that represent both emergency management. And the court will have that opportunity when we get to executive session.
Right. I don't agree with that, because we've, you, you've made your legal statements, I've made statements. There's an attorney general that's public. We've all had this discussion in executive session, so I don't believe anymore of that needs to be discussed in executive session. I believe we need to have it so that the public can see exactly what the, the situation is, because it's just, it's just a difference of opinion that we probably may need to go to court to decide, because we're never gonna be able to.
I think we'll get the red line, uh, for you at lunch, and we can bring this up once again. Um, Commissioner Gonzalez, you were about to say something.
Yes. I just want, I got a couple of questions. Um, if I was to go back in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, and you said that, that we pay, you pay a hundred thousand.
Could I get you, they're signaling me. Thank you, sir.
Pay a hundred thousand, hu- and seventy-five thousand. And, and when I see the statements that I get, you know, and most of it, a lot of it on red. So if we, what I'm making in the money, then we're not getting no money, right?
Com- Commissioner, I, I think the, the spirit of your, of your comments is likely around the, the full financial picture of the fairgrounds and how it operates with, with county funds. So if you look at how most, um, you know, quality of life projects like, you know, public fairgrounds and, and city buildings, they, they all operate at a loss financially. Um, so you're, you're accurate. When you're looking at our maybe monthly financial statements or year-end annual reports, um, the, the facility as a whole does lose money, and it's subsidized by the county.
So it's fair to say that we're really not getting that money back. I mean, at one point, we're really not getting that money back. If, if, if the red is there, because the revenues are down, then we're really not getting a hundred thousand dollars, or the seventy-five thousand dollars. I mean, there's a point, you know, where I think that we, we subsidize a lot of the things that, that we do there. You know, and I think that we have sometimes emergency, uh, and I don't know if, if the costs. And I, sometimes I question the cost of, of the emergencies that we have there, whether it's, was it really a, a regular cost, or really a the right cost, or is it an over cost, you know? That, 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 that I have a concern sometimes when I look at that. Uh, but, again, if I, if there is, you know, is there what we can tell? I mean, what were actually with the revenues for twenty twenty-one? And what was actually paid to the county in twenty twenty-one?
Sure. So, uh, do you remember your financial results right off the top of your head? I, I mean, so, so just from a, a process standpoint, just so you understand, a- and, and you, and you likely do. I mean, we, we report in monthly with monthly financial statements that outlines our, our base management fee is a, is a portion of that, right? So I think for last fiscal year, we were probably, was it seven hundred thousand? Probably, probably right in the seven hundred, without having the statements right in front of us, probably about seven hundred thousand dollar loss. That's inclusive of any, any fees, reimbursements, all of that. So, um, but, but again, I, I would, I would note, when, when you look across even the state of Texas at county-owned and operated um, by private management like, like us, I mean, a- all of those facilities lose money. Those are, those are quality of life initiatives that allow the county to support activities that are going to occur, not only your own, like the, you know, the warming center.
And I, and I understand that, but I think people don't understand that. You know, that, well, you're saying you're making this, but we're not making that. I think we just need to be really open to what we are making and, and not making. You know, and I, and I call Jason sometimes too, because I have a lot of questions when I get those reports. You know, and I call him and we talked, and, you know, but, you know, it doesn't, to me, uh, there's not a real clear picture of why, why we're losing so much money, or, God, why are you losing so much money? We have these events. And, uh, and my other thing is, just for, for the purpose of the contract, I think it's important, very important, to have the word shall and not may, because shall means you gotta do it. And if you can't do it, then we come back to court and discuss it and approve. And if you can't do it, then we come back to court and discuss it and approve the, something else. May, you have a wiggle room say, well, it's a may, so we decided to do this. So I really support the shall and, shall and not the may on the, on Michael and, I guess I'm talking to Michael too, but, um, we, you know, that's why I didn't have time to read the whole contract. And I don't know what was changed on the contract, but, um, and I think that that red line, it's a good thing. I get the reports I get from Jenny are all red lines, so I think that's a good thing we get red lines. So, but anyway, uh, and those are my, you know, my questions to you that I'm not, I just need, I just need a basic answer as to where we at.
Sure, yeah, and, and Commissioner, we're, you know, our, our books are open, right? So we, we send you those financial statements. It breaks down our revenues by six event categories that occur out there. We have all those records all the way back to day one. So we're, we're happy to put together any type of custom report that we could, we could report to, you know, the, the, the court monthly if, if you so choose. Um, our financial statements are pretty comprehensive, um, so.
I understand that.
And, and I, and I think too, just, you know, worth noting, again, the, the capital investment is a capital investment. As Judge noted, the last capital investment was used towards carpet. And that was something that we, we both thought, you know, that the county and Spectra would enhance our ability to drive more top-line revenue for the facility.
And I agree with you, but you know, that didn't come to the court either, but I agree with you. So, you know, and, and my last, my last question here is that, um, on the, um, and I, maybe, maybe it's just to Jason, I guess, you know, Jason, because you and I have talked about the contracts. You and I have talked about the reports, you know, and, and at the bottom of the, and the, and the end of the report doesn't really show the detail of what actually was brought in, what was lost and, uh, that I see as far as the revenues that were coming to the county. Because I mean, if we not get revenues because there's a loss, I understand that too, you know? But we can't talk about revenues if we don't have those revenues.
Yeah, Commissioner, in our financial statements and our year-end reports, it is extremely clear by event category, all events combined, personnel costs, every dollar. Remember, those are, those are county funds and it's our responsibility to be extremely transparent with those. That's why we send you the monthly financial statements. It has all of that detail in there. So, um, every dollar of revenue is accounted for in, in each event category as well as another income category with, with great detail.
My last, my last question is, or is, when we pay for emergency use of the, of the building or the, the IRT or the military, uh, I'm just saying, is it cost a, a, a good cost? Or something that, to me, sometimes I think the cost is a little higher, but.
Yeah, Ja- Jason and I have had discussions about that actually, and, and even just looking at what it costs to, to heat one building out there, you know, on a cold night like, you know, tonight and tomorrow night. I, I mean, there, there is cost to it. And so at the end of the day, we're trying to protect your interest, right? Any, any dollar extra in utilities, it's a county expense that we're responsible for, so those are good.
And we don't mind paying it, believe me, we don't mind paying it as long as it's not, you know, I don't, I don't want to pay double for it. You know, I want to pay what, what we're supposed to pay. You know, I don't have a problem with that, believe me.
And, and none of, and, yeah, none, none of those decisions make Spectra any more money. So we're just acting as your stewards and, and Jason's been out there since two thousand eight and he's got a pretty good idea of how the building operates. So I, I, I really trust him and his team's judgment. And if they're saying that's the hard cost to do it, then, you know, I, you know, without a doubt, I'd stand behind it.
All right, thank you.
All right, so, Commissioner Modas.
I mean, I know this, we're probably going to.
Can I, can I jump in real quick, Judge?
Uh, could you, could you yield to Commissioner Modas? He's got a question, forgive me, Michael. It's hard, there's a delay in the video, but you'll be next.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thanks, Judge. Um, I, I know there's a lot of, um, legal questions that we need to still look through. And so I'd rather wait till, till that. But, you know, improvements that, that we have made, that I, that I have felt were important for a facility that rests in precinct three, but I always, you know, include that as part of the entire county's investment and facility, even though it physically rests in, in the middle, smack dab in the middle of mine. Uh, but that, you know, you mentioned earlier the carpet and, and the walls and then some of the other improvements that we expect. Uh, that was something that, that we drove, something that I'd spoken with a lot many times with Jason and the frequent times that I'm there using the facilities for different meetings, um, different events, R A D C meetings, other meetings that we have, uh, that we come across. And, and I'll tell you, Keller, and you know this, you know, we, we have met before and we have spoken before. And, uh, Jason definitely watches and manages that money as if it's his own, as he rightfully should. I mean, I really feel like we walk out the door, man, he's turning off that light switch. I mean, he's making sure every dollar is being watched and, and, and I want to thank you all for that. And, uh, I'm sure y'all probably, uh, wonder sometimes why, why go through this business model, this type of work when are there others that are interested? Maybe just because they can't make that, that dollar amount work. Uh, but one of the things I know that I recall, and, and I'm sure Commissioner Chesney recalls is, you know, my years being on the city council and, and that monster that we have, American Bank Center, operates under a very similar model. Most, most operations do, where there's going to be more money that you're investing as a government, as a community, because it is quality of life. And so, um, although I do appreciate my colleagues today looking at every dollar amount, uh, I'm sure if you brought this to the public, they're going to say, wow, how many millions of dollars are you going to save us? Now, I know every dollar is important, I get that, every dollar is. We need to watch it because we can be spending that at other, other places. And I appreciate that, that this back and forth that we have had. Now, I, I do agree that this decision needs to be made because, I mean, every, every week, every week, we got items that are just coming back and it's a push and it's a push. And we need to come to some, start making some decisions. You know, if we have the facts, then we need to make the decisions today, here and now, not wait, not string it along for any other reason. We got to do our homework and get it done, period. If I'm not ready, then I'm not ready, that's on me. But when, when these things have been decided and discussed over and over again, this is not anything new. The work that y'all are doing, the money that, that we are, are making up is, it's, it's, it's an understood factor in government. Now, if the community wants to have a philosophical debate about whether this is appropriate or not, then we need to decide that before we're building these buildings or when we are making renovations to new buildings. So every time that we want to have these discussions and, and, and hold our breath and say that there's something wrong with the system, the system is a little screwy, it is. I mean, there's some loss there that we're having to take on, but it's not because it's been run improperly. It's not. Uh, like I said, get, get out there, go and look and see what's being done. But, but the carpet and the work like that, as mentioned earlier, th- those are things that have been important that Jason and I have talked about several times, just in passing, whenever we come across or our mom out there, we, I look at it and he'll show me some of the progress that we have out there. Um, like I said, I appreciate looking at the big picture. I know that, that this item falls into a bigger philosophical approach on how do we, uh, manage and operate our contracts and, and some of the legal wording, shall and may, that we're going to make a real big difference in a lot of decisions that we make today and going further. Um, but once again, I, I, for me, this is about making a decision that is about a very small amount, very relative small amount of money when we're talking about the overall operations that you all do and the quality of work that you do. And I, and I don't know how anyone in this business has, has been able to, to manage and exist over the last two years plus now in the situation that we have where there haven't been many events, not many concerts. It's, it's few and far between, but thankfully, thankfully, we've had some improvements in that. And we have that in Robstown. Every time I turn around, there's a new event that's something that, that Jason and your management team are drawing up and bringing out here and trying to, to get, uh, more people to, to, to drive out to the crossroads. So, um, I want you to know, I appreciate your work that y'all are doing. Uh, I get it because like I said, having been there on the city side, I, I don't recall the numbers because it's been a few years now. But I know that they're, they're dealing with a lot bigger price tag because of the size of facility. They're getting more events, sure, I'm sure they're bringing in more revenue, but they're still dealing with loss. They're still going to be dealing with, there's a difference when you're talking about paying out quality, quality of life. So, uh, I, I know that that philosophically is, is a big concern to us. And I'm not saying we should put it away or ignore it. But, but this is just about renewing a contract that is a very lean contract, one of the most lean contracts that we can get. Uh, we're talking tens of thousands of dollars in, in, in difference here as compared to others that, you know, we'll throw a hundred thousand or, or more, millions of dollars into, into other projects here in the county. Not bad enough because it's something that the community needs. Well, the community needs this as well. And when we're talking only a few, you know, relatively small amount, uh, I think that we need to push forward and, and, and deal with this. Because, uh, I, I, I was very surprised earlier this week, or it might have been last week. I had a friend of mine who sent me a tweet from a reporter from, uh, from Harris County. And our colleagues up in Harris County have a, an agenda, uh, packet of a four hundred and six items. Four hundred and six items. I, I can guarantee you, we don't have, we don't have that many in our packet. It feels like that some days, most days. But we really need to choose when we're starting to talk about and debate these items because I have no problem coming and doing our job every single day. But if we're just going to come and grandstand and make points and not get stuff done, that's where we should be held accountable as a commissioner's court and as an elected body because we're not getting our work done every week that we're just saying, push it back, push it back, push it back. Let's get our work done, let's get it done now. Let's get that work done now so we can be over with it. I'm so tired of hearing, let's push it to the next week or the next meeting or the next, we can't, we shouldn't. We're not getting things done that properly, we're not being efficient that way. And once again, go, go look at Harris County and see how quickly they're able to get through their agendas. Four hundred and six items just last week. We need to do better in how we're managing this and how, how we're discussing these items. So I hope we move forward on this one. I, I appreciate the work y'all are doing and I hope that y'all stay with us for years to come because this has been a partnership, a family, Jason's like family to us. Anytime we need something, he's there to do it. I don't for one second think that he's trying to, to get an extra dollar or dime out of us because he's literally walking behind us, turning that light switch off when he walks out. And so Jason, thank you for all your work you're doing. Thank you, Keller.
Hey, well, that, with that, um.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
May I ask a question?
Of course, Commissioner Hernandez, and then we'll go back to Michael.
First of all, I don't think anybody here is grandstanding. Uh, everybody's looking for answers. I, I was, uh, looking for answers when we were doing the, the fairgrounds that we had that big change orders, which was for the walls and the, and the carpet. I think it was, uh, two hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars. And, uh, to me, that's an expense that we weren't expecting. Uh, but, uh, it didn't come to commissioner's court. Uh, it was just done before we even knew about it. But my real question is, Jason, we're going to have this freeze or we're preparing for this weather this weekend. Are our boilers working efficiently?
Yes, sir, um, we have, um, there are a couple air conditioning units that are out there that are, do not, uh, that are broken that are, the, the, thank you, the commissioner's court agreed to, to get them fixed, but it takes a little time to get manufactured. But we do have some event activity this weekend. So in our Berry Pavilion Arena, we have a mixed martial arts event. And in the ballroom, we have a quinceañera. In exhibit hall B, that does not have air conditioning, there are radiant heaters that work alongside the buildings. But our recommendation is not to put people in there because the radiant heaters may not do the trick to keep people warm. So luckily, we have exhibit hall A available and that works right now for heating and air conditioning. So we will be able to get heat, make a comfortable environment for the people that are out there. Um, we just had the gun show this past weekend. Well, they're back in two weeks instead of a month because of their, they had some, uh, date changes in McAllen. So, um, it's all set up in a way with cubicles for their vendors. There's no merchandise there, the vendors took everything out. But there's tables and chairs there already set, which could be cubicles for people to be in. We could put up some pipe and drape. We're going to make sure, it's already been sanitized and cleaned by us, the facility. As we speak, the county representatives are out there working with our staff to, uh, set up stuff, um, get, get it all plotted out and ready to go for the warming center, whether it's a, a day or two or three, whatever it's going to be. And we are working, um, with Kathy from emergency management on any food service that we need to provide people. If they're coming in hungry or thirsty, we will take care of them. So we, so we always work hand in hand as a team. So yes, the, so in that building, yes, the, the boilers are, are working. Thank you.
I don't know if you can answer this question or not, probably not your department. But for those people, not everybody owns a car, not everybody can get around. For those people that need help to get to the fairgrounds, uh, have we made any plans? I don't know of any with the RTA or somebody get, to get them out there?
Uh, Commissioner Hernandez, I can speak to that quickly. I'll cover it, uh, in my review. RTA is working with us, uh, to provide transportation to and from the facility as well, sir. And they're currently working on, uh, a, a similar, uh, uh, reimbursement of zero. Uh, they're getting that approved through their, uh, departments so that perhaps that can be offered.
Very good.
And we can go into more detail on the, um, emergency preparation when we get to general information report. I think it's important that we stay on topic here. All right, uh, Michael, thank you for your patience. Um, all commissioners have had an opportunity to, to speak. Uh, I go back to you now and, um.
Okay, thank you, Judge and commissioners. Um, I just wanted to, uh, uh, thank Commissioner Chesney, uh, for his hard work, uh, on this particular contract. He spent a great deal of time working with myself and county attorney's office to both ask questions. Um, and, and we tried to address, uh, concerns, uh, uh, in a very diligent and comprehensive manner. Uh, section, uh, four point four, which is used by the county, E and D, uh, has the, the long-term use, uh, items in there. And it describes the compensation during long-term use of the facilities to respond to public emergencies and disasters. May be pursuant to the terms of separate supplemental agreement heretofore mutually agreed by the parties. Otherwise, manager's compensation during the long-term use of the facilities to respond to public emergencies and disasters will be as set forth in this agreement, including as pursuant to section four point four D. And, and in four point four D, it describes in detail, uh, how that facility would be, uh, used, how the, uh, paper credits work. Uh, and we specifically call out the IRT project, which is one, uh, that Commissioner Jag and Commissioner Hernandez, I believe, had a great deal to do with. And part of the reason why I would really push the court to try to arrive at a decision today is we have to notify the fairgrounds when we intend to use their location for that IRT as early as possible because, uh, as Jason can attest to you, events are booking up all the time out into the future. And this thing has dragged out, uh, quite a bit. Uh, but I, but I do want to say that, uh, Jenny's folks, uh, have worked very well and close with me on this. Uh, I think it's right to ask for red line changes. Uh, this, the nature of this one had so many changes throughout the last few months um, that is difficult to just give a straight-up red line from one to the end. But I believe I've given that information to Francisco and Kent and they're diligently working to provide that red line, uh, document. And typically, that is not a big ask. Uh, I, I like to come to court and show y'all what we had before and what the new changes are so that everybody can clearly go straight to those items, um, and not have to try to review multiple pages of a document. So I, I don't have a problem with that ask. And then I would also say, if the court decides that they want to make that one red line change from the word may to shall, uh, I don't believe that, uh, either the county nor Spectra would have an issue with that wording. Um, it still provides, uh, adequate protection for the county, uh, to describe how we're going to compensate them for short and long-term use currently. And it provides a vehicle for the county to bring back any supplemental changes to describe, uh, specific circumstances of some future event. And I don't think that we can preposition that contract. I think the preposition is this con- we can preposition that contract. I think the preposition is this contract, and it has the language that allows us to come back for supplemental agreement at the time that it's needed. Because each disaster is different. I mean, we had no idea about what COVID was going to do to us and how we would end up using the fairgrounds facility to accommodate all of the different things that have occurred over the last year. And so I think it's still appropriate to not have that supplemental agreement until the time that it's needed.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with anything that you just said. It's just that if you're using the normal vernacular of the English language, the reason it says "may" is because the next paragraph, the next sentence says "otherwise." I mean, it's like, if you don't do it this way, then you do it this way, both of which, all it's speaking to, by the way, guys, is compensation. All it's saying here is that this is the way that we compensate. You're either going to bring a supplemental agreement that talks about what you're going to pay the fairgrounds during these emergency times. Otherwise, you'll use the provisions of the very agreement that we have stated forth. I don't have a problem with any of it. My opinion right now is that we do a hold, Keller and Jason. So much, I'm glad you're not going to Colorado because you clearly would have missed your flight. Let's just hold until noon. That gives sufficient time. And I do reserve the right that if the red lines don't come back in time, maybe twelve becomes one. Please let me be a little flexible. But I will hold till noon, skip this item for the court manager, completely skip, and we'll move on. For about an hour, we've had the amazing women who represent the protection of women against violence in our community, members of the Purple Door. They've been waiting patiently. It would, I would like to ask deputy to bring them in. Let us read this resolution. Let us make certain that we take care of this particular recognition. It's Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and then Chief Cook will move straight to your agenda item. But again, February, the month of February, is Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And we have advocates, crusaders, warriors for women, and particularly this very sensitive and vulnerable population that we know is teens, and they're here to talk to us about this important issue. We thank them for their patience in the hallway, and we ask Belinda, our Governmental Affairs Office, to read this. Is it in the form of a resolution?
It is, Judge.
All right. Please proceed.
And Anna here is with the Purple Door, and so after I read the resolution, she'll be able to come up and say a few words.
Thank you.
Whereas the establishment of the Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month benefits young people, their families, schools, and communities regardless of socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, or ethnicity. Whereas victims, especially young women, transgender, and gender nonconforming youth who face higher rates of violence may suffer lifelong consequences. Many young people do not report the abuse for fear of retribution or unwanted embarrassment. The pattern of abuse often continues in future relationships. Whereas violent behaviors often begin between the sixth and twelfth grade. Whereas, according to the CDC in 2021, one in eleven female teens and one in fourteen male teens have reported experiencing physical dating violence in the past year. Fifty percent of teens who experience dating violence report the incidence of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. And only thirty-three percent of teens who experience dating violence in their relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And whereas, by providing young people with education about healthy relationships and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas the Purple Door's initiative, Lose the Ribbon, Prevention is Action, seeks to promote and foster safe and healthy teen dating relationship free from abuse. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioner's Court of Oasis County, that it is supportive of the Purple Door's initiative, Lose the Ribbon, Prevention is Action, to end teen dating violence. All citizens are encouraged to support and model healthy relationships for the next generation and to learn ways to be involved by following the Purple Door on Facebook and Instagram at PurpleDoorTX.
Thank you, Belinda. Is there a motion for such a resolution? I'll take the motion by Gonzalez, second by Chesney, and call for discussion. And we welcome the Purple Door here to Commissioner's Court. Would you like to make some comments?
Good morning. Sorry, I'm a little short, so I have to make that shorter. Thank you so much for your time. We really do appreciate the time that you guys make to make sure that we talk about this topic, especially as we brought also other community partners to talk a little bit more about teen dating violence. I think it's also really important to be aware that the Purple Door not only provides services for adults, but also for children and specifically for teenagers. And so today, we are here to remind the community that teen dating violence keeps happening in our community, and also that it's really important to reach out to individuals that know how to handle this kind of situations. And so one of the things that we encourage everyone, not just parents, but also community members, is to get involved with the Purple Door. And it can be as simple as just following our social media, Instagram, Facebook, or even visit our website to just get some more information. We have also, if it's okay with time, we have also the CAC with Ms. Cassandra, and we have the Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation with Ms. Jackie as well. I don't know if you guys would like to come and say anything regarding the services that you guys provide for the youth. But again, that it's not just the Purple Door. This is a community effort to be able to discuss about this problem. But beyond that problem, the prevention and the solution, to be able to create a healthy community here in the Coastal Bend Wellness, or the Coastal Bend. So thank you so much. And again, my name is Anna Sanchez Brown with the Purple Door.
Thank you, Anna. We welcome Coastal Bend Wellness. Either one, ladies. Multiple organizations here today.
Hi, good morning. My name is Jackie Millington, and I'm from the Coastal Bend Wellness Foundation. So we have a project rush where we teach reproductive health education in high schools all over the Coastal Bend. We see teen dating violence is a real problem. It's happening everywhere. And the Purple Door has been a great resource for us and for all of the teens, and we thank you so much for letting us be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else do we have?
Good morning. My name's Cassandra Nahos, and I'm with the Children's Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend. And we provide free services to child victims of abuse and their nonoffending family members. And we've been around since 1994, and each year, we serve at least fifteen hundred children. And we provide a number of free services, including forensic interviews when there's an allegation of abuse, therapy, referrals for various services, referrals for the state exam at Driscoll Children's Hospital as well, assistance with crime victim compensation and legal aid. And so we see children up to the age till their, until their eighteenth birthday. But we also see some adult victims as well in various situations. But we do see a number of teens in the community that come in, especially due to dating violence. So thank you so much to the Purple Door and to all of y'all for allowing us to be here to talk about our services.
Thank you so much. All of you play such a critical role. As you said, Anna, it is the village theory, and you embody it here today. We're especially super proud of Coastal Bend Wellness because of all of their work in behavioral health, which is completely directed to this whole body and wellness concept. If you commit violence, you're not mentally well. You know, there's something there that needs to be addressed. And also our partner, who's not here today, but Amistad, who also engages in both pediatric care and behavioral health care, they're a big component as well. So typically, at this time, we would like to present you with the recognition of the resolution. But forgive me, I, they, it's coming. Never mind. I see it. If you would just be patient with me, we'll get everybody to sign, and then... Absolutely. We would invite you up here to the dais. We'll take a picture. Maybe those of us back here will stand just for COVID protocols. Commissioner Chesney needs to sign.
Oh, sorry.
I'm going to bring it right here to you. Do you think you could sign and then maybe give it to Joe? He has not signed either. Get him to sign here shortly. Ladies, let me, and gentlemen, back to you as well. Let me join in.
Thank you. Appreciate y'all.
I agree. It's a lot of items. That's crazy. Four hundred and six.
Belinda, that one resolution has not been signed by Commissioner Gonzalez. At this time, I am going to advance an item that we stated earlier that we were going to do.
I'm sorry, ma'am. We need a vote.
We certainly do. Thank you, Lorenzo. Although we did a motion and a second for the resolution, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Kathy, I'm going to ask you to hold on the general information. If you do need to attend to our winter weather, I can always text you. But if you can stay, I would ask for your patience. The same goes for the, those of you waiting for the consent agenda. As they say, a promise is a promise. We're going to move. Chief Cook, you have a presentation representing the sheriff's office today. And, sorry, this paper is stuck, but it'll come. It's item C2. C2, everyone. It's Discuss Game Room Regulations in accordance with Chapter 234 of the Texas Local Government Code. At the conclusion of your presentation, of course, I always invite those commissioners to ask questions and offer comments, but please do recall that I have over five people that would like to make public comment regarding this agenda item. But it seems to me the smart thing to do to listen to the presentation first. And so we'll ask you to proceed, sir. And I think, is Sheriff online? Did I see him? Okay, Sheriff's not online. Okay, Chief. As they say, you're on.
Are they going to pull up the presentation?
Yes, Connie, could you give, here's Sheriff. Thank you, Sheriff, for being here. We're going to pull your presentation up. Just give us a moment. There it is. For those of you in the audience, we have a television here and in the back of the room. There we go.
Good morning, commissioners, Judge.
Morning.
Good to see you this morning. We're going to come to you, bring you some information about game rooms within the Oasis County and some issues related to that, and so that you can, you can have a frank discussion. I know that you guys wanted to discuss the ordinance today. So, next slide, please. A game room means a for-profit business located in a building or a place that contains six or more amusement redemption machines. You have electronic or electromechanical mechanical contrivances for the consideration. Afford the player the opportunity to play, obtain a prize or a thing of value, the award of which is determined solely or partially by chance, regardless of whether the contrivance is designed, made, or adopted solely for the bona fide amusement purposes. So basically, a machine that you put money into, and you take a chance to win a prize. Next slide, please. Game rooms that are issued a valid game room permit, you know, if we want to know if game rooms can be legal in Oasis County, it's a yes and no. I mean, game rooms that are issued a valid permit, once an ordinance is passed, would be legal if they operate within the confines of Chapter 47, which is the gambling in the penal code. That's the area that encompasses gambling, the Texas Penal Code, and they operated within the confines of the Oasis County game room ordinance. To be legal, a machine must be utilized solely for the purpose of amusement and may only reward the player with noncash low-value prizes. Low cash or low value. That's important. The prizes awarded cannot exceed ten times the amount to play the machine one time or five dollars, whichever is less. So you can't have a prize more than five dollars. If you're providing a prize worth more than five dollars, you've got illegal gambling, essentially. Texas Attorney, prizes awarded, the Texas Attorney General has appended that eight-liners that distribute bingo tickets, gift certificates, and stored value cards are illegal. So none of those things can be given as prizes to get around the law. Next slide, please. Section, Texas Local Government Code, Section 234-132, provides that certain Texas counties can regulate game rooms. Oasis County is permitted to regulate game rooms under that section. Section 234-133 provides that the county may require game rooms to be permitted, restrict the location of game rooms to specified areas of the county, including the uncorporate area of the county, prohibit a game room location within certain distance prescribed by the Commissioner's Court of a school, a regular place of worship, or a residential neighborhood, and restrict the number of game rooms that may operate in a specified area of the county. Next slide, please. Now, we looked at some counties, or I reviewed some counties that presently have game room ordinances, and they had varying levels of success. Caldwell County, and I put some of the towns that are in those counties, so you have a pretty good idea where they're located in Texas. Caldwell County, which is the area Lockhart, Luling, and Martindale. They passed an ordinance in January of 2020. They designated code enforcement as the game room administrator. When I reached out and talked to code enforcement, not one of them had a clue about what I was talking about. They didn't know what the ordinance was, really. They said, well, I guess we have an ordinance. I really don't know. County attorney said that they had an ordinance. However, no application for permits had been submitted. And something that I was finding, I found is typical. The Commissioner's Court did not fund any resources for game room enforcement. So a lot of these counties are passing ordinances, but they're not funding them. In other words, they're saying, we're going to have an ordinance, and we're going to task somebody with managing these game rooms and following up and issuing permits, and we expect enforcement, but we're not going to fund that. That's what a lot of these counties did. Bell County, which is where Colleen, Temple, Belton, Hark Heights is, passed an ordinance in August, August of 2021. They designated the fire marshal as the game room administrator. And I talked to the fire marshal, and he said that he is it. He's the only one. He has no employees. He has nobody assisting him with this. He said, one of the things that did transpire once they passed the ordinance is there were several businesses who could have been designated or defined as game rooms because you have to have at least six machines to be defined as a game room. What they did is they reduced the number of their game room, their machines, to like five, and they continued operations so they wouldn't be covered by the ordinance. You know, they might make themselves a coffee shop or, you know, whatever small business that they could put in place and still have their machines without being covered by the ordinance. The Commissioner's Court, again, did not fund any resources for game room enforcement. Next slide, please. We looked at Victoria County. They're pretty close to us. They passed their ordinance in 2019, in December 2019. They designated the sheriff's office as the game room administrator. Sheriff Hooper talked to their sheriff, and he said that the Commissioner's Court had not designated any funds. They have an investigative unit that does enforcement on their game rooms. They work the undercover stuff. They didn't indicate that they were presently conducting any kind of inspections. And then that's pretty much it. They have a special crime unit. I did talk to the chief at Victoria PD, and he said that... the chief at Victoria PD, and he said that they are presently not doing any enforcement with the game room ordinance. He said they also, they also have a city ordinance, which is just Class C violations. And he said they've really been very busy. He's short of personnel. They're focusing on their violent crimes, so they have been doing almost no enforcement. Tarrant County, where Fort Worth, Arlington, South Lake, North Texas, essentially. The ordinance became effective in April twenty twenty. They designated the sheriff's office as the game room administrator. The Commissioners Court did not fund any resources for game room enforcement. They are relying on inter-local agreements with municipalities. Fort Worth, I talked to a, talked to a sergeant from Fort Worth. They have a special services or a special investigations unit that does enforcement. They do the undercover work for the illegal gambling. And they went out and trained their patrol officers. I think he said they had two hundred and ten and two hundred and twenty patrol officers that they trained to conduct inspections on the permitted locations. And, but he couldn't give me a number of how many inspections were conducted monthly and how many cases had been filed in regard to not complying with the ordinance or failing to be permitted if they were operating as a game room. Presently, Tarrant County has fifty game rooms and have received three applications and issued one permit. Next slide, please. What's the situation in Noises County? On December seventh, twenty twenty-one, CCPD made a presentation to the Corpus Christi City Council. They advised that since two thousand fifteen CCPD had conducted ninety-six investigations on game rooms and had filed twenty gambling cases. They did not indicate how many convictions had, had been obtained. Sheriff Hooper did some investigations yesterday, investigating yesterday, and he was able to determine that there had been since two thousand fifteen, twenty-three gambling cases filed here in Noises County, twenty of which have been dismissed. Advised since two, recommended that the city defer to a stronger Class A county legislative authority. Stated that government regulations would ultimately be difficult to enforce because game rooms are constantly evolving. Stated that the PD could administer parts of the county regulatory scheme through an inter-local agreement. Stated the city would need to be appropriately compensated for the devotion of municipal resources and enforcement of a county game room ordinance. Stated that the city had talked to county officials, but had offered no, offered, had not been offered any compensation. I spoke to the sheriff yesterday. He stated that he has had no conversations with the city regarding compensation for enforcing a county game room ordinance. Next slide. Excluding Corpus Christi, there appears to be six active game rooms here in Noises County to include two located in Robstown. CCPD provided me with a list of sixty-seven game rooms within their city limits. However, I was advised that the list was not likely accurate because there is no state, county, or city statute requiring game rooms to register with the city of Corpus Christi. The game rooms come and go on a regular basis, making them very difficult to keep track of. There are likely more game rooms operating in the city limits than there are, they are aware of. I had some pretty extensive discussions with several people on the command staff at CCPD, captains, deputy chiefs. Upon discussion with CCPD commands, staff personnel, it's estimated that there are at least one hundred active game rooms in the city of Corpus Christi. Five of those game rooms are known to be operated by gang members. Next slide, please. Here's some information on some issues we've had within the county, some criminal, criminal activity that we've had. On November seventh, in twenty twenty-one, Noises County deputies responded to a game room located at twenty-nine, twenty-four County Road ninety-three in reference to a robbery with a weapon. Upon arriving, it was determined there was no robbery. However, forty-nine gambling machines were located on the premises and twenty-two subjects were cited for gambling. November twenty-fifth, twenty-one, approximately oh four hundred Noises County deputies responded to thirty-eight, forty-eight Rachel Lane, Robstown, which was a known game room, for a shooting. The victim encountered a subject trying to break into the location and was shot in the hand. On January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, approximately oh nine hundred CCPD units responded to a game room located at twenty-three, oh six Airline Road, number one thirteen, for a robbery with a gun. Upon contact with employees of the establishment, which was a manager, security guard, and two attendants, they were found to be very uncooperative. They were not very forthcoming about anything. The only thing they really would say is that they had some cell phones taken from them. The manager and the security guard were found to be convicted felons. One of the attendants was determined to be seventeen years of age, and a loaded Glock firearm was located in the front office. Reports of, for, reports for a robbery fell to identify and fell in possession of firearm were generated at that location. And then finally, there was a federal case filed in August of twenty. USAV Nichols, defendant Nathan Nichols, who, who is a person who has owned multiple game rooms within the county or multiple game rooms, was charged with two counts of conspiracy, money laundering, interstate commerce, and illegal gambling. The case has not gone to trial. Next slide, please. So, if you're talking about the game room ordinance benefits would provide, first of all, it would provide much stronger enforcement authority to law enforcement agencies within Noises County. There's no doubt about that. You may charge game room operators, if you pass an ordinance, you can charge game room operators with a Class A misdemeanor, which is a maximum of one year in jail and a four thousand dollar fine for each violation. The county may also file for civil injunction to prohibit the violation of the ordinance. Violations can result in up to a ten thousand dollar fine per violation per day. County could also recover attorney fees. The county may pursue both criminal charges and a civil injunction to seek relief. So my thought would be, is if you pass an ordinance, that we would need to aggressively pursue not only criminal charges when we find violations, but we pursue the civil relief as well. Next, next slide, please. So what would it take to be successful? Well, first, we'd need buy-in from all county municipal law enforcement agencies in Noises County. And when I say that, once we were up and running and we had an administrator in place and we started accepting applications and we started, and we started issuing permits, then we would have to train the constables, the deputies, the municipal agencies within the county on how to conduct a proper inspection on a permitted location. We would provide them with templates for warrants if they needed to get a warrant, to make entry, to do seizures, and that type of thing. We would need a strong commitment from the District Attorney's Office to aggressively prosecute criminal cases filed with their office. As I said, the sheriff found that out of twenty-three gambling cases filed since two thousand fifteen, twenty have been dismissed. That's not aggressive enforcement. And we need, if, if we're going to be serious about issues and criminal issues in this county, then we need to be aggressively pursuing prosecution. Otherwise, we're not going to get the response that, that this, that this Commissioners Court probably is looking for. We would need a commitment from the county attorney's office to aggressively pursue the civil injunction of relief. We would need a commitment from the Commissioners Court to adequately fund the office of game room administrator. Now, that's highly important. If you give me the next slide, please. Okay. Let's talk a little bit about funding. I did a little research first year funding. It's been, it would be my recommendation that we hire one lieutenant for the position. He would be the game room, he or she would be the game room administrator. The first year salary is fifty-two thousand, three, twenty-two. For deputy three positions, you know, we might hire deputy one or deputy two, but I would have to, I would have to fund for deputy three in case we hired at that level. And they would be conducting inspection, enforcement, background investigations, that type of thing. That's forty-four thousand, four hundred and seventy-four annual salary, which is seven hundred seventy thousand, hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars annually for the, annually. Then you got to figure the fringe benefit cost for all salaries, which is approximately twenty-two point zero six percent. That's additional fifty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. So total cost for salary and benefits for the first year is two hundred and eighty-one thousand for, eighty-one thousand and four dollars to fund a game room administrator's office. Then you have, oh, in addition, I talked to the, the fire marshal here for the county, and he said he would most likely need at least two additional personnel, which would be hired at the deputy three level. Then we would need units. There's going to be, I'm going to need five units. First year cost is twenty-five thousand per unit for equipment. That's upfront, emergency equipment, computer video. Then we have an eight thousand dollar annual lease because we went from a purchase, purchase model to a leasing model this year. So that's thirty-three thousand dollars a unit for the first year. And so that's three hundred and forty-two thousand first year. Each year after, it's an eight thousand dollar per year lease and an annual maintenance cost. A majority of the maintenance costs in our lease program are built into the lease agreement. Now, at the end here, you look at the total cost year, one-year salary, benefits, and equipment to the county, if you properly fund it, and again, the importance of funding, is forty, hundred, four hundred and forty-six thousand dollars and four cents. If you pass a game room ordinance and you don't properly fund the office for game room administrator, you've done nothing more here than, than pass an unfunded mandate, and I can guarantee you nothing's going to change. There'll be minimal, if any enforcement will take place. Noises County Sheriff's Office does not presently have the resources to adequately enforce a game room ordinance. That's, that's fact.
Chief, Chief Cook, do you have a slide that's upcoming? If, if so, I'll hold on revenue. In other words, the statute permits a, a fee to be?
I don't, I don't have a slide, but we're allowed to receive one thousand dollars for each application filed.
Per year?
Per year. And then, the Victoria ordinance allows for, and I, and I, and I don't know how legal it is, but I assume it's legal if they put it in there. They get, they put their own stickers on, and they get twenty-five percent of the value of what the state sticker costs for each machine.
They get twenty-five percent, so they do not?
So, so there's a, there's a state sticker.
Yes, sir.
And whatever the cost of that state sticker is, they, they have a city sticker that they collect tax on, and that's twenty-five percent of whatever that state sticker costs.
Per machine?
Per machine.
And there's a hundred game rooms. And what does the typical game room have on quantity of machines?
It would depend. I haven't been inside the game rooms here in Corpus Christi, but I think I've had a previous slide. What did they, they said they found forty-nine machines in the one game room. Some game rooms you might have fifteen or twenty machines, another game room you might have thirty. Many of the ordinances will limit the size. I think there was a couple ordinances I read that limited to like a maximum of fifty, fifty machines. And you can do other things like say, all right, you have to have fifteen feet of room per machine, so you can determine that. You have to have windows that you can see clearly through. You can determine, you can put in hours of operation, so they're not open to three or four in the morning, and you don't have those issues with them operating at all hours. So there, there are many, many things we can do to control them. But again, if you, if you pass the ordinance and you don't fund it, you're not going to get the enforcement. And then trying to, to get this, the municipal agencies on board to enforce it, that's going to be important. And we can meet with them and maybe convince them to do that. But the, but the Corpus Christi Police Department's already said that they're not doing it unless they get reimbursed for their resources, so.
I'm just trying to understand it, and I certainly understand one side of the argument and actually support resources. I don't think it's ever a good idea to create a department and not resource it. So I'm certainly supportive of that, but I am a little confused. In general, though, when we went over the history of crime, most notably the particular crime that occurred on one dash twenty-nine dash twenty-two, we don't suggest that in this county that if there's illegal activity, that we have to resource law enforcement to respond to illegal activity. In other words, illegal activity is illegal activity. We don't have to resource that.
No.
I want to make sure the community understands that we're here inside both jurisdictional, you know.
No, no, absolutely, Judge. If, if, if we get a call for, for service at these locations, we will certainly go. We respond. We're there. We take the report. We deal with the injured individuals if there's injuries. And I'm not saying, what I'm telling you though, is if you're going to pass an ordinance where you now are going to be permitting these game rooms, and you want us to be able to do the background investigations that are involved, you want us to issue the permits, you want us to follow up with the proper inspections, you want us to make sure, be able to go out and proactively go to locations where we know game rooms are operating to one, determine that, one, they're permitted, two, if they're permitted, are they in compliance with our ordinance, and three, if they're not permitted, the, the action we're going to have to take in order to, to shut them down. We don't have the resources for that right now. If you want all that additional, there's going to have to be additional resources.
Understood.
That, that's what I'm saying. Not saying that we won't go to a game room if there's a call for service, because we certainly do.
Commissioner Gonzalez, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, thank you. I think what, really, it's important that we have the the permitting in place because that's really the key to let you in that building without having to have a warrant. Because you're going to go back and check that building, to inspect the building because of the permit. So I don't know that we actually, I mean, I agree, it was everything you said, really, believe me, we need to have the resources. But I think that the permitting is very important. And we got to have the resources, but if, say for the first year, we provide a certain amount of money to provide certain resources, and maybe the second year, the monies that are again, from the permits, for the second year or for the confiscated, what it, once we, if you do confiscate whatever, that money would probably be paid, would make up for the, the resources that we need to have. I'm thinking, would it pay for itself, I think?
I, I, I didn't address that in my presentation, Commissioner, because I don't have any actual facts to back that up. I don't want to make a statement to the Commissioners Court that says, you know, if we start enforcing and we start collecting these fees, and we start making criminal cases, and we start seizing funds and machines and property, that, that it'll pay for us. Because I can't say that with certainty. And, and I certainly don't want to mislead you and have you come back to me a year later and says, Chief, you told us this would get paid for it. It's not. So, that's where I stand on it.
And I, and I understand, I understand that very, very, very clear, Chief. I understand it. But I'm just saying that we, we have to still think about it, that it could, it could help, it could benefit as far as, especially if you're going to charge per machine, you know, there's got to be some money coming in. And if you're going to get the permit and you're going to go in there and say, well, you got a hundred machines or a very hundred machines, it's twenty-five dollars extra or whatever it is. And I don't know that, I don't know what, what the legal jumbo is on that as far as, can you charge a fee for twenty, for every machine that's in there, twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars, or whatever it is? Is it legal to do that other than the permit? You know?
I will tell you Victoria County has it. Now, I would have to defer to the county attorney's office to say for certain.
Chief, what do they charge?
What do you mean?
Do you know what they charge for our machine?
What their ordinance says is they charge twenty-five percent of the cost of a state sticker.
Got it. And just so you know, I looked it up. The state sticker is twenty-five dollars.
Okay, so we'd only get twenty-five percent of twenty-five dollars for each machine, if, if we can legally do that.
If you got a hundred machines, that's a lot of money. That could be a lot of money.
So.
Commissioner.
Were you done?
Yeah. My last thing would be, Chief, if, you know, they got a call, there's a group of people out there that are trying to, I guess, form something kind of, of a committee that wanted to work with the sheriff department and the police department. And I thought, well, maybe they could meet with you and they can give you whatever ideas they have, you know, and, and make, just at least to meet with them to see what they got. So if you don't mind, I mean, I'd like to have them call you, and, and it could be a resource.
No problem, sir. I have a, I have a worksell number and a, and an office number. I'll be glad to give you my card. You give them my number. I answer it twenty-four seven, so I'll be glad to meet with whoever you want me to meet with, Commissioner. That's, that's not an issue at all.
But anyway, I just want, and, and I think some of their ideas are good, some of, you know, some of them need to be, but, you know, they, they even talk about, you know, having our own enforcement committee with, maybe partnering with the sheriff and partnering with the police department. But it's something they need to probably talk to you about because I think that they just want to give you some feedback of what they, of what they want to do. Or like, maybe what can be done or not be done. So I'm just going to give you a number and have them call you.
Right, sir. One, one other thing I wanted to mention that I may have skirted past and didn't intend to, is if all the ordinance allows for the bingo operators to have game rooms. I mean, to have gaming machines. So there's a likelihood that the, our, our bingo operators were going to have gaming machines within their establishments. I don't know that they will. Maybe they don't. I don't know that they will, maybe they don't want the headache. Uh, because I can, the, the biggest issue is you see these people in these game rooms spending money. I mean, ju- just like in Vegas, they're just pumping money into the machines. And the reality situation is they're not pumping money into those machines that, 'cause they're expecting a five-dollar return. I can assure you.
You know, and I got really one more question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, but this was brought up, if we regulate the game rooms, and I keep telling them, it's not a gambling room, it's a game room. Because I wouldn't support gambling room. I support maybe regulating the game rooms. But I, if, is there, is there anything within the law that says, we're gonna issue a permit to a gaming room, but in return, you're gonna be able to donate some of your funds to nonprofit organizations?
I have no clue. I have no clue, sir. I, I didn't see that in any of the ordinances. These are all private businesses, they're not, they're not, uh, uh, they're, they're not, uh, nonprofits. So, so no, you know, but I can't say for certain.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So remember that there are many people that wanted to visit with us? I'm gonna call upon them now, it doesn't mean the discussion is over between Commissioners and Chief, but Chief, would that be all right?
I'm fine with whatever you want, Judge.
I'll have you take a seat, I'll call on, on Helica Hernandez, um, just because I'm trying to get our governmental folks first, and then I'll call on everybody else.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you. And I apologize to the others that are waiting for public comment that I'm getting to go first just 'cause I'm a government official, but I'm trying to get to your Rotary Club meeting, my daughter's speaking, um, and I'm really proud of her. I just actually wanted to speak on this topic, but wanted to comment very quickly to say that all of our training events are being held out at Richard Borchardt, and we deal with Spectra. I didn't know that was on the agenda for today. They are top-notch. We have events with a hundred to a hundred and fifty law enforcement officers. We were the first to hold the legislative update in the state of Texas. We gave it as a free event to law enforcement. We have officers from all over the state come down for an in-person, uh, uh, training. They did our snacks, they did our lunch, and it is top-notch. We won't go anywhere else, and it's because of Spectra. And I just, for whatever it's worth, I just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you.
I support what Norman said earlier about the vehicles, just ask you to please keep that in mind. I wanted to let y'all know that since July of two thousand twenty, the District Attorney's Office issued a very public cease and desist letter in collaboration with the Corpus Christi Police Department regarding gambling in Corpus Christi. We worked very closely with Chief Mike Markle and Captain Israel Sosa, and they sent out these cease and desist letters to numerous gaming facilities across Corpus Christi, telling them that the Nuasis County District Attorney's Office would prosecute cases that came to us and that we were not in support of these type of operations, that they were operating contrary to federal law and state law. We attached to it a newspaper article where a lot of these gaming cases, even if they originate in Corpus Christi, are actually going federal. And these cease and desist letters went out, I guess you'd have to get with CCPD Captain Israel Sosa, but they went out to numerous agencies. So it's no big surprise for anybody who's been very active with our office to understand that District Attorney Mark Gonzalez has zealously prosecuted gaming cases. And we work very closely with our law enforcement partners to prosecute these cases. We met with the City Attorney's Office out of Corpus Christi. I believe it was Lilia Castro that attended those meetings, because we worked in collaboration on these cease and desist letters, because that's what our office does. When law enforcement partners want to do things like this, they reach out to our office and we drop everything to set these meetings up, to work in collaboration, because it doesn't work when one agency wants to step out on that platform by themselves. It takes a village, it is a team effort, and we all have to work together. We have to sit at a table and we have to figure it out from top to bottom. From how it's gonna work with warrants to searches, to cease and desist letters, to prosecution, to witnesses, to preparation, it is a long endeavor, and we have to work together, because criminals are getting smarter. They're learning how to work the system, they're learning how to get around it, and we have to do the same thing as law enforcement officials. And so with that being said, when the Sheriff's Department wants to sit down at a table with the Nuasis County District Attorney's Office and figure out how we beat this together, we're gonna sit down with them, just like we did with CCPD. Maybe we do it as a collaborative effort, like we did with, uh, Captain Sosa and Chief Markle and the city, and we figure out how we're gonna do this all together. We split the cost with the city, we, you know, make it a joint effort. I mean, I don't know why we reinvent the wheel, the city's already got something going, why don't we just tack on to that? I mean, they've been very fruitful, they've been working with us. For the first time, I saw that event that happened November of two thousand twenty-one that said the Sheriff's Department had some event where they issued all those gambling citations. The city calls us. They'll call Michelle or they'll call me at two in the morning, three in the morning, four in the morning. Hey, we just walked into this facility, we've got forty gaming machines, what do you want us to do? I'm just wondering why we didn't seize those forty-eight machines, quite frankly? Get those forty-eight machines? So maybe who, whichever detective has been assigned that case in November of twenty-one, Chief Cook, if they wanna give Michelle and I a call, uh, maybe we can still go do a search warrant and grab those machines and get them out of, uh, get them out of circulation. But that's something we would've liked to know that night, but that's how it works. We do it right then and there and, and get them out of commission. I mean, I think that's what the citizens kinda want, is let's take care of it when it's happening. So, um, I just wanted to say that we're on board, it just takes open communication.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, at this time, um, I'll, again, call it in the order, Margaret Baldwin?
May I be excused, Judge?
Yes, yes.
Judge, could I still ask some, I still have some questions I thought I was gonna get to ask, but it's a-
No, I'll come right back to you. Let me call on Margaret, then I'll go to your questions. Did you wanna ask him of Angelica?
No, I wanted to ask him of the Chief.
Okay, we'll bring Chief back in. You're okay, Chief, right, in staying here for a little while?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Word to Sheriff.
Okay, Ms. Baldwin?
Judge Canales, Commissioners, my name is Margaret Baldwin. I would like to comment on why game rooms should be regulated, why it is a good idea. Every business, no matter what business it is, has regulations. There's a list of the following that are highly regulated, I'd like to read. Adult daycare, amusement and recreational facilities, bail bondsman, bingo parlor, cosmetology, medical services, funeral homes, game, um, excuse me, gun shops, landfills, stockbroker, nonprofit organization, nursing homes, vending machines. I can go on and on. I went online and pulled up the two thousand twenty-two business, business license and permit, no matter what business is out there, whatever they're operating, they have rules and regulations. Some of them are, are much heavier regulated than others. Can you imagine what would happen if a nursing home had no regulations and they could do whatever they wanted? We wouldn't want that to happen. Or a funeral home and how they handle bodies, everything is regulated. We would ask that the game rooms be, uh, regulated, just as, for instance, if, uh, they were speaking that they had gang members that were running the game rooms. If they are regulated, they have to register, they would not be running them because they wouldn't be allowed to, because they couldn't pass background checks. The regulations that, of, for example, the Bell County and some of they say, some of the ordinance and what they said, would handle these issues. None of these businesses would be able to open their doors without getting licenses and permits to follow the regulations that were set forth for their businesses. I would like to ask the same of game rooms. Right now, game rooms are operated without regulation and guidelines. They do not have structure to operate properly to protect the public health and safety. And, and no structure have a clear picture what is acceptable and what is illegal and legal. With game room regulations, it would be better protect the public and serve the community if they were regulated. Right now, I've heard that there are some game rooms that have their doors locked, you can't go in. Their boards are boarded up around them, can't see in them, so you don't know what is happening. They're a cash business, having them regulated would allow for the county and the city to be able to, to look at their books at any time. At this point, right now, you can't see what's going on with them. With a cash business, it's better to be able to see them. Y'all were talking about funding, where to get the funding? As, as of nineteen eighty-nine, bingo was approved in Nuasis County to be able to operate. Since then, the bingo halls have been paying, uh, combined to the city and the county, two-point-five percent of everything that has been collected. I would go back and look at those numbers all the way from eighty-nine to see how much you have collected. It would be millions of dollars. In two thousand nineteen, between the city and the county, there was six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-four dollars collected. In twenty-twenty, there was five-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand and ninety-six dollars and seventy-four cents. In twenty-twenty-one, there was eight-hundred-and-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-three dollars and fifty-five cents. Here's your funding, here's your funding to regulate game rooms. Where is this money right now being used? This is the money to be able to use to fund this. This would fund the officers that are needed. We ask that you consider this. We'd be willing to talk individually with anybody about this at any time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ronnie Baker?
Judge, Commissioners, Chief, Chief. Let me just read a couple statements real quick. The bottom line is that we in law enforcement believe that what is occurring in these game rooms is gambling. It's a violation of state law. Sheriff Hooper. Now that you're bringing in gangs to operate these rooms, and what better way to make their money? Captain Robert Garza. The permit process will allow us to prove that gambling is happening, to prove that the money laundering is happening, and to prove the organized crime is a nexus, Sheriff Hooper. I want to permit it, I want to regulate it, Judge Canales. I hope the process is so onerous that no good person would apply to get one of these, and therefore law enforcement could step in. On behalf of both Chiefs, Sheriff Hooper is the one law enforcement officer that's, that's actually taken time to attend our meetings over the last two years. I know he's on a limited budget. Chief Cook- Correct, sir. Chief Cook, I thought, did a really good job. It's obvious that he recognizes there's an issue. I know it's funding. Those statements, two and a half years, two and a half years ago, two and a half years. And in that time, Sheriff Hooper cited fifty-one game rooms. Chief Cook has said there's as many as a hundred game rooms. Guys, if we don't do something, there's gonna be a hundred and fifty game rooms. And whether or not bingo goes away, game rooms prey on the most vulnerable people in your community. The people that don't have a lot of money, that go in and take their paychecks and put them into the sweepstakes machines and get a percentage back enough to keep them coming back. In the bingo halls, there's signage up that recognizes the, the control from the state. It also recognizes if you have a gaming issue, and you'll find none of that in game rooms. I'll defer back to the statement that was made by these many nonprofits over the last two and a half years, that they're gonna cease to exist. Sheriff Hooper was asking two and a half years ago for help. I would ask the city and the county to utilize the funds that are provided by charitable bingo to do something with these game rooms. I appreciate your time, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Ronnie. Suzanne Taylor?
Hello, Commissioners, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about this issue today. Um, I am Suzanne Taylor, I'm treasurer for several nonprofit organizations that do derive money from bingo. But I wanted to go back to rules and regulations. It was the finding of the Bell County Commissioners Court that some illicit game rooms, in an apparent effort to avoid detection, operate in locations within adequate floor space and fire accidents, exits, sometimes in locked rooms, which pose a health and safety threat to the public in the event of a fire or any other need to evacuate the premises. Since most game rooms' operations are inherently cash-based, it is important to those who own or operate the game rooms that they're of good character in order to protect those who play the games from cheating or fraudulent activity or from any other forms of criminal conduct. So we come back to where we are today. The sheriff has publicly stated that game rooms paying out cash are illegal, yet they have continued to be allowed to operate without no oversight because of the shortage of law enforcement manpower. It is the responsibility of this court and you, the Commissioners, to approve an ordinance with regulations to protect the health and safety of the public. Once again, we're looking at you, the court, you have the authority, you have the ability. And it's more than that, you have the responsibility to help in this instance. The game rooms have continued, as Ronnie was saying, for two and a half years. Two and a half years ago, we brought it to the courts that this was happening. They're operating, the sheriff has said it's illegal. I, I can't believe that we allow it to continue in our community, a hundred game rooms. That's just, that's overwhelming to even think that it's allowed to continue to get to this point. We're, we're having problems figuring out funding. Charge the game rooms, the same way bingo hall pay price fees, the state and the city get the money. Increase those fees, charge a thousand dollars a machine if that's what it takes to fund it. They should fund their own regulation. You shouldn't have to look for other funding, the game rooms themselves should be charged to whatever funds are required to operate them. Thank you so much for your time, and, and please, I, I pray that you all, once again, look at this thing, do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Betty Sheets?
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners and everyone here present. I wake up every morning hoping and praying that we can perform a works of mercy somehow that day for another baby, someone hungry, someone thirsty. And I keep trying every day to do this, along with many other people, it's not just me. I'm gonna tell you something, I'm not proud of it, but this is what happens to me. I had a judgment put on me for a credit card, because I spent all this money, we, 'cause we weren't getting any bingo money. And I'm not gonna look in a child's eyes, a mother's eyes. Anybody here, if you need help, I'll get you that help, I promise you that. Thank you all for listening, and I hope you listen to the Bingo Commission.
Thank you, Ms. Sheets. Gary, is it Valencia? He left. Okay. How about Ms. Tamara, um, is it Brennan? She had to leave. And Norman Morton? I think, he spoke earlier, that's correct. Okay, and then I do believe that represents everybody. Connie, could you do a double check for me online? I don't see anybody. Commissioner Chesney, you wanted to address Chief Cook, we'll turn to you now.
Some questions, yes, and some, um, comments, too. Thank you, Judge. So will you guys be putting forth a law enforcement ordinance that, that you can support? Because that's kinda what we're waiting for, something from law enforcement to say, here's an ordinance that we think would work in Nuasis County. I mean, your law enforcement, that's, you know, it can either be someone else does it and I'm gonna come to you anyway and say, is this realistic? Or y'all can get with the county attorney and propose it, because to me, law enforcement has to sign off on this as realistic. I get all the points, and I'm gonna talk about some of the funding mechanisms. But assuming we give you those funding mechanisms, is that something that you're gonna put forth to us so that we can look at?
I need to defer to the sheriff if, uh-
Okay. Sheriff Hooper?
Sheriff, if you wouldn't mind- Sheriff, if you wouldn't mind, just because of the online, we'll have to pass you a mic. Thank you. Just that mic helps us with the online.
Hey, Commissioner, I don't know that it's law enforcement's role to write a law. I don't believe it is. You, this Commissioners' Court, has the authority to write that law, working with the county attorney. And if y'all choose to do that, we'll, we'll stay in our lane, and we'll, we'll do what we're obligated and able to do in our role in the criminal justice system.
Sheriff, that's an interesting response, because if the, if the county clerk has something they want changed, or the district clerk, I would ask them to do the same thing, would be, not just law enforcement, but would be to get with the county attorney and, and give us something that models around what you're looking for.
And we will, we will participate.
Okay, because the five of us can't go sit down with the county attorney because it's a, it's a violation of a quorum. So, we have to have someone who'll take the lead on getting with the county attorney to, to do this. And certainly, somebody from the court may want to be there, but I'm just, I'm just waiting for an ordinance to be shared with us so that we can look at it and, and figure it out. And, and, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm, I'm not the person to write an ordinance on law enforcement, but I thought that's why y'all had gotten Victoria and Bell County and some of those references to look at, so that somebody could start that process, so that we would know where we are. Because I'm just telling you, I'm not signing off anything until you tell me that this is doable in Nuasis County from a law enforcement standpoint.
I don't believe it's doable in Nuasis County.
You don't believe any ordinance is doable?
I don't think any ordinance is doable at this moment in time.
Okay, well, then tell us why. And then that may, that, okay.
So, I'm not going to speak for the city of Corpus Christi, but we are that urban county, and we are extremely dependent on the city of Corpus Christi. It was a world record year for homicides. It was a, a world record in the city of Corpus Christi and for traffic fatalities. We have serious issues in this region, and game rooms is not one of them at this moment in time. The reason we looked at those four other ordinances in four other counties is to see if they were, in fact, effective. And the languages are different in all those ordinances. None of them are effective. None of them are being enforced. The city of Corpus Christi has an ordinance against fireworks. How's that working out? Fireworks. How's that working out? It makes absolutely no sense to make a law that cannot be enforced. The gaming industry is a very fluid operation, and now they are transitioning more and more to online betting. You can't watch a football game without being solicited into some type of online betting operation. And the same thing is happening with the local game rooms. It's going virtual. And so, creating an ordinance that is addressing the game room industry as it looks in the, at this exact moment in time is going to be frivolous, because they will adapt, they will adjust, they will modify, to the point where the ordinance won't be enforced, or can't be enforced.
Hang on one second. Let me, so, in the presentation that y'all made, that the chief just made, it, it says, what would it take to be successful? And he puts out four different points that it would take to be successful, which would then imply to me that this is what it would take to be successful, which was presented by him. And I thought, I guess on, I thought on behalf of you, so, I don't know how to react exactly, but to say, so you not think with these things?
I don't. I don't. But if, if the direction in this community and in this room is for us to move forward, working with the county attorney, to craft something, to hire somebody, to get this thing moving in that direction, we will participate. And I agree with Angelica Hernandez. There's a lot of moving parts. There's prosecution. There's the tax assessor collector with the tax stamp on the machine. There's the state comptroller's office. There's the fire marshal. There are going to be a lot of moving parts in the creation and attempt to do something that I don't think is going to be successful.
We won't know until we try, Sheriff, right?
Absolutely.
You know, I, I'm just not the one to say, it's not going to work. I think we need to say, let's try, see if it works. And if, and if they got to, if they change their style and move them in another direction, well, I think it's working, because now they've got to go back to square one and start changing their style, start changing, doing other things. You know, at one point, we just have to say, if it's, if it's the money, let's, let's find the money. We should have the money. The bingo gave us money. Let's find out how much money we have. Let's do it. But I think, I think we need to go to the table, at least, to say, we gave it a shot. You know, we gave it a shot, and let's try it. You know, that's the way, that's the way I feel. I mean, and I appreciate you to say, hey, you tell me to go with it, we'll go with it, you know? And, and I know that sometimes, you know, it looks darker than brighter, but I tell you what, if we hit half of those and, and where it hurts, I think, you know, and, and they're not going to be hurting, you know, a lot, but at least where it hurts. And then, once you start shooting, you know, closing down one or two or three, you know, maybe the word will start getting out. But I, I just think the answer is, is not, no. The answer is, is find a solution. And the solution is, we need to try. We need to try. I mean, that's just, and we need your help, right? We need your help. So...
So, and let me, another question. Help me understand, too, the regulations, like, how it works with inside the city limits, outside the city limits. There's, is there anything that prohibits the sheriff's department from, I, I, I don't know, you know, I know there's the home, the home rule issue, but I don't know how it works with law enforcement. So, that's why I'm legitimately asking. Is there anything that, that prohibits law enforcement to responding or to regulating, help regulate the game room if the court sees fit to do that? Meaning, that's inside the city limits, or does it have to be an inter-local agreement with the city? Or, and maybe that's a legal question, I don't know, but how would that work if you know?
No, there's no legal issue with it. It's a matter of assets and ability.
Right.
It's a matter of what we have available to us as an agency. And we are, we are not the big dog in this region.
No, no, I agree. So, if we, but if, if this court determined to move forward with a, an ordinance, that you've acknowledged that you don't think will work, fair enough. I, I respect that, I really do. But that you would participate in good faith, and I know you would, because I know the kind of man you are. You would do, you, if you give your words, you'd help, you'd help. And like he said, you're the only one that's ever even gone and met with them from a law enforcement standpoint, so kudos again to you. If the, if the Commissioners' Court came up with, as part of the regulation, a significant fee, and she went where I was, you know, going to, to provide those resources, meaning that we made a high registration fee for, per machine, or per whatever the case may be, that would provide probably, if there's 100 game rooms, and there's going to be 150 or whatever there is, because illegal's illegal. If it's legal, I'm not putting anybody legal out of business. If it's illegal, then nobody wants illegal, right, until the laws change. If the laws change someday, and there's gambling in Texas, then this, this is moot. But right now, the law is what the law is, whether people like it, or whatever side you fall on the gambling issue. The bottom line is, the law right now is, it's illegal. So, if we provided those fees and the registration to provide those resources, either as through the sheriff's office, or some sort of contracting with someone to do it, if y'all, you know, if you didn't want to be directly involved, is that something that would help you believe that maybe then it was doable? And I mean significantly, like $1,000 a machine, $2,000 a machine, whatever the case may be, that doesn't intentionally run them out of business, but that makes them understand to get into this business, they've got to pay that registration fee, and that we have now money to allocate to law enforcement or enforcement. Would that make any difference in this, if the resources were provided to you? Meaning, the financial resources?
We could move forward with that process.
Commissioner Chesney, I'm going to let you continue. I just want you to be mindful that these two Commissioners also want to ask a few questions.
Yes, ma'am, I'm about done.
But just to throw in, this is why I get to be the presiding officer, on that line of questioning, if you had a $100 fee, that would be, and you had 100 game rooms with 25 games on average, that's the $250,000 that's needed. That's not even including the $100,000 that would be available for the permitting on an annualized basis. But if you raise that to $1,000, and you're looking at $2.5 million, and that's a game changer. That's all I wanted to say.
Judge and Commissioners, you just, I, I think you need to be careful, because I think the Texas Local Government Code limits the, the amount of fees you can charge. And that's something that the county, the county attorney's going to have to address. But, but I believe that the Texas Local Government Code may limit what, what fees, what the limit of the fees are.
So, it's super interesting you say that. So, I've, I've, that's exactly what we were advised, until we noticed that every other county is not abiding by that. And so, what I would suggest is send it up to the AG's office and ask them what the, what the understanding of the legislation is. I totally agree. If you read the Local Government Code, it appears that it's a $1,000 per annualized fee for a permit, but it doesn't speak, it's vague as to everything else. It just speaks to that annual. And that's what got me, too, is I said, gosh, they really didn't give you any dollars here to, to work with. And then, some other fancy attorney said, well, you know, it's just talking about that annual permit, not your individual. And so, I'm with you. I'd love clarity, because I, if we had that ability, that could be part of that equation. Commissioners, forgive me. Chesney, go ahead.
Just, that's fine. I'll try and keep my train of thought and finish up. So, it sounds like what we need to do is, Jenny, sorry, this may fall to you, if the court's so inclined, to, to start the process of an ordinance, getting with the sheriff, and, and also getting with the bingo people, and I'd say, and the game room people, too. I mean, everybody deserves a chance to have a say. To answer the, the nice lady in the back about where's that money gone, the bingo, that's in the general fund, and that was never anticipated to be something for something else. But at the same time, I do think there's the opportunity to, to provide, because what I do agree with the sheriff on, and I agree with him on most, most things, is that to, to put an ordinance in place with no resources is foolish, because it's just another unfunded mandate. Whoever, Chief said that. I mean, I 100% agree with that. So, either we have to figure out how, put resources involved in this, so that we can move it forward, and move it forward with some level of, of knowledge that we'll be doing that, or it's a worthless ordinance. So, that I agree with. But I, but I, I think, that's a good point, Judge. We need to check on that funding mechanism and, and see what the maximum amount is that we can get, and see if the numbers match up, you know?
And we would ask, to that end, the special help of the legislative team, because the bingo has a bingo ordinance.
You mean the ones we don't have?
Hasn't, has a code that allows for the fees and outlines this charitable thing, whereas the county doesn't have that authority to, you know, you can't just say, oh, it does, it's the statute silent, so we're going to do this. This county has to do what is specifically given to it. And so, that would be, aside from those things that we can do, there would be a statutory change that would perhaps need to be there.
Which by then, we will have a team. And we currently have a governmental relations liaison now that could do some initial research on that, that is in-house. And, and, and because we can't do anything with that right now until the legislature comes in to pass, but that's a great suggestion to put. And so, make that as a note when you suggest legislative agenda items for when we do have that team in place.
I'm going to smile and just move on to Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you, Judge. I strongly believe that they should pay, have, have a fee. There's a lot of these businesses going up, and if we continue to let these people keep opening, as it is, I feel we've lost control of, of our city. There's so much crime going on. There's people killing people just about every weekend, okay? And we need to get our control back to our city, to let our law enforcement people, give them the resources they need to do their job. And, you know, I mean, I had a business at one time, and I had to pay fees, permits, licenses, but, you know, that's what it takes to be legal. And these people just come up and pop up their businesses, and, you know, that's short of organized crime to me, okay? You let them get away with this, and it keeps going on, we're going to lose control of our city. So, I, I am support, totally support that we should make them pay some kind of fee, the most extreme fee that we can for them to pay within the premise of being legal. And we'll see how many of them survive. That's my thought.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Mottis.
Thank you, Judge. I, I think the court has already mentioned most, including the chief and the sheriff. And one is, if, if we're going to do this, we need to do it right, and that is, fund it. If we do go that route, if that's ultimately where we need to go, because I'm glad that was an option, because at the, at the beginning of your presentation, Chief, I was wondering and worried, how can you put this responsibility on government and not put anything to back it up? So, if we do get to that point, I strongly support that. And I would hope, Judge, that you, like the numbers you brought up, that we can justify that, right, through the fees, that would help cover the cost of that additional ask, because that's almost half a, a million, based on personnel and equipment and all of that. And, and I don't think we, we have enough to find that right now, if we were to make that decision today, or within a week, or a few months. So, that would be one of my concerns moving forward. And, and, and also, I guess this issue is an issue of, it seems that there are some that want to operate legally. I've heard that there are some that heard or believe in a magic sticker that they can buy right now and operate legally. And yet, those are some that are still, that are operating all illegal elements. So, that's obviously not anything that, that I'm going to cross the line into, into law enforcement's purview, or the DA's purview. Y'all handle what y'all need to handle on the illegal part. But whatever we can do to help support you and give you those resources, I want to do that. And that means working with the county attorney, working with our, our legislative team to get us in the right steps, and to follow some good examples that are always, that are already out there, Victoria County and a few others. So, those, those are my concerns that I think have been shared. I definitely want to see us move forward. But, but in the meantime, I, I think, you know, having some more public input, or, or perhaps some sort of function, town hall function, or something like that, that can be hosted through the sheriff's office, and of course, opened up to Commissioners' Court to be there. I'd love to be able to listen and participate, and allow the public to share both perspectives on there, as they already have been through all these public comments that we've been having over the last several meetings. But I think it is important that we, we find out, how can we balance this need with the dollar amount? Will these fees, will these stickers allow to cover for that? And does this match a need, Sheriff, like you were saying, when, when, grand scheme of things, there's so many other items to cover in, in this county, you know, where, where does this fall? And we know that there's been some serious crimes that have been listed that Chief mentioned, but compared to everything else that y'all are having to tackle. So, I definitely support, and you believe we need another lieutenant and, and at least a few other officers to support that, I'll be in favor of moving forward with that. So, thank you.
Just to continue, as they say, the efficiency of the court, my only comment that we really have not addressed is that I'm aware that we have our fire marshal here with us today, Jose Olivares. And I really would like to hear, I know he has at least studied some of these regulations, and like you, Chief, and like sheriffs, visited with other fire marshals. I don't believe the regulations themselves are the issue. I believe we could sit down, as parties, as already been laid out, to discuss the regulations. If, if the court recalls, regulations had already been brought to court once before, regulations have been handed to us once before. I don't think it's the actual regulations, although I do support people gathering, as you said, and talking, and making sure that there is, you know, at least you want, you want law enforcement to have consensus on the actual document. But I know for a fact that those have been moving around constantly. My real issue is, do we have a mechanism if those, if A, then B, if those regulations come to court, and they can be supported, and funding can be arranged? Marshall, do you believe that your office could assist implement the way it's been designed in other counties? It seems you're an integral part here, working with the sheriff.
Commissioners, Judge, thank you. Yes, ma'am, I do, in short. I'm going to try and be as short as possible. But I have spoken to both Chief, the sheriff, and I've had a little conversation with you, Judge. I'd be more than willing to try and tackle the problem. I know these guys are super busy, and, and I sympathize with the, with the sheriff. I mean, he's got his hands full. Give me the opportunity to try to tackle this problem and, and alleviate some of the...
And, and you have a background in investigative work. Is that correct?
I, I do. We, I, I have been fortunate enough to, to have been on, A, A, game room operation with the city of Corpus Christi.
When you were a police officer?
When I was a police officer, yes, ma'am. Since having a meeting with the sheriff and the chief... Since having a meeting with the sheriff and the chief, I have put together a very similar ordinance that Bell County uses. I have submitted it to Ms. Iday. It was just yesterday, I'd been working on it for a couple of weeks now. Just yesterday was submitted to her, so, we do have something kind of in place, and, and kinda get the, the ball rolling, okay? If you guys so choose to let me assist with that.
That was gonna be, I was trying to come back to the sheriff. If you submitted that to Iday, I don't know if the sheriff, have you seen that one? So, I think, cause I, what I would like to do, I mean, we talked about it too, too much earlier, we, we, we need to get down to the nitty gritty, and if we're gonna support it, I think we should support it. I think we need, I think we need to, I support the ordinance, I support the permitting, and I think we should make a motion to support that, and then start working on the tools of what do we need to make it work. But I think the sheriff, if you look at the Bell County, what, I want, I wanna hear from you, and, and, and Chief Cook, that this is, this is one, a better one than this one. I mean, I know you talked about two or three of them, Chief, but I wanna, I wanted from you saying, I think this is probably the best we can work with. You know, and you got one, two, or three, I, I think if you got, you select one, we'll give it to the county attorney, we can go from there. But I think we just, I, I, I really think we need to support this, this, today, I think we need to make, so we can start doing, making some progress. I mean, we, we talk about this thing all the time, we talk, 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 but the problem, I think it's time to find some solutions, and, and, and the solutions are here today, because you, you talked about some. Marshall, you submitted a, 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 a sample, so I think we need to let the sheriff, the chief look at it, and, and look at the other two they have, or three that they have, that they talked about, and I think which is the best one they can go with?
I, I do know that, I have, I have an ordinance in hand that, which was originally reviewed, I believe, by the county attorney's office. I've been looking at it, and I think the sheriff has, has reviewed that one. I haven't seen the fire marshal's ordinance yet. So, we can certainly be involved. I, I would wanna be part of that discussion, if, if, if this court is gonna move forward with an ordinance, I would certainly want the office involved in, in having some influence on what, what needs to be in there, of course, legally in there, so that it makes our job easier. You just have to understand that we'll start out with permitting and inspections, to make sure that they meet everything, the background investigations, then we're gonna have to conduct inspections to make sure they're in compliance, once we give them, and then, if they're operating within the ordinance, then we still have to do the undercover work to make sure they're not paying out illegally. So it's gonna be nonstop, it's gonna continue. You know, say we have 20 game rooms, 25, 30, whatever, operating in Neoces County, we'll still have to regularly do enforcement, work undercover, work, you know, and, and that's additional funds, that's an impress fund, that you gotta have money so you can gamble with. I mean, that's, it, it gets very convoluted, and, and I know this because I, I managed narcotics vice investigation for four years, and it, it, it's very resource intensive, and I, I just, so you guys understand that, if you move forward with it, and if you're willing to provide the assets, the funding for it, as the sheriff said, we'll, we'll do what we need to do at the direction of the court.
Well, the, the item here, we can't take any action today, cause there's not an action item.
I understand sir.
But I will put it back in the agenda, next, next meeting, maybe, and so we can take some kind of action.
And I think you've heard the will of the court is, you, you can sort of see where the direction's going, so, you know, Marshall, sheriff, chief, you guys can get together without us, and, you know, compare notes. It's not like y'all have been siloed up, y'all have been talking to each other constantly. I mean, everyone's gonna have their different, I'll, I'll call on you in just one moment. Everyone's gonna have their little different, you know, tweaks, and then, as Commissioner Chesney said, or Gonzalez, I don't recall who, I know it came from the right over here, is that it's a good idea to share, right? The, the advance notice of the regulations, you have a concerned group of citizens here, they've been the same group that's been with us for the last two years, why not offer the opportunity to gather with them? Likewise, there are people who believe that they could be op, they could operate legally, share that, those, share that document with them, so they know what's coming, and what standards, you know, might be applied. In the meantime, we'll start asking a few more questions of upon high, at the state level, regarding that quandary of what we can charge, what we can't. But I think what you're hearing is that it's the will of the court to at least get you to go to that next step, so that when the action item comes, that you know that there's gonna be, at least the movement towards a permitted type of establishment. I think we can all agree that, you know, as you say, it, it opens up a long corridor, but the idea of having something permitted does give the prosecutor's office, when you're in violation of that permit, an opportunity to do certain things, including civil forfeiture. That is important. So I think it's not a matter of what we don't, we're not, we are going to acknowledge all of the difficulties that you've so well put together, but rather, an opportunity to at least take a step towards really weeding out the most offensive, the most, I mean, if you don't wanna get permitted in a regulatory way, you're probably not doing something right there. So we can eliminate what they call that low hanging fruit, and low is the operative word there, and then really work with people who at least want to attempt to do it correctly, and then, again, make certain that we provide those funding resources. But, it is intriguing that, you know, we made this step, I think in 2019, to have a fire marshal, we weren't thinking about game rooms at the time, but clearly, counties were across Texas. And why? Well, because marshals inspect things, and they normally inspect establishments. That is a normal course of their business practice, and they normally work with receiving fees and, and compliance. So I think there's some synergies here, and if you would just, Jose, please, you know, get a copy immediately to everybody, and circulate it all the way around, it's really not a secret, I think, just circulate it. And now, I think I need to call on, forgive me, but I think he wanted to go first.
That's fine.
And then I'll move to you, and maybe you all will bring me those wonderful little fancy buttons, so that I'll see, and I don't have to have chameleon eyes in the back of my head, as to who's wanting to visit first, but I know you were waiting.
Yeah, I just have one question. Marshall, I wanna thank you for offering to help with this problem, but, and I know you sent a memo.
Yes.
When will you be getting your certification for Marshall?
Hopefully I finish off the semester, I'm enrolled in Houston Community College at the time, so, at the end of the semester, I'm hoping to be...
Is that May?
May, yes ma'am.
Well, I wish you luck, so we can get all this going.
I need it, sure, thank you. A prayer to, to, or help.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Chesney, your turn.
Thank you Judge. I think what we did at the last meeting for this one was, put it on as an action item for the 23rd, and I think the judge or someone else nicely put it on for today, to have the presentation, so we could get this started. I, I have, I've seen several versions, I haven't seen any specific regulations in Neoces County, I have seen several versions, Bell County, Victoria County, I've looked through some of those. What, what I'm just asking to happen, and it's not a motion, cause we can't do it today, and, and it wasn't intended to be, today was just to get it started, because we have to get this ordinance in place, and we had to find out what was going on. But, by the 23rd, or, we have a meeting first part of March too, it could be that, you know, that's like a week later, it, cause I know, we, we give the county attorney a thousand things to do, so I don't know if realistically she can get an ordinance drafted by the 23rd, but, but, so maybe it needs to be back to the first, but the bottom line is, we need to, we wanna get it done, we wanna get something done, and we, we wanna get those resources put forward, in, in a manner that everybody feels comfortable about. So, I, I, my, my tendency would still be to think that law enforcement needs to be, you know, the, the ones who enforce, but I'll listen to whatever comes up, I just wanna get going. I, I don't, I didn't see in the initial presentation Chief, all the undercover work, and that's additional cost, that wasn't in the presentation, that, you know, that's a little, I don't know how far we need to go on that personally, but we definitely need to have an ordinance in place that law enforcement in some capacity is involved, and can go out and do something about it. And, obviously the DA would need to be involved in this too, to make sure that they think it's practical, and, and hopefully we can come back on the 23rd, and if it's not the 23rd, Jenny, if you'll just let them know, it's because you're having a hard time getting done everything that we've given you to do, and I promise you, that's not an excuse folks, we give her new things to write up every week, we'll probably give her four today. So if you can't get it done on the 23rd, and we can push it to March 2nd, then, I think that's fine, as long as everybody knows that's going to be a presentation of an actual ordinance that we can pass, and there's not gonna be any more just talking about it, we're gonna take action. That would be my suggestion, not a motion, cause I can't make it today, but, let's just, I agree, I think we all wanna get something going, so, thank you Judge, appreciate your time, and, and thanks for ever putting it on today too.
Okay, all right, thank you all. I'm going to move forward at this time, and...
Just one motion to the table if I could, if we're going off...
Well, there's no table, it's just a discussion.
No, 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 on another item, just whenever you're...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Judge, I wanted to just...
If you're just, I don't know why, your mic is, is, is really low.
I know, and I'm trying to, I'm like, almost...
But it's better when you do that.
I'm like, besides eating it, I can't get any closer, I know, but I'm getting like up.
Okay.
Okay, I'll try to eat it. I just wanted to make a motion to table 3A5 Judge.
Hey, let me go there please, if you could give me just one moment.
Be what?
3A5.
3A5? Second.
All right. Motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you Judge, I appreciate your time.
All right. I feel like it's incumbent upon me to tell you guys that I'm gonna try to at least get us through H1 and the consent agenda, but I also want you to know that we have an executive session item that requires an attorney's presence, and he's available at a certain time, and so that was gonna be the lunch hour, I thought that would have been smart. It seemed really smart yesterday, that we would have plenty of time this morning to do that, to take our lunch break, but do it during executive session. I'm gonna still try to do that, but in order to appeal to all the other good people that are here for regular agenda, I'd like to ask the court if they would be willing to take just that one executive session item out for that attorney, okay? And, at, at noon, it's our insurance case, we'll tell you how it's styled right now. It's the Lloyds of London, it's item A. That particular attorney is kind of expecting us around the lunch hour to accommodate his schedule, that's consult with county attorney and outside counsel regarding arbitration case, Lloyds of London, Neoces County versus certain underwriters. If we could see how fast we could work, I would like to, I'm sure he could accommodate a 12:15, if Belinda or somebody might text him for me, but I would like to take at least a small executive session break around 12:15 to take that particular lawyer's comments for us, and then if we had to, we'd come into regular agenda and come back out into executive, okay? All right, having said that, let's move swiftly.
Judge, can we get Alyssa out of here?
Yes, that's where, that's where I was headed, believe it or not, I see her.
I know there's plenty of people that deserve, but, I know...
Well, and, I, I do appreciate that. The only thing is, do you think we could do H1, just to move that forward? Do we have any member, do you remember last time court, we were gonna discuss BMAC, and talked to one of our current serving BMAC members, who was also an employee? Did that ever get resolved? Is this something we should move, move on today, or is, you need more time?
Judge, there's also a related regular session item, it's 3A4, so y'all might wanna take those up together.
Then let's do that together, okay? All right, so for the audience, we're gonna skip G1, skip H1, and I'll come to the consent as soon as we receive a presentation from 3A1, that's Alyssa Barrera-Mason, she's the executive director of the DMD, otherwise known as Downtown Management District. It sorta has the affection in my heart as being just the very best, and she's got a contract that needs to get approved today, so she's here to give us a presentation, and I, I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, I've already looked at this contract, and I'd like to make the motion to approve, I'd ask for a second, and during the discussion, would receive her presentation. Okay, motion in a second, Alyssa, let us know about your current and past activities.
Wonderful, thank you Judge and Commissioners, I appreciate your invitation to be here this morning. I do have a hard copy of our 2021 impact report that I'd be happy to hand out, and then we, this year have changed our format, we've now produced a, a short video that I think captures what we've accomplished in the past year, and that enables us to put it on our YouTube, and educate the community and the public about what we've been doing downtown, so, if we can go ahead and, that's pulled up so it can play, and I'll hand out this impact report as well.
And, and forgive me, I just wanna make sure, so this will be your presentation, the three minute video?
Yes, yes Judge.
Boy, maybe we should get you to be the template. Honestly, because visual, and, well, visual and auditory are fantastic ways to learn, and they say that's the attention span of most folks, so, let's press, press play. And turn the audio, please Connie. Okay, let's start it, there we go, start us again with high audio.
Thirty years ago, downtown property owners banded together with the support of the City of Corpus Christi to create the Corpus Christi Downtown Management District. Three decades later, this 2021 impact report shows how that legacy has been carried forward. With support from the community, our neighbors, and new leadership across all levels of government, we have advanced our founders' request to work collaboratively to create the most vibrant downtown on the Gulf of Mexico. Hello, I'm Alyssa Barrera-Mason, executive director for the Downtown Management District. 2021 was a restorative year for the DMD, finding ways to bring the community back together after a year-long hiatus due to COVID-19. Our board and freshly energized team worked strategically to make substantial improvements that positively impacted the greater downtown area, by providing enhanced cleaning, beautification, and safety services, developing and improving the downtown economic market, marketing and promoting an exciting cultural district, and building an effective downtown organization that is passionate about moving downtown forward. These key areas of focus are what keeps our downtown economic engine turning. Let's take a closer look. In district operations, our eight-person clean team worked 365 days, collecting 40,000 bags of trash, sweeping 55,000 block faces, and spending 17,000 hours servicing the district. We brought the sparkle back to our historic Main Street on Chaparral, by illuminating over 100 trees through Mayor Paul Equartos' Illuminando Downtown Initiative, presented by Corpus Christi Medical Center. And through city partnership, we invested over $400,000 to convert five one-way streets to two-way streets, that now seamlessly connect the shoreline bayfront to the downtown area. We also invested $150,000 into beautifying Artesian and Laratama Parks, refreshing over 1,800 flowers, and providing 11,000 planter upkeeps throughout the district. To develop and improve, in 2021, businesses once again flourish, with the opening of 10 new businesses and no business closures. We awarded and paid $540,000 to businesses for completed projects with support from the downtown reinvestment zone. With the city's support, we were able to spend $50,000 in Texas Cares Act funding, to provide pop-up patios to downtown businesses that were in need of assistance during the pandemic, making downtown an iconic outdoor dining destination, and earning recognition in Texas Town and City Magazine. To understand post-COVID demand and market impact, we studied residential and parking demand in the downtown area, finding demand remains strong, with 1,700 new units available for development in the next 10 years, and an increase in parking utilization of 11% in the downtown Marina Arts and Waters Edge districts. In communication and events, we reached 2.4 million social media users on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. We hosted multiple events in the downtown area, drawing over 100,000 visitors to our area, and we know that number, because we also have a new system in place, Placer AI, that enables us to track attendees in the downtown area utilizing their phones. This year, we were able to successfully bring back art walk post-COVID, in the form of two street closures now known as art walk block parties. This transition now brings close to 20,000 people to an art walk event on that first Friday night. We launched the weekly downtown run club, establishing an entire new segment of downtown stakeholders, while leveraging our beautiful natural resources of the bayfront. That program has brought over 1,200 runners to participate and take a wonderful run on a Wednesday night. This holiday season, we elevated our downtown visitor experience, by enhancing our holiday decorations and hosting holiday events, which drew in over 32,000 people and reached 190,000 people on social media. This includes the 66-foot HB Christmas tree with a lighting in Waters Edge Park, the Port of Corpus Christi Holiday Tree in Laratama Park, and the Illuminated Boat Parade sponsored by the Port of Corpus Christi, Mayor's Mariest Downtown Decoration Competition, hosted by NEC Co-op Energy, and Artesian Park Holiday Wonderland, which gives recognition... Wonderland, which gives recognition to our downtown Advisory Council supporters. Thanks to our 29 merchant association members, we had support and coordination throughout the year, during the holidays and other special events. In organizational management, our team managed $788,000 in reinvestment zone funds, 314 in inter-local support from the City of Corpus Christi, and fundraised $228,000 from sponsorships, grants, and events. Our downtown property owners really appreciate these matching funds that go along with the DMD levy to fund our organizational's operations. We would like to say thank you to the City of Corpus Christi, our Advisory Council members, the community, and all of our partners who continue to invest in the future of downtown Corpus Christi. Over the course of 2021, we successfully recruited five additional team members from across the country to build out a team of dynamic, passionate individuals dedicated to moving downtown forward, and I want to be sure to recognize those individuals, as none of our 2021 accomplishments would have been possible without the dedication of our wonderful team. Our greatest labor of love this year was the development and adoption of our new five-year strategic plan, which sets a challenging and bold agenda for the future of our community and organization. This plan includes a new vision and mission statement. The vision of the Downtown Management District is to create the most vibrant downtown on the Gulf of Mexico by instituting a clean and safe environment, creating a welcoming, well-designed waterfront, developing a robust, sustainable neighborhood, promoting remarkable prismatic experiences, and growing our team capacity to accomplish that vision. And while we always aim to look forward, our annual impact report highlights the accomplishments that our team delivered to our community this past year. So what is the state of downtown in 2022? We're certainly still tenacious, but we're feeling more collaborative and energized than ever before.
Good.
Alyssa, that's very well done.
Thank you, Judge.
I had the pleasure of serving on those first boards. I'm trying to remember, so your establishment date was when?
Tonight, 1993.
Okay, so 93, so I served in, here goes dating myself, I served in 96. Norma Urban was not just a true visionary, but she was my dear friend, and she started the DMD as the first executive director, and while we've honored her in many beautiful ways, including at our own park with a obelisk, beautiful art piece, which she would have loved because she was an artist, the truth is, is that what I just saw really is the real honor. That's what she dreamt of, and she dreamt of someone like you, and I just cannot believe it's been that long, but it takes that long in order to see transformational change. And I know we have a long way to go per your own vision and your own strategic plan, but look, what you've done is made it beautiful again, and for anybody that's lived here, we totally see it. For anybody that's from out of town, they still want more, and we understand that, and so, I mean, as I said, I mean, thank you for the video that puts it all together. I'm going to encourage all these commissioners to go ahead and share that video, if you'll allow us to.
Absolutely.
Tag everything on Neoces, and I just text Holden and said, hey, get that on our NCDC website, you know, you've just done so very well, and with not a lot of dollars, which I'm sure you would like to talk about, which is our contract.
Yes, well, and we definitely, I appreciate the compliments, Judge, and we appreciate y'all's support, because we couldn't do it without the partnership. So it really is an honor to be able to do this for our community, growing up here and knowing, right, how much we've all wanted downtown to be successful, so being able to kind of be responsible and charged with that really is, it's great.
Is this 10,000 a year or semi-annual?
Alyssa.
I'm sorry?
Is it 10,000 a year or semi-
It's 10,000 a year, yes, sir.
She's happy to accept more, Commissioner.
I'd love to put in more, you know, I, when I was city councilman, my district at the time was downtown, and so I had a chance to be a part of the DMD with Norma, who I love so much, and I agree, I think that's part of her vision. You are definitely, you're making it your own, let's not deny that. I was worried when you were mentioned to be the interim director of, is it Corpus Christi, because I'm like, oh no, is she leaving? Thankfully, it was just another one of many hats you were wearing, and you've got that from when you were with the City of Corpus Christi, and so I think also just to know the fact that you are from here, I hope helps, because I'm sure there's some headhunters out there that have been calling or will be to see all the wonderful things that we have going on downtown, and it's really, it's exciting. I love being able to go downtown on a weekend and enjoy it with family and friends, and be able to enjoy it like if you were in Austin or somewhere else, and I put our features against really any big city, really, because it's just so fun. You can go to Goldfish, the Buzz, Rockets, all these places, and you transform, and you, I mean, if you didn't know, if you brought someone that used to live in Corpus Christi and brought them to one of those venues and said, okay, where are we, they would give you a million other guesses other than downtown Corpus Christi, and I just think it goes to the vision that you and your board are continuing, and I love the fact that you've been able to, over the years, be able to get a commitment from the city, and I hope from us today, to be able to expand your staff, because that's the only way you can get it done.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, you yourself, maybe a marketing person, but all those additional staff since then have really, I think, made a big difference in how downtown has been able to grow and be celebrated with events, and just making it a destination. So, Judge, I want to make a part of myself, just, I know it's not my, part of my precinct, but just being nostalgic and loving the video and just really committed to downtown, that I'd love to be able to put some of my money into supporting-
Thank you, Commissioner.
-our ask that we get every year, because I think that it's, that return on investment, you just have to go out and see it during the day or in the evening, and see that it's worth it, more than worth it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you so much.
Teresa's gonna, Teresa's gonna-
A million dollars.
Teresa's gonna ask you for that. We can bring that back later if you'd like.
I'd say 10,000.
10,000. That's wonderful. Look at you, Alyssa, I'll take that picture right there. Did I hear something, Commissioner? Were you going to say something? Commissioner Non, this is going to do the same.
What did he do down there?
10,000?
Oh, sure.
I hear 10,000, 10,000. All right, Commissioner Chesney?
That sounds, and I don't want that to sound flippant, because I don't represent that area, but I think you've done a phenomenal job, and I'm not saying, we're not committing to this every year, obviously, this is today, but I think, you know, I really think you've done a great job down there, and we've got to continue to, even though it's not my precinct, we really have to continue to help that area grow, so, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, so we've gone from 10 to 20, 30, and 40.
Did you do-
We've gone from 10-
Thank you all so much.
I'm waiting, I say, I'm going from 10, 20, 30. No, but these, this is where-
No, you got it.
Oh, my gosh.
All right, and so to make it perfectly right, Judge will do the same from our revenue. Let me just say that while the video is beautiful, one of the things that gets mentioned in the meetings, you wouldn't believe the effort on cleanliness and sanitation, the amount of waste that is unfortunate in many urban communities. It's addressed with DMD, so these funds are not just for flowers and for patio furniture and for incentives for small businesses, although, boy, do we love that. Let me also suggest to you that this is a part of our own safety, health and safety, the work that the DMD does, the reason it looks clean is because it is clean.
And we have to thank the clean team who, you know, day after day, all day, is out there keeping some of the most, you know, unattractive things off of our streets downtown, so yes, they are, they are, they work very hard, and they deserve a great, great, great thanks.
Yeah, Alyssa, you wouldn't see us do this unless we've seen this rate of return, the rate of return, the way counties are able to provide services, or when ad valorem is, when you experience growth.
Right.
And so if you'll keep this up, take these dollars, please know that you'll see in county government, it's tough to come up with extra dollars outside of budget. All of this comes from opportunities that we could invest anywhere. We're saying that we believe in your board, we believe in you, and we believe in your results. If you wouldn't mind, would you take these dollars and come back in, I don't know, three, four, or five months from now, and let us know how we use them?
Absolutely.
Because Commissioners Chesney's right, sometimes we have it to give and sometimes we don't, but the way to keep getting it is to show us what you did with it. I hope that that inspires you, and as they say, your patience was rewarded today.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners, what a surprise. Thank you so much.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah.
Thanks.
Wait, I don't know if we can do that, Judge, if it's a motion, because it was just a presentation.
It was, it probably for the clerk, I, they probably needs to be a little bit, it's the approval of the contract, that was the last aye, okay, and then the motion, Commissioner Chesney, would be to approve the contract at the new funding source as 60, $50,000 in lieu of, I'm sorry, 60,000, because it was 10 originally, $60,000 cumulatively, 10,000 each from all of us, and I know they and will work with Teresa. We each have numbers associated with our funds, Alyssa. I'm not sure how it will come, but we'll make sure that that gets done with Jenny, that contract will have to be altered.
Dale just needs to deal with that as a quote-budget challenge for next year, in case everybody doesn't want to do it the same way, to see if we're going to be ongoing, right?
I think, Dale, we would want to just memo it, that it's a $10,000 contract from the budget with the remaining dollars coming from these special revenue sources.
Right now, the 10,000 was a budget item in our regular budget for the general fund. The additional funds you're providing are coming from your special revenue funds.
Correct.
13 funds, so if this is a continuation from next year, we'll either-
Do it again or not, okay.
-budget for it as 10, and then we'll do the rest.
That's what we would prefer.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so Alyssa, it'll just be budgeted again at 10, but come give us another video, and let's see what happens.
But can we make a motion, or what do at the next meeting?
We did already. We made the motion for the contract to be approved with a different amount, with the funding sources to be as established.
Take action or anything, I'm questioning about the action part, John.
It's at the end.
The end?
And approve, where it says and, keep reading all the way to the bottom, I missed it, too.
In other words, the motion that we made was in conjunction with the approval of the 2122 contract, and all we've done is, the motion is to approve the contract with the new dollar amount to be, you know, appropriated in the way the court just articulated, 10 from each of us.
I'm trying to take it away from you to make sure it's right.
Yeah, no, I understand, and I think that's important, but I think the clerk, Lorden, so your two thumbs up on the clarity. All right, okay, what I would do is run, not walk, out of here, and as they say, go to a downtown restaurant, get a glass of champagne, and treat yourself after five. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, remember that we're moving H1 around. Let's hit, let's see what we can accomplish in short order on the consent agenda. Commissioners, I have items A through O, A through O, and I would ask that we can remove L, given the comments that we heard earlier for discussion with the county attorney?
Judge, I would motion move to table that one.
Okay.
Right?
I think so.
Right, okay.
But if, what I'm hoping is, could we table it, bring it into executive session, and she can give us the information that she wants to give us?
Well, right, we can still have that, but I mean, we can't do anything today based on what Jenny's asked us to table this one from today.
That's fine.
Okay.
I just need to-
Table to the time, which, but I think we're going to bring it back.
I'm going to suggest that it's the 23rd or earlier.
Actually, I'd ask her to put it on the one that we're having on the ninth, because I think we-
I think that's fair, it needs to be quick.
I hate to do that to everybody.
No, it's not, it's not, given that you said no, right?
Pardon me?
You said no other items, but you're okay with this one?
Well, I don't know how, I don't think we have a choice. I mean, this was a, I didn't want to, but I don't think we have a choice, because-
That's fine.
There was a glitch that wasn't caught.
Table to February 9, okay, got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, but I would still like Jenny to address it in executive session, so that the court is not operating under only this much information. I think you can give us a much more important legal discussion. Okay, how about anything else here? I'm looking for a motion to approve this consent agenda.
Oh, hold on, Judge, I'm sorry.
A through O, with the exclusion of L. A through O, please.
Just a quick question on K.
All right, quick question on K. I'm going to make the motion to approve A through O, except for H, except for K, except for L. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's take H. I don't have Juan here, but I bet we can get him, Commissioner. What is your question?
Well, I was just kind of confused here for ADA interior improvements, and it says 8,682,000.
Yes, sir.
And it's for 545 working days, so this is going to who?
Okay, so we approved this contract, it was a, it was a contract that came to court maybe a few courts ago. It's with Stoddard Enterprise, you'll see it listed right there. This is for all of our ADA interior improvements, CLK are our architects, Stoddard's is going to be the contractor, and that is the, all the funding source comes out of our combo of COs, and this is so that we can live up to our ADA.
Right, was there a reason to wait so long to pay this, or what?
Could you repeat it? I'm sorry, I was struggling.
Was there a reason for it, to wait so long to pay this, or?
It's not a payment, it's actually signing the agreement so they can start work.
Okay, I thought it was a payment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael's on the phone, he can answer any question. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, of course. May I take that as a motion? All right, motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then K, Commissioner Chesney?
Quick statement on a question, and I just think it's important to note, because I did have several calls on this, and what we're doing here is, is going out for competitive sealed bid proposals for the generator projects in Neoces County, instead of just using someone that we'd used before, and no complaints about who we've used before, that's not the issue, it's just to get more and more opportunities for people locally, not locally, wherever, to bid on projects, and this is a big project, and there were those who wanted to at least be able to look at it, so I just-
Sure.
Wanted to point it out, we're doing it, it's a big generator project, so-
Thank you.
For anybody's watching, please take note that we will be sending this out for bids.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve? All right, all second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, okay, I believe that's it for the consent agenda. At this time, Commissioners, normally we would go into the regular agenda, but as I said, with a little bit of indulgence, we did have a request by one of our attorneys to, regarding a letter A, this time to give public notice that we are going to go into Commissioners, I'm sorry, the Commissioners' Court is going into executive session. We do so under the provision of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, and in accordance with Vernon's Texas Codes, Sections 551, 07, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 8, 6, and 8, 7, we're doing so to consult with our attorneys in executive session on matters relating to litigation, real property, gifts, these are all permissive per the statute, personnel matters, termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development obligations, and any other matters that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of executive session, the Commissioners' Court may come into open session and take action as appropriate. I'm looking at least for item A, but I'll indulge the will of the court to do as much as we can and still keep to all the folks that have been waiting for us here. I personally would like to give everybody a 10-minute break for bathroom, et cetera, and then ask for you to come back into this room if you're a part of executive session. For all those in the audience, we'll ask you to clear the courtroom. For COVID-19, we work here for executive session, so if you would, Connie, take us off mic and off video for a moment, and ask all those to clear the courtroom at this time. Okay, great. We'll settle Lorenzo in, and note for the record that we're going back on the record, gabbling us back in at 4:27 PM, and we do have some action to take from executive session, and the first action to take is in regards to the master case versus the Texas opioid litigation. This is case number 201863587 for the clerk, and it's basically a settlement with Endo Pharmaceuticals, Teva, Marisource Bergen, Cardinal Health, and McKesson. This is including the Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement and the settlement term sheet, and the Texas subdivision election and release form, and the motion that we have is to authorize the approval of such settlement documents, and including in the motion is to allow the county attorney and/or outside counsel that represents Neoces County to execute these settlement documents. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign? Aye, post same sign, okay, um, and then there is also some action to be taken with regards to letter H, commissioners, is there a motion on, relating to H?
Judge, I'd make a motion, hold on, let me get to that one, there's several other ones too, I would make a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Shaker, and to direct outside counsel to continue to negotiate for a quicker departure.
You mean the retirement?
Retirement, oh, resign, wait, I'm sorry, my bad.
Yeah, resignation.
Retirement, my bad, wrong word, of his retirement, to negotiate a faster retirement date.
And to direct the county attorneys outside, I mean, the outside counsel to
To also
To provide those specifics and negotiate those terms.
And to continue to negotiate some other items.
Okay, okay, so I'll make that a second, and so Lorenzo, that was to accept the retirement of Dr. Adele Shaker, and to instruct our outside counsel to conduct those terms and bring back to us, okay, all those in favor?
Possible earlier dates, you said?
I said second.
Yeah, earlier date.
And the possible earlier date, in other words, those are the specifics, it includes possible early date.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and then the next, there's also a little bit of business on G, Commissioner?
Also B, Judge.
Yes.
Hold on, let's see, which one's G?
G was the...
Right, I'm sorry, the, the motion, I think it needs to be two motions, Judge, the first motion would be to rescind the prior motion to substitute the projects on the ABM contract, that would be the first motion.
Let me go ahead and second that motion, and all those
You know, I don't know, maybe I can do it as one, and can I make the motion to rescind, and then to reallocate those funds from the amphitheater to other projects already on the ABM list, I think I can probably do that as one.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, just to make it clear why we're doing it.
But just to familiarize yourself, Lorenzo, it's the, the motion that was previous was from another court, I don't have the date, but it was the, if you could look that up, but it's
Let me, let me try it again, Lorenzo, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make a motion to rescind the prior motion to substitute projects on the ABM energy savings contract, and then to reallocate those funds from the amphitheater to other projects already on the ABM contract list.
Okay, and we have a second, okay, second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, then, thank you, and then we also have action on item B, B as in boy?
Judge, I would make a motion to accept the proposal with the wording changes as provided to the county attorney.
Okay, and we've got that direction already given to the county attorney, is there a second?
Then.
Second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, and then that concludes the action taken in executive session, the rest was a consult only, having said that, we'll go back into regular agenda, and for the purposes of kind of moving people forward, there is an item that we left behind, which was board appointments.
Judge, can I make a quick statement on I, I think, just to state, I think we were going to potentially keep this on as part of our recess, so we're not passing on it, we're just, we need, we've asked for further information.
Yeah, we were gonna, yeah, so, let me just go ahead and announce that, so on the item that is letter I, relating to the Spectra agreement?
No, no, I'm sorry Judge, that's on the merit stuff.
Oh, I'm sorry, on that, I thought you were talking about Spectra.
Well, we're gonna, that was not in executive session, but yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
All right, so, okay, just on letter I, it's really just an announcement that we've asked for a little bit more information from the court manager, and we'll let you know exactly what we need, and hopefully you can bring it back, it's just a little bit further, and really what it is, is to be able to receive the written policies of the city regarding their merit increases, and also a little further in-depth investigation as to whether or not the four exempt health district employees have met compliance or not with their own policies, okay, and so that's really not necessarily an action, but it's certainly a directive.
And Judge, I had, at the request of the court, I did send that to the county manager so she could help us get that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you actually have it in your inbox as a formal request from all of us, but through Commissioner Chesney, who made the motion.
Did we take action on number F?
Okay, and so now we will move to try to take care of those folks, and I was just repeating, rather than looking
Hold F, Judge, did we take action on F?
Which one?
F.
No, no action.
We did not take any action there at all, okay, and so now I'm gonna go back to the, just looking for the right one here, it's probably under procurement, right, purchasing, yes, F1, not I1, but F1, so the decision of the court out of executive session, was it about four o'clock, we got all of the notebook with all of the red line, and we actually have a, a nice thick piece of homework to do, but because of the late hour, this has nothing to do with you, it has everything to do with the whole court's agenda, we've made a decision that most likely what's in the court's future is a recess till tomorrow morning, and so therefore, in order to give us the chance to really look at this red line and be able to study it, we'll be back tomorrow morning to address this particular item, but we feel confident that it will not be delayed past tomorrow morning, okay, so it's not gonna have any action at all, it'll just be skipped for now, and we'll see how much business the court can do, are they, but so this particular item, we hope to take care of tomorrow, okay, and that again is, is item on the agenda under purchasing, and you'll see it listed as F1, F1, okay, so having done that, I'm gonna go back and try to scoop up the one that we missed, I will just let you know that Kathy is long gone, but please know that on your email, commissioners, in fact, we did an everyone call under general information reports, the weather is looking very severe for a hard freeze through Saturday morning, we have a joint collaboration with the City of Corpus Christi, with RTA to provide rides, with HEB to provide nourishment, we will be having Richard Orchard Fairgrounds serve as a warming center, and emergency management from the county and the city will be on hand to provide operations and logistics, there are many more things I could say, I'll just hold for your comments, but that's, yes ma'am?
I do have a presentation from her, if you want me to...
I know, I think I'm just gonna skip and take a look at it tomorrow, email it to everybody, if you don't mind, we can always pick it up again tomorrow, but that's really what I wanted everybody to know today, there's a lot of concern about the weather, about vulnerable populations, about people whose homes are not insulated, I'm very proud that this is a joint effort between two emergency management groups, they've been working diligently since probably two days ago, preparations, National Weather Service does believe that we will have wind chills in the teens and below freezing, the only bright spot is it looks like very little chance of precipitation, but as we all say in Texas, wait a moment, the weather might change, so let's just prepare, and, and now you guys know that you can look at your inbox, please forward that as part of our own village messaging, we have through Maggie sent out a gov dot delivery, not yet, but it's going out to everybody with all of the details that I've just laid forth, are there any questions with regards to the extreme weather that we're dealing with at this time? Yeah, I hope everybody stays safe and warm, we'll go to H1, that is the Oasis County Beach Management Advisory Committee, and I'll pitch to a they on this board appointment. Okay, here comes Belinda.
Scott Cross is online, if you need to talk to him.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so if y'all recall, the last time y'all met, y'all went ahead and y'all did two appointments, but y'all left one remaining, which was the currently held by LJ Francis, y'all did have two applicants, which were Don Bissel and Florence Tso, but I did wanna call your attention to regular agenda item three, A4, which is why Scott Cross is on the line, and so I, y'all might wanna take that agenda item first.
Yeah, we did, we said that earlier, that we wanted to have Scott speak to that, we have a policy that, that is, that Scott wants to make the court aware of, because it does affect membership, Scott?
Exactly.
You can unmute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the policy in the bylaws says that any member that misses more than three consecutive meetings, that the BMAC, or Megan as a staff of BMAC can recommend to the court that they be removed, and so the particular individual that we're discussing having removed is no longer with us, so I, I think it makes sense that we go ahead and remove that person, and then appoint another person to fill that spot, so we can keep up with our forums.
Judge, I would make a motion to replace Paul Thurmond for failure to attend regularly scheduled meetings as required by the committee's bylaws.
Okay, a motion and a second, and is there anybody else that has not, just that one person?
Scott, were there any others, or was that it?
Judge, we have, we have some that are borderline, but we're trying, we're trying to work with them, you know, and make sure, you know, that it's not isolated circumstances and things like that, but we're watching it real close.
Keep us posted on that, in that case, it looks like we'll have another position available, all those in favor of really adhering to our own rules and policies signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so now with that, we have an opening, and we need to make a decision about...
I would still like to make the motion until we pass a policy to reappoint LJ Francis to the, to the BMAC board, and then deal with the opening.
All right, so you want to deal with the opening right now, okay, let's go ahead and have a motion on the opening then, please.
Well, no, I was just saying, I made a motion to reappoint LJ Francis, and he seconded that, and then deal with the opening is what I'd said, I'm sorry if I was not clear.
I see, you're saying until we get a policy?
Right.
Okay, all right, and I'm just curious, do we, do we ever discuss it with him to see if, if he had a desire to, you know, stay, given that he was appointed before?
I tried to call him earlier, and I wanted to discuss, I wanted to discuss with him, you know, the attendance policy, and the comments that were made last court, and the possibility of being ex officio, and also, you know, in our beach management plan, as it reads right now, the public works in the original plan works for BMAC through this permitting process, although we've moved everything over to coastal parks, we're still trying to clean up the beach management plan, so there is a technicality there, I don't know if it's, you know, anything that for y'all to consider or not, but that is, that could be an issue, I don't know, but it's nothing personal, we just want to keep it all, you know, straight and narrow.
Well, certainly, if we, we, I guess that should have been checked out before being brought up, so I guess since we don't know at the moment, and we've already waited a week, I'd just like to move forward, and if it becomes an issue, then I'm sure he'll, he'll, he'll do what he needs to do, and I'll, I promise you, I'm gonna have a conversation about attendance with him, so.
Yeah, because I think, I think that's worthy, I mean, I'm okay if the court, Commissioner Modest, that was a concern for you, if, if you feel like that's reasonable, I think it's reasonable, I just, I don't believe that we should put people who are monitoring themselves, right?
Yeah.
But we can do it now, and then you'll have that conversation with him, and please bring it back, because I bet what's gonna be in the best interest is that he goes, you know, ex officio or something like that, all right, so how about, let's go ahead and take your motion to reappoint LJ Francis, given all those caveats, I think I've got a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and then what about the other vacancies?
Can I look at those resumes again, can you do some more real quick, I hadn't, I forgot, I gotta find it, sorry.
Yes, I can, I can move on that in just a minute, Scott, stay with us, we're gonna pass on it for just one moment, I'm gonna go ahead and move into discuss and considering, you want me to advance, right, another agenda item?
Ma'am, yes ma'am.
Discuss and consider hiring advanced construction management to assist with task order related to IGSA, advanced construction management is otherwise known as ACM, and this would be for the fire hydrant project replacement, and we've had, we've had this particular concept here for previous courts, and is there a motion, please, to pursue this hiring?
What was the funding source, Judge?
Well, remember, IGSA pays for itself, it, we, we charge the government for this, right?
Right.
This is Scott Mears.
Since we're contracting, we have to pay, then they reimburse us, and that's an approvable, or not approvable, a authorized use?
Right, it's a direct, all direct and indirect costs are submitted, and so the funding source is the IGSA itself.
Okay, so...
And this is a fire hydrant replacement project, five, fire hydrant, so it's not a large project, but it is an important one, and the idea is coming out of the box, it's our first one, and
Who's that?
What number is it?
Where's it located at?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Where's the project?
Oh, it's on base, on the Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, and so, again, this is an opportunity to have the management that we need, Teresa's gonna give you the number here, we have an IGSA basically funding a number, a department, what's it called?
Nineteen oh one.
Nineteen oh one.
Yeah, it's in capital, capital, nineteen oh one.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
She'll move, she'll move, she'll move.
All right, I'll, I'll
Looking for something too.
I'll do a motion, and he can do the second.
I can second.
Just to not make Lorenzo crazy here, and, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, you just let me know when you want me to go back.
I'm ready.
All right, let's go back.
I gotta quit saying sorry.
The
Judge, I'll tell you, I think there's two outstanding applications, I lean towards the geoscientist, just because of the potential expertise she could bring to the board as well, and that's not to say that the other one would not be extremely good, but at this point, based on, again, I like having some more technical people on the committee that can help with some of those things, I would nominate Don Bissel.
Okay, I've got a motion for Don Bissel, and is there a second?
Second.
Second, and the only discussion I have is that for the other very qualified candidate, as they say, you might just check back with us in about a few weeks, because this might change, if you're listening, and of course, we're always super appreciative, some people have trouble finding qualified folks to serve, we apparently do not have that problem, we keep getting very qualified people, so, with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, and in that case, that goes there, I know Steve Bonner, I saw you, and you, he probably just jumped off, he was probably just there for awareness, so I'm just gonna let him jump off, all right, item number three is just to receive into the record for awareness, the lab services agreement with Christus Spahn Health related to COVID-19 operations, these, these are the, this is the agreement that basically was the bridge between the two weeks, that the City of Corpus Christi was on vacation, and our lab was down, and Omicron surged on Christmas Eve, and this is already in the process of being, as they say, submitted to the proper FEMA.
And it's for la, it's for lab services?
Lab services, so this, this particular contract had already existed from 2020, but it had expired, it'd been, I guess, a year contract, and so this was to get us into a new contract, this is what, this is what we use when our lab is down, if our lab is down because we don't have a supply, if it breaks, our Panther machine tends to be very sensitive, and this is the agreement that provides for laboratory services for molecular testing, which is COVID-19 testing, at Nineteenth and Comanche, the Christus Laboratories.
Judge, I'm just gonna make, I just wanna make a brief comment, this is just one that I, had this been brought to the court, I would have overwhelmingly supported in it, I just believe this is one that could have been brought to the court and not signed off as an emergency, not trying to pick a fight to end the day, I'm just gonna abstain on this, because, again, my conflict is simply, I would have approved this had it come to the court, I just think it should have come to the court.
And if we had been And if we had been here on Christmas Eve, I might have been right there with you. But since this occurred on Christmas Eve, that was the issue. That's the problem is that we didn't have, we had lab services all the way up till the 23rd, maybe the 22nd in the evening, but the 23rd is when we went offline and.
So this is expiring, is this expired already or is this?
It's done already. This is done. It was, it has a not to exceed and we got there.
How long, we extended it or what?
No, we're not. The city of Corpus Christi has picked up the new contract. I hope to bring a preposition contract to the court, but county attorney hasn't gotten that ready just yet.
Make a motion.
All right, there's a mo, and really, there's nothing there. It's just a receive.
Just a receive.
Yeah, just to receive.
Okay.
Motion, is he making a motion to receive? Is that what you want?
I guess. I don't know if we need a motion to receive. If you want to, you can, but.
Well, not, or discussion only, okay.
Yeah, it's just a discussion only.
Okay.
So it's not going to be any payment to process with this? Just want to clarify that.
Well. Yeah, no, we have to pay it. We have to pay it.
Yeah, because that's, that's my question. I thought that the city is going to hell with this. I don't know.
Yeah, so the city gets the next piece of it. So what happened was is this particular contract handled just that period of time where the city was closed. But then most recently, the city did not have any resources at all for their Panther machine. And rather than the county take that up again, I asked Manager Zanoni to execute a similar contract with Kristus Spahn. And it took a little while to get all those formalities done, but they, it's my understanding, they have a contract with the city. So when we were short for resources in the month of January, as of last week, the city is taking care of those.
Well, she had a motion here to approve it, right?
Well, if you want to approve it, that's great. I don't, I didn't notice it that way, but you can certainly do it.
Yeah, the, the right language should be discuss and approve.
Motion and approve to receive. I mean, you've got the.
All right, whatever you want to make is a motion. I mean, I'm, I'm fine. Motion to receive.
And then we can process payment, right?
And then do a second. A second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
One abstention. Maybe later, Jenny, that prepositioned, I don't, it's actually, I don't think FEMA actually calls it that. But I do think that we're protected for now with the city contract. But if, God forbid, we get another variant, we should have a, a contract that helps us for the future. I would like us to pursue that. It's no different than saying we're going to hire a debris removal company for a hurricane if a hurricane comes. We need to have that. That's our backup lab. The company that provides the, in the cartridges to the Panther machine is in short supply. So Spahn's lab uses a different machine. If those supplies can be had there, you know, it sounds like the city's got it, but we ought to have a backup document that this court looks at that says, yes, if we need to, this is what we would trigger. I hope we can bring that in the, in the very near future. All right, and the next one is, we already did it. That was number four. It was, it was on BMAC. We tabled five. This is important. Is there anyone else that needs to hurry? Yes, forgive me, I'm going to move to Constable because that way he doesn't have to come back. We're going to hold on six. We are going to get to it, but let me go ahead and take Constable McCack in here. We've got, these items relating to his office can be found in items C1. And our sheriff is not here with us, but I know that you can represent accurately what our situation is and what you're asking the court. It has to do with two mental health deputies to precinct two. Will you set the table for us?
Thank you for having me, Judge, Congress, Commissioners. What happened was the two deputies in the, in the sheriff's department are now vacant. They have no mental health officers. I had talked to Sheriff Hooper and asked if he would have any objections of moving those two positions into our office. And he said, no, that's fine with him. So he put in his agenda item to move those positions over to us. So they would be funded by the hospital district through the mental health program, I guess. I was just looking for confirmation on that so we can get with the MHID to move and hire those officers. So moving the two positions from the SO to the constable office, we would basically take over the responsibility for the county for him, for Sheriff Hooper, because of the situation in the jail and everything else. So he wouldn't have to move deputies around, so.
Constable, will you talk to us a little bit about how important it is that even though it's precinct two, this is.
This is a county issue, yeah. This is not, they're, we're only asking them to move to us only because we're the, I guess, the flagship right now. I had talked to Constable Mendoza and he wants to get on board also. So there's not just me out there. It's all of our offices. So it wouldn't be just a, a position for precinct two. It would be a Neowesas County position. We would just be footing, instead of flying the Neowesas County Sheriff's flag, they're going to fly a constable flag instead. So we would not only.
And this is a no cost transfer?
Correct, this is a no cost. This is coming from MHID who funded the sheriff's office's positions. We're just moving them to our precinct for.
And going to be hiring, you be hiring, you're going to be hiring two new people?
Yes, sir, two, two new deputies, yes, sir.
And they're going to be trained in mental health?
Yes, they will be, yes. They will be fully certified mental health CIT officers and mental health officers, MHID.
Appreciate what you're doing, that's very good.
And these are funded positions?
They're funded positions.
They are funded.
This is putting them in the hands of someone who's really going to take a leadership role countywide and.
Just question, just away, I know they were vacant from the sheriff, but didn't the sheriff, were there in the jail, mental health deputies or they were?
I don't know the, the, not the leak alleys, but the, the moving of the positions, why they were moved or why they left. I, I know in the sheriff's office, they have the ability to move their deputies around from wherever they are to current, to serve in the jail to make up for the lack, but I don't know if they were allowed to move them or not per se. I don't know.
It's good and it's not good. I just feel like, man, we really do need a mental health officer in the jail section, you know?
Yeah.
So I, I just hope it wouldn't.
Well, they'll be, you'll be coordinating with the sheriff.
Yeah, we'll be working with the, with the sheriff's department and all the other constables' offices across the county. It won't be just.
You're being the field mostly, which is good.
Yes.
But I'm talking about there was somebody assigned to the jail all the time because.
Oh, assigned, okay.
That's why you need, that's where you need the mental health person. But it's a guy who wanted to know, he got rid of him, so I guess he don't need him and I guess I'm going to ask for.
No, they, they moved on to other positions within the sheriff's department or within the county. So they didn't, they didn't stay in there.
Well, thank you for taking it on, appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioners, there's a process under local government code 86011A that the, it's not, the, the process under local government code 86011A, the, the application for this, for these deputies must be in writing to the court and then the Commissioners Court must make certain findings regarding this where, and we just need to get that fixed so that the court can make those findings before hiring these deputies.
Okay, can, can I make a motion that, that the agenda item with the backup documentation is sufficient for the request to the court for the mental health deputies of the constable's office to be assigned to precinct two? However, I make the motion of the hiring subject to the findings of the court to be presented at our next court.
Can we make those findings now?
Unless you can.
There's, there's some, there's a question that remains that we're looking at. There's the issue of the Commissioners Court shall approve and confirm the appointment of the deputy only if the Commissioners Court determines that the constable needs a deputy to handle the business originating in the precinct. And if you can make that finding today, then yes.
Can you represent that you need these mental health deputies within the confines of your precinct?
Can I make the argument? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, can you, can you create a?
Sure, the scenario is if we make a call, a call for service and it's a person suffering from dementia and they walked out of their house and we respond to it, you know, the person that's suffering from dementia exhibits traits of alcoholism or, or being intoxicated. So they might be incorrectly arrested, put in the jail system when if they were a properly trained mental health officer, they could have diagnosed, not diagnosed, but identified that this person could be possibly suffering from dementia with the co-responder, divert it from the jail and address that situation correctly.
And that's a good, that's a good process, but Jenny, I just want to, I think I heard you say something about so, in the precinct, so is it okay for them to go?
Yeah, that's what I was going to add, yes.
They can go all over. They have authority all over. It's just that you need to find that he needs those people, I believe, in his precinct. Once you've found that, they can move within the county.
Jason, do you believe that there's enough need in your precinct to justify these deputies?
Absolutely.
Judge, I would make the motion that the court finds that their, the findings are appropriate for these constable, deputy constables to be in, done in deputy, sorry, I can't, in Constable McCacken's precinct.
Precinct two, so.
Is that good enough, Jenny, or do you want me to reword that?
Why don't we make that as a separate motion then, just so that the court has made these findings? There's a motion that enough justification has been presented by the constable in precinct two. Motion in a second, are there any, is any other discussion here? Okay, finding done. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Now, having found both the request and the findings in proper order under the statute, I make the motion to approve the transfer of these two mental health deputies to constable office precinct two. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Not that this is a requirement, but we're excited about this inside the whole behavioral health realm. I think you're going to serve as a model for other counties. They're struggling with the same processes. Do you think maybe, you know, once they get hired and trained, you might come to us, introduce them and let's actually do a little presentation on how we're going to let our constituents know, hey, this is throughout the county, you can count on your constables to be active in, in mental health.
Yes, ma'am. And along with that item, my request was to add an additional two deputies, so it'd be a total of four with two.
H1, Your Honor, H1.
Yes, yes. We're going to move straight to that, so let's go.
Okay, I didn't know if we were addressing that.
Yeah, no, let's do that. So now there is a related item.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is that through a lot of good advocacy in, to really cover the, the territory in the county.
Which one, Judge?
It's H1 under human resources. You've been able to work with MHID and MHID already had funding for an additional two. And so that is your request. In addition to the transfer of the two that we already had appropriated, you're asking the court to consider the approval, no cost to this court or to this county, it's already inside their budget, to add the additional mental health deputies for this really amazing mental health task force that you're going to have.
Inside the hospital district budget, Judge?
Yeah, so the hospital district gives a budget to MHID and MHID has this appropriation.
That's all you had to say, I'm in. These are way needed.
That way, and we really would like for him to work with Constable Mendoza. That way, these four can really service a countywide.
Right, so the.
Training.
This is very, very significant and I think people, I know we're, it's late in the day and we're tired, but this is very significant that we are appro, we are, we are hiring or we are approving four mental health deputies for this county. They, they, they have to go under a constable. This is the one that they're going under and I'm not sure I got there, but that's fine. But four mental health deputies because we continue to make sure and put an emphasis as a court on mental health services and taking care of people in an appropriate way. So I think this is great and I'm, I'm really excited about our settlement because I, I think there's possibilities that we could tie in the opioid use to some of the mental health things there because I think that's, I mean, I think the opioids and the mental health go hand in hand. So I think we're going to do, continue to do some really good things, but this is one of them, so.
An H, a human resources, number one, that's the one we're doing right now, right?
That's correct.
So that, is that precinct, Mendoza not precinct two though?
No, he, he just expressed his willingness to be involved in the, to have his.
So it would only be two officers then, right?
Four.
What, it's going to be a total of four?
Two transfers?
Oh, six.
Six total. The, the two that I was requesting would be funded through the county.
Oh, wait a minute.
Oh, okay, okay.
So we have four funded through the hospital district.
Okay.
And then two funded through the constable or through the county.
Okay.
One would be through Constable Mendoza's office.
Wait.
And one would be ours.
Okay, forgive me, I was thinking that we had the two that were transferring from the sheriffs.
Correct, we do.
We did that already.
Yes.
And then I knew that MHID was going to also allocate two.
Correct.
Have we done that yet?
No, I, I needed permission from the court to actually go through and call MHID, which I had spoke to earlier and he was hoping that, you know, we could.
I think we need to deal with the four first.
Okay, so can I get H1?
So you're talking six?
Six total, two paid for the, by the county and four paid through the hospital district.
Look at Brent, he just decided it was not such a great endeavor after all.
Well, no, I don't see that on here, Ali.
I didn't either, so.
Let's deal with the four and then.
Well, what I was going to do is I, I, I made the assumption that the two additional mental health deputies for constable precinct two were the MHID.
Correct.
Can we work with that right now?
We don't have that on the agenda then, Judge. There's only agenda items for hiring of four people.
That's correct.
Yeah, so the two.
That's what I'm telling him, don't do the other two right now because they're not, it's not listed.
But, but, but the mental health deputies under human resources are funded by the hospital district.
Correct.
So there's not another request on our agenda for two more?
No, the, the two that I put on the request was to be funded through the county.
Oh, that's, you mean during budget time?
Correct.
Okay, that's not on here today. Okay, so we're doing the four that are not funded, that are funded, already budgeted or funded by the health district today.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay. I think what you're hearing is let's get you these four, let's get you a team together, create this plan for us. You may be absolutely right that we need another two. There might be some real opportunities. We just heard earlier, I don't know if you were in the courtroom, we just approved an opioid settlement. We know we have dollars coming in. There could be, there's a huge pot of money that's available to certain counties. I'd like to talk to you about that later. There might be awesome opportunities to expand this force so it's appropriate for all the constables areas, but.
Everybody should have one.
I want to make sure that we do the four and get you what you need right now.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a, that's a good work. Okay, so just to be clear, H1 is for these two additional ones to be funded by MHID. All right, now I'll take that as a motion if, if some, is that's all right? That was the motion, Brent?
Yes, ma'am.
And seconded. I'll second and then, any other concerns or discussion, anybody? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.[1619.91]
Aye.
Aye. Okay, you got your four.
Okay.
Go build a team.
The only thing that I want to address was the vehicles.
Yes.
The one is at the sheriff's department, and I don't know the workings behind it, but apparently the hospital district was supposed to pay for it initially, never got paid for. It came out of the sheriff's budget, so I don't know if we have to transfer the vehicles.
I'm going to make a suggestion that you work with Ida Hernandez, our court manager.
Okay.
That's a very good issue to work on. It was my understanding that when we approved these officers, that came with, as they say, all of the bells and whistles, other words, their, their, you know, their needs.
There's one vehicle in place currently that we're going to have to move.
Understood. So on that piece, it's okay to bring it back on, on a new agenda, like in the next two weeks, but I'm going to work with, have you all work and get that sorted out. That way, they're completely resourced.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, super. Body armor, make sure they've got everything that they need. Cams.
Have it already.
Yes, everything.
Yeah, okay. But for these new hires, is what I mean.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well done. I noticed Bert came in. I was trying to do it in order. Let's, let me go back into order and see how well we can do.
We're almost there.
We're almost there, right? Okay. There's a couple that are quick, quicker than others. I might, I might just take a few of them, because I know they're very quick. So item number 10, you might have remembered it was on a previous agenda. It was just noticed a little bit incorrectly. It just needed to say certain words. Now the language is correct. It's to obtain an appraisal for county-owned land adjacent to the fairgrounds. We actually approved it last time. Now the wording is accurate. Could I get a motion to approve this?
I moved.
Motion, how about a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I don't believe there's any overtime presented, but I will ask Dale, was there any overtime presented?
With the court, it said there not to be tracked, so there is no, no activity on this report.
So there's nothing on 13. All right, going back to another one that I know is very important. Forgive me for the jumps, guys, but I, I'm trying to take care of things that are important. Human Resources, H two. We do have a, a great need at this time to approve additional hours going from 30 to 40 per week for the associate judge. Do you have a motion?
Yep.
Yes, yes, sir?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Been working on that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post them signed.
Just want to say how much more generous this court is, because when I was over there, they gave me 10 hours and they wouldn't give me any more. So thank you very much.
Okay.
I think you gave us 10, that was it. Gave me 10, I remember that, Joe.
Well, it's, it's good to know that you're supportive.
Yeah.
All right. At, at this, let me go back in order now. I think I'm doing good on the, what was pressing. And that is item number six. This is to approve a temporary deputy medical examiner or other options to maintain uninterrupted, uninterrupted continuance services in medical examiner's office during transition. There's also, you know, I don't know if we really have any options here on this agenda item. I know that we are pursuing options. I don't really think there's anything to vote on. We don't have a temporary deputy ME, but we have options, and, and you'll see those coming up in the agenda items that, that follow. Is there any?
So do we need?
Probably put it for action for next meeting, too.
Yes, that's correct.
Are we doing six?
I don't really know what we could do on six. I can announce to everybody that this position has posted. I can also announce that we've received applicants. I can also announce that by the next court, whenever that is, that I believe the same agenda item could be brought forth.
Do we, did we need to approve the position? Is that what we need? Is that why we put this on?
No, the position is open.
Because it's open, right?
It's open already.
We just, we just put this on here in hopes that we might?
You know, we just didn't know.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
I mean, we wanted to make sure we had all options. I think that you're going to see a, a very quick agenda item on this, next time.
To the 23rd at this point?
How about a motion to table?
Motion to table, till the 23rd.
All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, here's one that's important. It's adopting a budget for the new administrative position in the medical examiner's office that the court has discussed. That would be a director of operations. I think Ida's got some information for the court. We don't have this in the budget, everybody, but we do have opportunities for the first time to have government services addressed and have funding sources for it. Is this something that the court would like to hear more information on? Ida, do you want to share what you, what you've learned from other counties?
Yes, Judge, Commissioner. Yeah, I'm working with Yuli Guerra, the department, the Human Resources Director. She provided me a, a budget, so a number. She will be between 100 and 160,000 to cover this kind of position.
And that's based on counties our size?
Correct.
Okay.
And the duties and everything.
And the duties.
And the duties, right. And so, remind me, when we do this, this is not something that the medical examiner has to agree to, since that's part of his job now, or help me remember that one?
I think, I think we said that that would be part of those specifics.
Right.
That we wanted them.
So can we do this yet, based on that?
I think the one thing we should do is just, at least, you can't, you can't hire without a budget. So I would like to make a motion to have an, you know, a budget. I'm just, I know that range is large, but I was going to say $120,000. It's a little bit on the low range, but.
And where do we, where does that coming from?
General fund.
General fund.
General fund.
General fund.
So we can do that?
Well, we know there's some vacancies within the office. We know some, we have some contingency funds some other places, so we'll have to find some room to move it in, but there should be room.
Okay, so Judge, I would move to adopt that budget for the new administrative position.
And usually I'm not so random about a dollar amount. I'm just trying to do it over 100.
With the 125,000 contingent upon the finality of those negotiations.
That's correct. All right, I've got a motion and a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And again, the job description, it would be great to see it next court. I know you're working on it. But it would be great to see it.
And I don't think we can do eight yet, Judge.
And eight is not available, but again, this court was just ready for anything and everything. And so eight shall be tabled to Feb. 23. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion, I moved.
And I've got a motion from Madas, second to Furchesny. He was, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. On item number nine, Bert, since you're here earlier today, we came out of recess. There was a motion. We might want to have you rewind tape, but essentially, we're going to be giving you guys some direction on different projects than we said before, and that's to comport with some needs that we have per the contract. And it, it can be on that original list that we had of projects for locations. And more information, we'll have the Ida Hernandez visit with you about that.
Understood.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Didn't want to confuse you, but did want you to know we took some action on that.
Correct, okay.
And it's to, it's to, in order to be able to actually get what the court's desire is.
Yes, that's fine.
All right, and then, of course, we've already, there's really no action there, guys. Is that correct at this time? I mean, other than the action we've already taken before. So I will move on to number 11. And again, we've already done that as well, Jenny, earlier in, in the action we took coming out of executive session. So I'll move to item number 12. This is discussed and considered, providing ARPA premium pay to county employees working at the City of Corpus Christi, Oasis County Health District.
Which one, Judge, I'm sorry?
Item 12.
I'm going to keep on going.
I believe we already had done the 10% Dale.
We have.
Okay. Commissioners?
Is that the first quarter?
We, we did the advance payment for the first quarter, so yes, they will be included in the first quarter payment when we pay it in March. Everyone got the advance, including the City County Health.
And we've all, and we've also given direction under executive action for the county attorney to address premium pay. I'm not sure, certain any other.
So we've already given them something.
Action here. We've already given her direction.
Right, but, and we've already approved something, but they asked for more, I think, or something like that, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so I think this, so this action then was mainly to discuss a greater amount than 10, is that correct?
Yeah, can we do this one tomorrow?
Yes, we can.
Please.
All right, I'm going to skip number 12, and we've already done 13. Item B one.
Commissioner, I won't be available tomorrow. I've got a doctor's appointment, so I won't be here in the morning. So if we want to discuss 12 now, it'd be.
Okay.
No one will be here from your office?
I won't be here tomorrow.
So.
No one from your office?
Well, Elva will be here from my office, but.
That's fine. I mean, she knows the numbers, right? I mean.
I think the idea here was that there was originally, when we talked about premium pay for people who were in really close proximity and to COVID-19, there was some suggestion that we might want to consider a greater amount than 10%. I think that's how this agenda item got originated. Is that correct?
Is that who?
Yeah, they want, yes, they, they, they asked for, it'd be considered like the sheriff's officer associate, or the sheriff's office.
Somewhere between 10% and the cap of 20%. And I think Dale, what we would need here is to find out what that dollar amount is and, as it, as it pertains to the 28 employees that we have there. Is that possible? We could get that to Elva tomorrow, and then we could pitch till tomorrow. I think the, the whole thing is just whether or not the court wishes to have that consideration done.
I don't believe I'll be able to have that tonight.
Okay, I understand.
Can we move it for the 23rd? Is that okay?
What?
23rd.
23rd.
It'd be fine. I think 23rd would be good, too.
We can have the numbers and everything.
All right, the only thing I'm going to direct is that there's a time sensitive for, for Jenny, so yes. Jenny, now that you know that we're moving into the 23rd, that can be part of the consideration of the specifics that we've given you on the, on the agreement.
So we're moving to table 12?
We have a special meeting on the 9.
Yeah. Let's take it to the 23rd, as long as Jenny knows that that's an issue that, that could come up. I wouldn't, I would phrase it just as, with whatever the court chooses to make premium pay. All right.
If someone gets those numbers in advance, like before the 23rd, that would be great.
And that was going to be a motion then to table.
For the 23rd, yes, ma'am.
And somebody's going to second. There's a motion and a second by Gonzalez. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, now that moves us into the B one, which is the workforce retention. We also got information from legal counsel regarding that, and I believe we have given direction as well to bring that back pending state agencies' answers.
That was tabled.
Okay, so I'll take that to the 20, to the 23rd as well. I'll take a formal motion, though.
That's B one, Judge? You, you can't, you want to do that tomorrow?
Well, if Dishes could get us the answer.
Oh, okay. Why don't we just leave that one on and see what, do you think we can get anything by tomorrow?
If Francisco has any luck with, with the state agency tomorrow, if, if not, we can always move to table. We'll leave it as a recess for tomorrow, if needed. Okay? The next one is already, again, we addressed that in executive session. We made that, we've given Ida the direction on that one.
That's a recess?
That's a correct recess. We've already handled items one and two. And on D grants, there was going to be a, a video presentation, JJ, that I set this online. It's an application. It's very important to the Texas Veterans Commission Fund for Veterans Assistance Grant Program. And JJ, how long is your video presentation?
Good afternoon, Judge and Commissioners. It's not too long, Judge. It's about three minutes long.
We'll take it. I'll let you roll. I'll let Connie tee that up.
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Oasis. Just to, can I ask a quick question while y'all are doing that? On that letter that we got today from Dr. Shaker, it was dated the 27th, but we just got it today, right? That's when I got it.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the date, too.
Right. But we just, so it was just emailed. So it was dated 27th, but it just came to us like yesterday or something, or last night?
Yesterday. We got it yesterday. I have too many things open. Give me. Or Monday, whatever Monday was. Actually, it came yesterday. I just looked. At least to mine. I'm not sure when. Yeah, we just got it yesterday, Brent.
I saw, I found it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. How are we looking on that video?
...
Here it comes.
Where we care.
You turn it up for us.
Since 2014, Oasis County was consistently awarded grant funds for veterans assistance. And with those funds, we were able to prevent homelessness and despair in our veterans, their families and survivors by helping with food, transportation, utility, and rental mortgage payments. Unfortunately, in 2021, we were not awarded the grant, and our veterans have certainly felt it.
The struggle is very, very, very hard. I'm on the social security, and there is not much left at, at to pay the bills, for me to get groceries and little extra. Veterans grants would be very helpful in, in providing me with those funds for paying some of the bills, you know.
In the past, this grant allowed in Oasis County to keep our food and hygiene pantry stocked, to ensure veterans and their families will not go without. We were also able to supply bus passes to veterans who were looking for work or needed to get back and forth to medical appointments. And although our social services office did attempt to fill the gap left from not being awarded grant funds, they could not fulfill all the needs of our struggling veterans.
They sure were to do what they could. I was hoping for something more, but wasn't available. I still got a balance left, but, you know, anyhow. I was looking forward to getting, you know, getting more help on getting it done. And, you know, it wasn't available. I had to, you know, I'm where I am. I still got a balance, too.
By approving our current grant application, Oasis County can pick up where we left off with getting veterans and their survivors back on their feet. Our Veterans Grant Program was a crucial part of our function to help veterans and their families in their time of need. It's also worth noting that Oasis County worked with TVC representatives in their process of standardizing a grant service for food by using our food pantry and food voucher program as a model for other grantees statewide. Our Veterans Assistance Grant Program was one of the most important safety nets for Oasis County veterans, and most certainly a program our struggling veterans cannot bear to lose again.
I see a lot of that running around vets, that's, you know, kind of desperate, they're needing help. I wish I could do something, but. The help that I did, I did get. I appreciate it. Hope you guys can get, can do more for the rest of the guys.
JJ. JJ, that's.
Judge and Commissioners, we worked with the Grants and Social Services Department to create a video that would show the Texas Veterans Commission how active and involved Oasis County is with our local veteran community. I, I think Sal Hernandez did an incredible job with the video to show that the need for this grant is there. Since the loss of the previous grant, we've been receiving strong support from the community, to include HEB, the Corpus Christi Navy League, Corpus Christi Mayor's Committee for Veterans Affairs, DAV Chapter 150, Ladies Auxiliary, the VFW 8932, and Social Services to continue to provide our low-income, housebound and homeless veterans with food, hygiene products, and bus passes. However, we need this grant back so that we can continue with this pantry and expand financial assistance to our Oasis County veterans. And I think Sal did a great, an incredible job with it. I think it, it pulls on the, the hearts and mind strings, and we're hoping to get this grant back.
Yeah, JJ, I think this is an incredible video. I had not seen it before. It's incredibly moving, because it's telling the story from the veteran's point of view, but you just did a beautiful job. When will we know whether we are a recipient of this grant opportunity? And also, is it for the same amount, 150,000?
I, I believe we reduced the, the, the matrix, since that's what affected us last time, Judge. I think we reduced it a little bit, so I, I'm not quite sure exactly what the figure was.
Okay.
Maria may want to chime in, but I believe we'll find out by April, May timeframe.
Okay, wonderful. Keep us posted. That's beautiful. I'm going to suggest that we put that on our, you know, maybe you could edit it to where it's, you know, some of that video should be on our website. I mean, not, not the part about, you know, how terrible it is that we didn't get the grant, but the part of all the beautiful things that we do for veterans. I think it should be on our website. Okay, this is just receive information only, and we're about to lose a quorum, everybody, just because of commitments. And so if we are going to recess, Swag It does want to know whether it's an 8:30 AM start or 9:00. I don't remember what I heard.
9:00.
9:00. So Connie, if you'll let Swag It know at 9:00. I know there's some other important items here, but Bert, if you could come up at 9:00 AM. I don't think any of yours, I think they all can wait till tomorrow morning, don't you? Okay, and then also Dale, I'm mindful that we have a budget change order. I know that Elva could go through that one. But the issue with the ERP, if you have anything you could send to us, I'll promise I'll read it, but really, we're just talking about funding.
Judge, can I, Dale's not going to be here tomorrow. I would just like, can I make a quick motion? Do we go ahead and approve going out for bids?
Yes, and that's what I'm going to recommend as well, yeah. So we can, we can know what, how much it's going to be.
Software, we go out for bids. Once we know what the bids are, then we can know where the money's coming from, but. I'll have to make a motion.
What number is it?
Um, well, you know, it doesn't, it's not posted that way, is it?
What num, what?
It's G2, doesn't give us that choice.
It just gives you an option of possible funding that, when we talked with Noah, he said there, there's many possible funding sources.
Oh, that kind of bid. I'm sorry. I thought you meant like to go buy the software.
No.
I'm like, sorry, I didn't understand. I'm with you.
Put it up for bids.
But, but not bids, Commissioner. Did you also understand that? Not bids for the software itself, but bids for how we would go get funding. Did you understand that?
No, we need to bid for the software first, then, then funding.
Yeah, mine's a bid to go for much of, to go for the funding.
But I don't know where we have, where do we have the funding? There's all kinds.
Yeah, we don't know where the funding is.
Okay, so forgive me. So you want to go out, that the motion is to go out for procurement, for bids, for the software?
The question was with Noah is what possible funding sources, because Michael, when he brings a, a request to the court to do a RFP, there's always a request to know where the funding's coming from.
Right, I don't think it's posted for.
But it's not posted for that.
To determine possible funding, how, so we can have the information available, so Michael can bring the RFP request for you.
This is going out for bids. We already talked about that, I think, but I don't know that it's posted that way, so.
Look, I, I think what, if what you're saying, I don't know if you need. Yeah, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, so in the past, the county has moved, in my opinion, too swiftly to get straight to getting permission to bids without having adequate funding identified early. And so I think it's appropriate for the court to. I think it's appropriate for the court to decide on how the funding's going to be established for this project. We have a general idea of the cost, and Noe's going to help us with that. And if there's a, an item later for me to officially go out for bids, then we'll notice that properly on a future agenda item, but that's not what is on there today.
Michael, I don't, I don't agree with you. I think we should go out for bids and then find out how much we need. It could be $4 million, $6 million, $12 million. Then we can find out where we're going to get the money from. So I don't know what the problem is. We're just going out for the bids and find out what we actually do need. So, you know, this could be two different ways of doing it, but I mean, it's not just the one doing it one way all the time. I think here, what he was trying to say is we need to find out what do we need? How much do we going to need? And then we can, then we can find out where the money's coming from. So my, my motion is to go out for bids to find out procurement, how much money actually we going to need to buy the software.
Can we, can we bring that back on the ninth? Because we didn't notice it that way. We didn't, I mean, if that's what you want to do.
Right.
I mean, that's fine, but we, we would have to notice it to go out for procurement. And the second thing is these bids don't last forever, so you got to be ready. And if we're going to go out for a tax note or a CO, that's going to be a 60-day process. If we rush, 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 and that bid will be stale. So it'll, it'll give you an idea.
I think all he wants to say is he wants to go out for, I think what you're saying is you just want to go out for a bid whenever we do this, right? Whenever we do this for?
No, no.
That's not what he said.
No, the thing is, we have the funding. I mean, let's, let's face it, we have the funding.
Where?
We have five funding sources, at least five. The general account.
We have options right now.
Up to options, you know, and we have the CO 19, still got money, the 21.
We cannot use them. Those are restrictions. I mean, they're there, but they have some restrictions for that.
Right. So what are the, what are the options that we have?
Get more debt?
No, I mean, I'm not going to borrow the money for that, but, because I know we can, I know we have the options of getting money from somewhere else.
So I thought, Commissioner.
If you get obligations, contractual obligations, tax notes, cash on hand, you know, all these other things, the general, which is general.
Let's go bring it tomorrow, and then we, we have that Noe here for tomorrow morning. So he can, he can explain everything.
Why don't we do that?
Sure, sure.
Okay, all right. Okay. We'll do that. I think that's it for guys for right now. I think we'll stop right there, and we'll just recess. So that means we're not doing a Germans in Memory, because we'll do it when we conclude the meeting tomorrow. For the record, it's 5:31 PM, and we'll recess till 9:00 AM tomorrow morning. Thank you. So thank you, everybody, for returning. We're gabbling back in at 9:07 AM. We've got Commissioner Chesney online, Commissioner Modis for the record, and all three commissioners, the two commissioners plus myself. Court is whole, as they say. We've established a quorum, and we're going to go right back into session as if we had never stopped yesterday. But we are going to take in order, I believe, actually, excuse me, out of order. I know Bert is still the most patient man in show business, but we're going to go to F1 first. F1 to also say thank you to our guest from Spectra Management Services, discuss and consider authorizing the execution of agreement of Spectra Venue Management RFP Number 3159-21, Orchard Regional Fairgrounds Management Services. We left off yesterday with the opportunity to take home a redline version of the contract. There is an opportunity for discussion, of course, but our intention is to make a mo, I'd like to make the motion to approve, and looking for a second, and then we can call for a discussion.
Discussion?
F1.
It's option one and option two.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Option two.
Okay.
Right? That's the one that, hold on, let me go back. Let me make sure. The option,
one is the five.
One is the five. Sorry, five. Option one. Option one is the five.
Yeah, and Michael.
The longer period.
Yeah, Michael is there, too.
And then, and we also have Michael and everybody, but we're going to go into discussion. And did I get a second? Did I hear it?
Second.
Okay. All right. Now go to discussion, and we'll move to Commissioner Chesney. We've got lots of hands up. We're going to get to everybody. Commissioner Chesney, you first.
Judge, I, I would like to move forward with option, the option, I think you picked the one, the five years.
Yes.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I'm fine with the business points. I, I would like to still have a little time to sit down with Jenny on some of the Shaw language and some of the things that I don't want to waste the court's time debating, because I want to get this approved so that Spectra can feel comfortable and we can move forward. But I would still like to make it just, if that's okay, contingent on some, some fine tuning of some language, which shouldn't take long. I just need to be able to sit down with the county attorney and again, go over some of the stuff that I looked at last night that I don't want to spend a lot of time wasting with the court right now.
And Kent Brown is also available for you.
That's.
I think he, he's not actually here, but, but he's on his way. And so I think that's, that's good. And I think that, I don't know if, maybe I thought I saw a second hand, but if not, Keller, I think that's a great opportunity.
I just want to say I agree with Commissioner Chesney. I think we need to move on, but I couldn't read the whole thing, believe me. I mean, there's no way I would have read. But I think, for no fairness, we just have to move on in this, and this, hopefully we can make a couple of changes that we need to make, you know.
And I can, Judge, and I can get with Kent today or tomorrow and kind of look at some of that language. Maybe if he walks me through it, maybe I'll even feel more comfortable with it again.
Yeah, I think.
If we could just make the motion subject to some language tweaks that the court, that everybody's comfortable with, I will let the court, let Jenny or Kent circulate it to everybody if there's anything else, but nothing substantive that will have anything to do with the business points for Spectra.
All righty.
I agree.
All right, all those.
I'm agreeing with Commissioner Chesney.
Yeah, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Keller, for, for, for all that we made you wait yesterday, that's the best result anybody could possibly have, is a swift decision this morning, and we really are looking forward to a very successful year. We have a lot, not a lot, but a few more things to go through, but given that we've already done that, let me just say that for anybody that's not really been out to the fairgrounds to see some of the events, you really need to go and participate. You want to know why your event center is so popular with all of Oasis County and some of the residents of surrounding counties, because you're bringing great events, like the Peddler Show, which is awesome. And believe it or not, kids love the Reptile Show, and the Gun Show is still probably one of the oldest-running gun shows in Texas, the Saksit Gun Show, and so many others. Between the private events, the corporate events, and all the county events that are out there, think about if you did not have that available to you. You would price people completely out of the market. The one thing I wanted to put on the record, because this is very important, a lot of people always make assumptions, you guys did not get the benefit of having any of the federal, you know, funding for the CARES Act, because you guys were not a strictly event center. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Based on how the CARES Act funding, how the guardrails were set up on that, yeah, we, we were not eligible to apply.
Right. And so you stuck with us, you know, for, for what I call a really tough time and tough period. So I'll see you guys later on this afternoon as we inspect the Warming Center. And again, our thanks to you, whatever, if, if a tweet gets made, of course, you would have to consent to it. And so we'll be working with you, with this gentleman that just walked in, Kent Brown. And you have great timing, Kent. Perfect.
Well, Judge, Commissioner, thank you, thank you. Sorry. I was just going to say thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And partnership is well deserved.
Commissioner?
Judge, I'm sorry, and I just have one question. The, on the, on the paid credit, that means then we won't be paying them, but that will be a credit towards their incentive? Is that the way I understood that? I'm sorry, I forgot I had that last question.
I have that as a yes.
Yes, that, that is correct.
There you go.
Okay, okay. And that's for vaccines or, or anything that we need?
Any use that the county has, short or long term, will be handled in that manner, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just want to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, super. All right, we will move on then back to E1. E1, that would be Bert. This is Public Works. There's three items, and then I'm going to have to go back and look. I'm going to go ahead and ask you which ones are missing, okay? I'm just doing it because it's so easy, because it's right here. But I'm, obviously, we want to move through all the ones we skipped yesterday. So Bert, you've got three items. They're all important. The first one is about engineering services for structural design associated with the interior renovations at Calderon.
Yes, ma'am. Judge, Commissioners, Public Works recommending approval of selection and approval of the engineering service contract with ICE for structural engineering services.
I need Bert, I need Bert to talk a little louder, please.
Sure. Bert, do you mind grabbing that microphone a little louder? Go ahead and repeat it.
Yes, Public Works is making recommendations for selection and approval of an engineering service contract with ICE Engineering for the structural design portion of the renovations of the Calderon Building.
Okay, so we, we hired our architect last time.
Yes, ma'am, and they'll be working in conjunction.
And they'll be working together with Mr. Ramidis.
Correct.
And then, of course, it's got the engineering service contract attached to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And is there anything else we need to know about this, or?
Uh, no, it's pretty much on hourly basis, not to exceed, I believe, it's $43,000.
All righty. In that case, is there a motion?
So move.
Motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions, any discussion? Commissioner Modis, this is your project in your precinct. You good with everything?
Yes.
Thumbs up?
Yes, good. Yes, everything's good.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign. All right. The second one, Bert, is a supplemental agreement. It has to do with a change in the engineering design for the generators from NRG Engineering. It's for the courthouse and jail project.
Yes, ma'am. I believe this entails some redesign to the initial NRG engineering service contracts. I guess he has two of them, one for the McKenzie Annex and one for the jail.
Right. So two.
Pretty much the same.
So number two has to do with the courthouse, and number three has to do with the McKenzie Jail Annex.
Correct.
And would you mind if I go ahead and supplement that the reason we're having to do this is for good, it's a good thing. It may cost us a little more engineering, but it's going to save us about $2.5 million on, on overall design.
I believe there was some value engineering done.
Yeah.
To exclude some equipment that we already had in place that will serve the same purpose.
Okay. All right. And you're recommending on both?
Yes.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Hold a second. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 That's for the courthouse and jail. I need the same exact motion for McKenzie Annex.
So move.
All right, thank you. How about a second? All right, I'll second.
Second.
I'll hurry it over here. For, nobody says it, then all, all of us at once. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, Bert, I don't know if there's anything else, but hang out with me just for a second while we check.
Yes, ma'am.
That does conclude the, the Public Works portion of yesterday. What number? Let's go back. Let's do it.
How about the auditor? We finished the auditor?
No, we haven't done that one yet either. We can take it in any order. I'm just, we could go to the.
On number, on the auditor, real quick, on number two, I'd just like to move to the 20, move it to the 23rd, table it to the 23rd.
I think we might have a presentation, though, right now on it. I think he's online. I'll tell you what, let's do auditors for right now. Let's do the change order, Elva. We've got it, and then we'll go right into number two. Okay? Approved Budget Change Order, number seven for the fiscal year. That's G1. We skipped that one yesterday as well.
Yes. Most of the items are routine in nature.
Sorry, it's hard for the people online to hear without it.
Okay. Most of the items are routine in nature, but I just wanted to just mention there on the capital outlay, there were just change order to just the category within the department to cover expenses. And, and then on page two, there was a change order for $348,021 within the same fund to cover some budget line items and also an age back system. So if you have any questions, let me know. Request your approval.
So move. Second.
All right. Any discussion for Elva?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Teresa brought me one last night that I didn't have a chance to look at. That's not in this, correct?
That is correct.
That's correct.
Okay, the ones that were in the package, I was fine. That one, I just didn't know that was an add-on, but I appreciate it. Thank you. Then I'm fine.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, item two is the one that we skipped yesterday because we were going to have Mr. Nahosa, and he has joined us by telephone, maybe by video. We're about to see. There he is, by video. And I'm going to let Ida go into the discussion. It's basically having a funding source discussion regarding the county's ERP. That stands for Enterprise Resource Planning System and the replacement of time clocks. These are items that we've said we have to have, and now it's about how would we fund something like this? And I think we know the price range is about a $6 million price range, more or less.
That's correct. Noe, would you like to tell the court what is, what would be your recommendation for this, please?
Sure. Well, good morning, everyone, and I hope y'all are staying warm. It's only a nice 22 here in Dallas. So it's good to, good to see your faces out there. It came to me, to us a couple of weeks ago about the county being in a, in a little bit of a dilemma about how to go and bid for this software that is pretty crucial, I think, for operations of the county and in an effort to not only stay up to date with software needs and informational needs. I think the way we took this project was we, we must find ways to fund it, or else the consequences could be pretty dire in terms of keeping budgets in place, keeping receivables, payables, you name it. So the beauty about the condition, the financial condition of the county today, and kudos, kudos to all of you on the court that adopt policy time and time again in regards to fiscal policy for that matter. The county itself enjoys a very good credit rating. If, in fact, you were to borrow money, it has pretty sound financial fund balances. And Dale, I think, is on, may not be on the line, but I think general fund balance estimated for year end '21 is about $25,300,000. So think about, think about doing a project, whether it's your home, buying a car, you either need cash, you need a loan, one or the other. The county receives, the county has the strong fund balances, not only in the general fund, it's got fund balance of the debt service fund, and it's got debt that is issued in the past with balances. We've checked with the county auditor's office to ensure that if, in fact, you were to use any of those particular funds to supplement the potential borrowing for, for this project, the county can do that. I don't think, I don't think it's necessary to find a specific funding source at this point. I think what you want is, one, can you afford it? And we just don't know what that is going to be yet. I think if you give the permission to Mr. Robinson, purchasing director of the county, to go out and seek bids, that at the time that we get those bids, one, we will know what the price will be, whether it fits, what the needs of the county auditor's office will be, and three, whether those bidders may have other options, financing options, that is. So, you know, to, to commit ourselves to a funding source today may be a little premature, but I can tell you, from a financial standpoint, the county can do a variety of things. It can use cash, it can use debt, it can use maybe another funding source provided by the bidder. We will explore all those options at the time that the bids come in. From a perspective of borrowing for this particular project, you can do that very swiftly. You don't have to issue certificates of obligation and be subjected to this 45-day period of, of waiting after publishing a notice. You can actually issue contractual obligations. We call those permanent, public, permanent public finance contractual obligations, or we can. or we can even use tax notes. I think that if you were to use debt for a particular software project like this, you don't want to go out twenty years. You will have to go out ten years. We preliminary spoke to your staff about if we were to use a ten-year loan, how would it impact your current debt portfolio? We did a preliminary analysis of that. There will be some pressure on the portfolio, but, you know, but at this time, you know, you've got options to restructure, to refund bonds that were previously issued in order to continue to contain the tax rate where you always want it to be. So, I'm not, we're not at all concerned as to a six million dollar project. I think we're concerned of, like all of us know, supply chain issues, inflation issues, and at the end of the day, the cost of the project, and we don't know what that is. So, I'll stop here and entertain questions you may have.
I think you answered all the questions we had yesterday, and I appreciate that. That, unfortunately, but I don't think we can take action today on this thing here, but I'd like to reset it for the twenty-third where we can take some action. And I don't think that'd be an issue by waiting for the twenty-third, so we can take some kind of action to go out for bids.
Can I chime in, Judge?
Yes, and also, I just want to acknowledge Commissioner Chesney. I see you. I'm going to have, Michael, it might help you if Commissioner Chesney, at least that way you can answer all questions at once. Commissioner Chesney?
Yes, that'll be fine, that'll be fine, thank you.
Commissioner Chesney, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. So, Noe, the question I have is the, on the financing part of it, and that makes more sense to me. My thinking yesterday was, and you weren't on because you weren't, and I'm not saying that critically, I'm just saying you weren't, so I didn't. The thinking yesterday was, for me, was a little uncomfortable to go out for bids not knowing what our funding source is. That was, made me a little nervous because I thought, well, who's going to want to bid on something if we don't even have an identified and articulated funding source? But when you say to me that they might have some funding mechanisms, then certainly that makes a difference and makes sense. My question, you know what my question's going to be, when you throw out the borrowing option, what's that going to do to our tax rate or our potential need to then raise the INS or wherever we're going to borrow from, I guess? So, that would be my question for you is, you know, how much effect is that going to have? Because when you were in the last time, or not last time, but when we did the fifty million COs, at that point, you said anything past that would require tax increases. So, tell me how that's changed now or if it's changed now, please.
Most definitely. Great question, Commissioner. I think from our perspective, one of the things that we don't know yet is whether you will borrow six or four. The less you borrow, the better, right? My point is, I'm not, I am not at all convinced that the bidders will provide a better funding option for this project. It's premature to determine that right now. All I'm saying is that you literally will have three options to consider once you get the bids. From one respect, Mr. Robinson is concerned about, I need to have a funding source. On the other side, you, as a body, a governmental body, are concerned, well, if we go out for bids, when am I going to, where am I, how am I going to pay for this? I'm telling you, you should not put yourself in a box to determine how you're going to pay for this, nor should we make Mr. Robinson feel like we don't have the financial wherewithal to fund the project once those bids come in. All we're saying to you is, let's go find out, because the consequences of doing nothing will be more dire than doing something. I think that if you were, for example, go out for bids and the project ends up being six million dollars, okay, I think we could probably find one, maybe two million somewhere, and we borrowed three or four. If we borrow three or four, the loan itself going out, whether it's ten, whether it's a six million dollar loan, let's say it's six million dollars, the payment for a six million dollar loan today on the county, if you get a rate of, let's say, two percent, it's going to be about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years. If you were to look, and I'm happy to share what I have in front of me for the benefit of the court of how the numbers really impact the tax rate. We have a variety of funding sources, as I've said to you before, you have in your debt portfolio. You have your INS fund balance, which is about three million eight as of twelve thirty, as of nine thirty twenty-one. But you also have call features in current bonds that if you were to use those call features in those bonds, you can take out principal payments in some of those loans to provide a smooth fund balance transition and not impact the tax rate. The impact conceivably will be when you attempt to fund future projects or CIP. I'm not going to lose my sleep, nor should you, if the project is six million dollars or seven million dollars. I think I will lose my sleep if you were to not have the financial tools that you need to have, which could potentially affect your credit ratings down the road. Because you don't have a CAFR, you don't have a budget, you lose those controls. And I think that's where I'm coming from, Commissioner, that I think the staff has represented to us today, this is absolutely necessary, and I hope I can, I've answered that correctly.
Well, Noe, I appreciate that, and I'm not necessarily questioning the need. I'm trying to figure out how we, I'm not, I've certainly got to still walk through some issues, but I'm, for sake of argument today, I'm suggesting that, okay, assuming that the need is there, and I'm assuming that for just the sake of this argument, then my issue is with borrowing more, and as you say, a six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for ten years, that's a large, that's a large load to add for a ten-year payment. If it's a thirty-year note or something, which, like you said, not probably good to do on a, on software because it's not going to last that long. Although, as Dale said the other day, the one we have now, we've had for a long time, so maybe it would. But nevertheless, it's important to me that we don't add additional borrowing, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't do this. It just, I need, I just need to know the answer on the effect that it's going to have, and certainly would like to kind of digest those numbers a little bit because I am, you know, as I, if anything, I try to be consistent, and that's one of my scenarios. And so, I, like I said, I'm not questioning the need today. I'm just questioning borrowing and adding more debt and so forth and so on. So, I guess that would be something, you know, and another source that I guess we could look at is, you know, reallocating funds from those CIP funds that we haven't used yet. We've got insurance proceeds that have come in from, you know, our settlement or will come in. Obviously, a lot of those will go towards reimbursing ourselves for, you know, things of that nature, but that could potentially add money back into the CIP once we replace some of those funds. So, those could be funds also as a funding source. So, I, today, as we sit, just an opinion is, I would really like to avoid borrowing. So, if there's a way to avoid the borrowing, that would be something that I would be much more amenable to wanting to support because I, I am, I think we're, for me, I'm at a comfort level with the borrowing now. Anything that's going to potentially add burden to the general fund on a recurring payment or anything that's going to add burden to the INS rate is very uncomfortable for me. So, I appreciate that you have answered my questions, and I think, I'm with Commissioner Gonzalez. I think it's not posted for today proper, not proper, but to move, but I think we do need to get a move on. So, I would agree with Commissioner Gonzalez to put it on for an action item for the twenty-third, and it should be a quick action item.
You know, so you can sleep a little better in this cold weather, Commissioner. I can assure you that debt will be the last resort, but if we borrow anything, if the project is six million dollars categorically, it will not impact the tax rate. I mean, I'm telling you, it's not going to impact the tax rate with the current portfolio, but it will limit your ability to borrow in the future for other CIP needs. So, but I know, I know and hear you very loud and clear. We will explore every option, and we'll come back to you with a very swift and clear recommendation as to how you should proceed. Hopefully, we'll use some of that cash that you're anticipating receiving, or for that matter, other sources. But financially, you're okay.
You know, Commissioner, I also told Noe the same thing, that I'm not for borrowing, right? But I think when you're looking at the six hundred thousand per year, it might not be that because if, say, for instance, we got money to say, we're going to borrow two million, so now that six hundred thousand becomes two hundred thousand, I think. But, so, you know, I think that, you know, the money is there, we just need to, once we know how much it is and where we can get it from, I think I like the idea that Noe has, to go out for the bids, you know. We're not committed to go with the bids. We just want to know how much the bids are.
Yeah, if anything, I'm sharing on the screen a very preliminary number, I mean, a very preliminary schedule, and I think Ida and Dale have that. I've given them this before. So, I'm not, you know, I'm not concerned at all, whatever you decide to do. But we will work with your staff to come back to you with a specific recommendation once we know what the price is.
I'd just like to move, we set it for the twenty-third as an action item.
Okay, so you've got a lot of information, and we're going to be back on the twenty-third. And the only thing that I would say I differ is that, I mean, we, we do need to be resolved to go out for bids so that we can procure. Don't send the message that we're not committed. We need to be committed. We need to learn how to be committed. Noe has just basically gone through. I'm impressed. I've never heard Noe speak so long for about, you know, fifteen minutes on, basically, you've got about ten ways come Sunday to how to do it. Even if you wanted to borrow everything, which we've already said we don't have to, it's not going to affect your tax rate. You're going to basically have to refinance your call in twenty twenty-five, and just know that whatever you do limits you in the future for, you know, future CIP needs to the tune of six million dollars, if you went all the way out, which we probably wouldn't. So, I bet it becomes a hybrid. You borrow three, two, three, and you finance, self-finance the rest, something like that, or some hybrid combination. But you don't want this on your M and O side, guys. You don't want that. You want it on the INS side, and you don't want it to move your tax rate, and Noe's already said it wouldn't. So, as they say, stay tuned on the twenty-third. Michael, you kind of have your marching orders now to bring us the right language, and we'll go from there, and this will be good. I hope that that meets with the approval of all those people that use that software because we all know that we don't want to be in a situation where it collapses. That would be worse, and that's what Noe's trying to tell you, is think about the inflationary, the supply chain logistics. You know, let's get this moving, so. Okay, no action today. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If I would, I just wanted to applaud Dale for bringing this item. It's super important to me particularly because I'm in that system every single day, approving each and every purchase order that goes through. And I know the folks in his office rely upon it, and so, like I said, the need is definitely there. I spoke with Dale yesterday, and what I would like to offer to the court is, I understand we have a special meeting on the ninth. This is a quick action item for me to write. It's a simple order, and so, I would like to bring it on the ninth. Let's get that permission to go out. We have already begun working on this RFP even before we've gotten approval. Dale and my office have been sharing information about how we'd like to construct this RFP already. And so, getting this permission from the court to go out for bid, I see as a formality. And getting that permission on the ninth will save us a couple of weeks towards getting that bid response back so that we can have an answer sooner rather than later. And so, if it pleases the court, I'd like to place it on the ninth.
I mean, I would just say that you have that ability and send it through the system. We don't even need a motion. Just, you've heard our, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep, you bet. Okay, so we're going to move on. Noah, stay safe and warm, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Noah.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. We don't number our pages, but the pages that basically had Public Works, Purchasing Auditor, Human Resources, that would be E, F, G, and H, is all complete now. And you'll recall, or for those of you that weren't here yesterday, we did executive session yesterday. And so, I'm going back all the way through to make certain that our regular agenda items, the ones that we skipped, got taken care of. So, let me take a look here, and I'll take-
B, number one and two, Judge?
Thank you.
Yeah, number two, I think we can table that until we get to-
Okay, so we talked about a little bit yesterday. Nothing on the regular agenda? We did them all? Okay, all right, so the last two that we have are B, one and two, and we talked about both of them yesterday. But as you recall, when we left off, Francisco was going to do a little bit of research for us. It has to do with the workforce retention pay for eligible health district employees to be funded through Department of State Health Services Agreement. The idea was whether or not we thought that the model of fourteen point one percent, which was the city model, or some other variation. What do you have to report to the court today?
There's no new information yet. Annette Rodriguez is going to get us the exact numbers, if it's going to be an exact amount of, you know, the whole grant divided equally, and then we can run that number and iteration through dishes.
Okay.
So, we don't, we're not going to have a response today.
I thought equally was seven, 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 anyway. I thought we had come up with that number.
But it's more, it's more refined than that because the exact number, when we did that calculation, I don't believe we had the exact number from Annette. So, it's just, it's slightly different. It's not, it's not much different.
I mean, I-
I think, I think the bottom line is that we're almost there.
Fifty-four, that's great.
The only thing I think we wanted to do is make sure in this transition that we know is happening, at least we believe it's happening. We have good faith, I'll say it this way, we have good faith belief that it's happening. You know, I just want to make sure that it's an easy transition for them. And sometimes if you stay on one system, if the idea is to get everybody on one system, give them that system so that workers working side by side are earning the same amount retention, right? Having said that, there are folks right now, we can make a decision that's different as long as the city would adhere to it. We wouldn't want them to not adhere to the will, because this grant needs to come through a fiscal year. Is that how it's worded? Does it go to so many months? Does it go to a fiscal year? Do you remember? Or is it just one payment? That's it? Just one payment? One payment? All right, so then we won't have to worry about that at all. Well, look, we just, we just wait for your update, maybe even on the ninth.
I think so.
All right, I'll have to table then, okay? Motion to table one, number one. Okay. Will Lorenzo make it to the twenty-third or sooner if possible? Okay, that way we push it back, but if it gets done before, maybe you can sneak it in on the ninth. Yes, ma'am? Go ahead and use, go ahead and use that. Connie, give it to Teresa.
The contract attached says that it expires in June of twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Right, so you can do it. It expires by that time, but apparently you can do it in lump sum or however they want to do it. Is that all right? All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, also, item number two.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, we also discussed yesterday, but kind of said we wanted to also bring back some more information. Do we have any more information?
Judge, yes, I would like to table it as well because I'm waiting on some of the answers for the city. So, if you allow me to continue working with the city.
I do.
Okay.
Motion to table on the same premise, the twenty-third for you, but if you can get it done sooner, sooner. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Yeah. Okay, go- Yeah. Okay, guys, I'm seeing we're done, done. The only thing I wanted to do is reopen public comment for one good purpose. I, when I came through the, um...
Judge, I have one, one thing. I was gonna resend my motion, uh, on the SPON thing, but I just want, just for clarification purposes, because I, I wasn't, the funding for that, I didn't ask, I don't think I asked for the funding when we did the motion. And the funding for that is coming from where?
FEMA PA.
FEMA PA?
Uh-huh. FEMA Public Assistance at 100%.
And can we also use the ARPA funds for that?
You could, but I wouldn't if FEMA wants to pay us.
Well, then we discuss it. We have ARPA thing on Monday, right?
Right, but why would you wanna use it when FEMA will give it to you?
I don't know if FEMA will give it to us as...
Well, no, it's not, that we, let me explain. FEMA Public Assistance is ongoing, and will continue to be ongoing, until the last receipt gets put forth, as long as we're in a declared...
Okay, I just wanna make sure we get the, we got the...
Yeah, I mean...
Pay for the, not from our funds.
I mean, don't use your funds unless you're absolutely needing to. I mean, save, save our money. Let's use...
And that was all, and that was all the money we were talking about, right? 300,000?
Right. Again, I wanna reiterate, we need to bring a, a contract that looks like a preposition, maybe it has a different name, but the idea is, is that we should have something in place for the rainy day. I hate to break it to everybody, but apparently, there's another sub-variant that's out there. It's also...
You always gotta have a backup.
Omicron. Okay.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
Are we sure FEMA's gonna take care of it?
Commissioner, FEMA takes care of testing. It's part of their eligible, uh, permissive uses. I mean, I don't run FEMA, but, but testing in general is permissive all over the country. We've submitted our testing from 2020, um, all the way through to 21. We have not gotten it back, per se, as our letter of approval. But let me remind the court that all the money that we got in advance is sitting in our treasury right now. So, once they give you the checkmark, the money's here. We're actually earning interest on that money. So, I feel very comfortable and good about what we're spending on COVID-19 is documented, it's eligible. It just takes a lot of detailed work. But what makes me very comfortable is that we got advanced funding. And we also got approval by TIDAM. So originally, when we started this, it was just for vaccinations, and it was just one location. Then we got a FEMA approval for all locations. Now, we've submitted for five other ideas that we have as a part of COVID. Infusion, testing, um, morgue, PPE, and other, and other emergency protective measures. And so, it's great, because that money is here already.
Understood.
So, I would like to confirm. So, we're good with this, right? It's gonna be under, um, the disaster recovery department? FEMA PA? Is it gonna go regular FEMA PA?
FEMA PA. If for any reason it doesn't go FEMA PA...
I was gonna say, can you use a report, if we can go through it, or?
Well...
Can we what?
Can you use a report to see if it's gonna be able to go through? Do we know or not?
Okay, so it's so complex. I mean, the answer is yes, of course. It's, it will be submitted, but the way it works is you pay the bill, and then you send them proof of payment, and then they send you the ability to say yes. Your request for reimbursement is approved. This is how we've been doing it since 2020, and we have an excellent track record. But it doesn't happen until we pay it.
That's correct.
I'm not even sure they've invoiced it yet.
Okay, so that, right now, it's coming from our general account?
It, well, it doesn't come from our general, I mean, yes and no. We have FEMA advanced funding. So, we got 2.5 million dollars, of which we haven't even spent, well, we spent a little over a million.
Yeah, but that's just for vaccines, and this is testing.
Yes, but it's already been approved for testing, RIC, everything.
Okay.
Yeah, so, we, yes, it has. So, TIDAM gave us the opinion that our advanced funding is for all eligible activities. So, we'll use the same amount of money, we'll use the same pot of money. It's not gonna be different money. They wouldn't...
Did you get a copy of that, that letter from TIDAM or something?
Judge, could I ask also, um, did you, I thought you said, I thought you said yesterday, that, um, this was done, right? There was, I thought, I thought I heard you say this contract was already done, like...
It is. It's over.
There's no more coming in on it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And what, the only difference I said is, we need to get another one set up for the future, so that if we ever got into a bind, it would be ready. The court had, would already go, yeah, that's the contract.
A preposition type thing?
Exactly. Apparently, I don't like that word, but that's exactly what it is.
Okay. I, I...
Yeah, and, and just so you know, if, yeah, I think it's actually something we have sitting somewhere in the COVID lawyer's desk.
Excuse me, Judge. Is this, is this the same contract we're talking about, uh, that it was signed on, uh, January the 11th, by Ms., uh, Dr. Blow? And then you signed January the 12th? Is that the same contract?
That sounds correct. I don't know...
It's the one in the packet.
It's the one in the packet. If that's the date, that's the date. But yes, it would get signed by Dr. Blow, 'cause he's the president and CEO of Krista SPON, and myself. Yeah. Any other questions?
Not now.
Okay. No, not today. It doesn't matter, whenever.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, 8,000 people got tested that wouldn't have, I can't imagine...
Anything Dr. Blow do is good, but I just wanna make sure we got the money, you know, so...
Yeah. Well, you can thank our entire team that works tirelessly on reimbursements for that.
I thank everybody for everything they do.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, anything else? I think it would be an excellent idea, Commissioner Gonzalez, I'd like to invite you to our next FEMA call, because I'm, I just feel like there's so much uncertainty on how the process works. I think you should join, because I think, once you join and you understand the process, you're gonna feel, um, a lot better about how we go about doing it. Because I always feel like there's a disconnect, it's with, between, you know, what happens on the recovery side.
To pay everything, you know?
What?
Maybe I just don't trust FEMA to pay everything.
Well, they've paid everything so far.
They haven't paid everything they owe us from the past.
That's right, and that's because the past had to do with extreme weather events, and I'm with you. They have not been good to us on weather, but they've been awesome on, um, COVID-19.
And Judge, that's kind of, that's a good...
Totally different.
That's a good big picture issue that you brought up, and I don't really know how to address it, because there's no question, there's a disconnect, because we're not involved in it. And so, we get it, we don't...
We could rotate.
Yeah, I don't, no, I mean, like, we're not involved in a lot of the stuff you do, and so, you know, we get asked, and we don't know. So, I don't, the, the, the big picture issue is, I don't know how to, I don't...
You come up with a solution, and I'll, and I'll go for it, because I'll be honest with you, just like you are asking questions, I feel like I wish that you had a lot more certainty, and a lot more comfort, because I do. And I do, because I know exactly, you know, how much effort goes into it. And, and I do think it's critical, because come budget time, when you look at these people who come to you and say, hey, I'm a Department of Two, like Grants, I want you to know how many calls they're on, in order to achieve, you know, the end result.
And I think that's, and again, maybe, and I'm just asking you to consider it, that, because, again, difference of opinion on the, the power thing, and that's okay, that's life, it doesn't bother me, and, and I don't mean that to be offensive, and I, I think you take it some ways, that, but I just, that's just a difference of opinion. But, but some of that, like if you, you know, the, if the contracts and the leases and the things that, um, um, aren't something that has to be, like, if someone calls you and says, I need, we've gotta have 1,000 vaccines, well, I, go, go get your 1,000 vaccines, that's not what I'm, but the contracts and the leases, some of those would be opportunities for us to understand the process better, if we had those in front of us, like this one. And again, I'm not trying to stink, I'm just, I'm legitimately asking for help on this, because I see a contract like this, I don't understand what's going on with it, I don't know how it works. I, it's already been signed, it's frustrating, and so, yeah, my frustration level rises, and then, but as you sit here and explain it, you know, right? I mean, I, I, based on what you've said, unless someone said something the contrary, if this would have been brought, like, on, on the January 5th meeting, before you signed it on the 11th, I think I probably would have voted for it.
Yeah, so, and there's a huge disconnect with the dates, because this contract was executed and effective, it had to go back in time, December 1, and we executed this contract on Christmas Eve. It might have gotten formalized on the 11th, but the 11th, there was absolutely no time at all. It was exactly the situation that you present. We needed 8,000 diagnostic tests, and we needed them literally on a day when nobody's working, Christmas Eve.
And I would think, you know...
And so, it just looks a certain way. I'm just gonna finish up. It looks a certain way to you, but the only frustrating part for me is that I know for a fact, that we called everybody's office, because we kind of, just like you guys sort of think you know how things are done, we kinda know you too. So, we went ahead and called everybody's office, and said, hey, we need to make certain that people know that this is coming down the pike, that the county will need to, uh, offer testing diagnostically. And we made those calls, we have those emails, we actually worked with the entire team here, as to what's important. I think we're gonna have to overcome some of this, to understand that there should be a celebration, that this county, cumulatively through this court, has done so many great things to celebrate in the protection of their community. And unfortunately, the way it gets portrayed is not in a celebration mode. And I, I will forever wonder why, because the truth is, there's opportunity to investigate, understand, know, talk, communicate, and we don't do that. And if you really wanna know what's wrong with not understanding it, it's because there could be a better communication, and it goes both ways. The highway goes both ways. Please join me on the next FEMA, I'm inviting you to join me on the next FEMA call. We can rotate it. You need to understand the process, so that you can celebrate, along with me, um, all that we've done. Nobody's done what we've done, in my opinion, in South Texas. It, it's just, that's the fact. It's not a, it's not, as they say in Texas, it's not, it ain't bragging if it's true. In order for me to be 100, you know, when, have you ever seen the movie Zero Dark Thirty?
No, ma'am.
Oh, you gotta watch it. There's a girl in there, and she says, I'll leave out the expletive, but she says 100% when she's asked how sure she is. And she says, to the chief of CIA Director, Leon Panetta, 100%. I get to look you in the eye, look the taxpayer in the eye, look staff in the eye. I don't even think staff, at all levels, understands it the way a couple of us do. And the reason is, is because we eat, drink, and breathe it, every single day. I go to sleep, I wake up in the middle of the night, thinking about RFRs. You know why? Because we're so lean, because our staff is so lean. It isn't because I want to do all of that, it's because there's nobody else to do it. But I promise you, to have advanced funding for FEMA PA 100% is an extraordinary feat, at $5 million. And, yeah, I feel, I feel 100% sure about what we're doing, how we're doing it. And whatever it is that has caused pause, needs to be, you've gotta feel 100%.
And Judge, I don't, and if, if there was something sent to me about a $300,000 SPON contract that I missed, I need someone to resend that to me, because I think if you're saying, this was sent out to everybody on that, y'all, you were signing a contract with SPON for 300,000, I never got anything like that. You said everybody was emailed and called, so I don't, I didn't get any of that.
Yeah, time, time out. Let me, let me go back and explain, because there's, there's a history lesson that needs to be done. So, back in 2020, when we had our very first experience with COVID-19 and testing, we executed a document with SPON in order to use their SEFFID machine. They have a very special machine, that SPON paid a lot of money to get for our community. That was their doing. And we wanted to be a part of it, okay? Now, the truth is, is that allowed us to have, there was a paragraph in that contract that allowed us to continue, okay? You just continue, like, just, if it expires, you can, I can't remember which clause that is, but there's a period, there's a clause in there. But the problem is, is that since 2020, those cartridges have gone up from X dollars to Y dollars, because of all the reasons that you know, okay? From supply chain, and, and limited resourcing.
Sure.
And, and so, that contract, you've approved, you've seen it, you should know about it. We've talked about SEFFID machine 1,000 times. A cartridge is what you buy. At the SEFFID machine, everything's inside one piece, they call it an assay. That piece has always been bought for us. Anytime we've needed or been in trouble as a community, or even as an employee, we've been able to send people to SPON's Diagnostic Lab at the corner of 19th and Comanche. And we've done that under a contract, not a mystery contract, one that this court should have awareness about.
I'm talking about...
Contract.
But it, but you execute, well, it's not because you executed...
Wait, one second. It had a "not to exceed" on it, and the reason that we got to that 300 so fast, is because all of 2020, and all of 2021, except for the week of Christmas, that was a, that, that number was huge.
You said that everybody was emailed, everybody was called. I'm saying, maybe the communication breakdown is, I didn't, I don't remember getting...
I didn't get the contract either. Jenny's, they were working on the contract till the day I signed it. I didn't get it either.
No, but your statements, five minutes ago, were, everybody got a call, everybody emailed, got an awareness, that I'm saying, I don't remember getting a, I don't remember getting a call, and I, I, I don't have any voice messages on gonna call, and I don't remember getting any emails that said, we need, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do this new contract with SPON for $300,000, up to $300,000 for these devices. I'm saying to you, if you think that happened, I'm telling you, to my recollection, and if someone can resend me the email that they sent me on that awareness, I, I would be glad to stand corrected. So, maybe part of the communication breakdown is, I don't remember getting, because to me, like, and I will say, there are times I get, there's a lot of stuff that goes out from, from Maggie, that's, that goes out, that's, the warming centers and some stuff, so I could have overlooked it, but I don't remember seeing something that said, we're gonna do this, and it's going to be, we're gonna have...
To be honest with you, because I know you, I told Maggie, call Paul and call Brent, because we know you guys. We know how you all are very interested in information, and we knew that we were going to need this. We had an ad nauseam...
No, I'm saying about the contract. I...
Yeah, about, well, look, I didn't have the contract. I didn't have the contract until I finally got it from CEO. I don't think we emailed a contract out.
Not, okay, or notification...
The message. We got you the message.
Right, we're gonna, we're gonna do this 300,000 dollar thing. In other words, that gets my attention, and then I can stop and say, okay, hold on a second, right? Because I just need, all I'm trying to say is, I'm not aware, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this specific contract, con, this, not the physical contract, but I wasn't aware of that, that you were contracting with SPON for up to $300,000 for these devices. Could there have been an awareness that, sure, we get awareness all the time, we need to do this, and we need to do that, but there's a difference in the message of, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do that, and, and hey, we're gonna contract with SPON for up to $300,000 for these things. So, that's what I'm saying, is part of this may be communication, the kind of communication...
And you didn't have your, you didn't have anybody in your office, did you, in the month of December?
And I didn't, no, I didn't, I'll have to go back and listen.
Because I promise you, we were, we contacted everybody's office. But, but let me go back to the most important thing, because it doesn't seem to ever get highlighted. The most important thing is that the reason that we have the hierarchy that we do, is that when we're in an emergency, whether it's an extreme weather event, whether it's an environmental event, or whether it is a public health emergency event, you want to know that your constituents have the ability to be safe.
And that's why, that's why, Judge, it would be great to bring it to Commissioners.
Right, but there was not an ability to do that, because we had to do it over the phone.
I'm just saying, in general, I'm just asking, in general, for you to consider, when there are contracts that have to be signed, or leases...
I hear you, Brent. Nobody's, nobody disagrees with you. Nobody disagrees with you on that.
And leases and things that are long-term, longer-term things, those are the ones that...
Right. The, the problem is, is that when there's an urgent need, as there was this time...
Nobody's questioning that.
Well, then, then, then leave the SPON part alone, because the SPON contract was an urgent need, and it had a "not to exceed" clause, but I'll be honest with you...
But see, I didn't know all this. I promise you, no one told me that it was done, it had to go back to December 1, and December 31st. I didn't know that. You know what I get? I get a con, well, hold on, I get a contract that's signed on 111 and 112. That's all I know, because that's all, hold on, that's all I...
We call that open meetings.
Hold on, but that's all we get. So, if we get a contract, if, we as Commissioners, and I won't speak for others, if I get a contract that says, signed on 111, signed on 112, I know we have a Commissioners Court meeting on the 5th, all I think is, well, okay, I don't get why we couldn't have put this on...
Right, well, that's why we come to court. Maybe you should give your county judge the benefit of the doubt, that I have acted in every single way, every single time, to the benefit, and to the protection, and to health and safety of our community. If you don't... every single time, to the benefit and to the protection and to health and safety of our community. If you don't want to give me the benefit of the doubt,
To be fair, that's not a fair, that's not a fair thing to have a blanket benefit of the doubt.
It is, it is. In an emergency, it is, because I've done nothing but help, help this community achieve its goals to protect.
This has gone on for over two years.
That's right.
And 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 you have been called out on very few things, considering all the thousands of decisions you've been making.
Thousands of decisions.
Imply that you're not getting a lot of benefit of the doubt is not fair to this court.
You can pick up the phone and call me.
Please, please finish. And that is not a fair implication to say that you've not gotten a lot of benefit of the doubt. But but conversely, I think it is, it is fair to say that you need to give your commissioners some, some opportunity to weigh in and communicate too. Because you said, it goes both ways. You want all the benefit of the doubt. You want us to just say, we're okay, we're okay, but but we get things that we don't understand, and then we get chastised if we ask about them, or we, you say, we're not, I don't care, we're not bringing it to court, I'm in charge. That causes a high level of frustration, especially when I don't believe some of those things should qualify as not having to come through the commissioners' court. And I would think if you're, as you said, if you're proud of all these things.
I'm very proud of them.
Then you should want to bring as many of them to court so that we can weigh in, because if if then, if then we we support you and weigh in on that, you would, I would think you would go, I feel more empowered because the commissioners also believe this.
Every, I agree.
But to me, it's felt like you're on an island and we get whatever we can get scraps here and there. I'm just being honest, right?
Well, I'm being very honest too. I might, I'm very much on an island with one friend. His name is Commissioner Modis, who always supports emergency management.
Judge, tell me when we, tell me when we haven't supported emergency management.
No, I, you don't, Commissioner Gonzalez, you don't support emergency management.
See, Judge, that's the thing. You just start, I'm trying to have a peaceful conversation and then you start, you know, this is why it's hard to talk to you.
Commissioner Chesney.
Any disagreement whatsoever.
We're not saying that.
You get mad and you get personal.
No, I'm not. I'm not mad at all. I'm smiling here.
Me and I can't finish my train of thought. And so I'm trying to respectfully just ask for you to bring things to the court that aren't.
I've already said I would.
Okay, then.
I've already said I did.
For two years, but that's all I've been asking.
This, we've acted every single time where there's been urgent need.
Judge, I have to put this on the agenda. This got taken off the agenda.
No, that's not, that's not, that's not correct. Jenny Dorsey, I had this discussion with Chris DeSpahn. I had a pre, it was my agenda item to have a preposition contract.
No, no, this contract.
On this.
This particular one was on the agenda, it got taken off the agenda by you. I had to ask that it be put back on the agenda. Judge, that's exactly a hundred percent.
We said that you cannot, that there is no need for ratification of this contract because it's not a ratification. So we put receive into record.
Right, but I had to put it on. It wasn't on the agenda unless, until I put it on, Judge. You put it on, there was a dispute over it, you took it off. I put it back on. And if staff wants to contradict that, please do so because I put this agenda item on because you didn't, it wasn't on the agenda.
I look at the agenda and put my initials on it. I'm very pleased to talk about this particular contract. As I said, I know there's somewhere in there that you'll want to make sure that people know that because of our county, our county, not the city, our county, we had test, testing done, by the way, which you, Commissioner Gonzalez and Commissioner Hernandez did not pay overtime for. But our people were out there testing all week. Exempt employees, you did not pay twenty-three dollars, you did not pay two hundred dollars, and you did not pay Edward Arreiras, I don't remember how much his was.
For overseeing chair setup, you're correct. I didn't.
It's not chair setup.
That's what it said on his worksheet. Read the worksheet, Judge.
That's the lack of understanding.
It was on his time sheet.
You could have asked questions. There is a complete lack of understanding and appreciation for your employees that are out there with the testing. That is shown when you don't approve
That we approved for two years.
Two hundred dollars during Christmas week. You get to, you get to own that.
Judge, what about the overtime?
You get to own that.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't approve the overtime like you did for the director. If you want to bring in overtime or the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I think we've gone past the agenda, I noticed.
Well, you started it on the overtime, so if you're gonna do it.
It's not germane.
I mean, I can't even, that's what I say, we can't even have a reasonable conversation because.
We are having a conversation.
We can't have a reasonable, because you get off on on these things about overtime that has nothing to do with what we're even talking about. You want to bring up stuff to deflect the point in which we're making today.
No, I'm not.
Yes, exactly. You brought up the overtime thing. It's nothing to do with this thing. There's nothing to do with the simple request that I made.
With the spawn contract.
Bring things to court, please. Let the public see it. Let the commissioner see it.
That's, though, you, you're making a political commentary.
I was just trying to ask for something.
Commissioner, um, again, my, my offer stands. If you want to learn more about your job, we are going to welcome you to understand more about your job. But we're not going to violate Open Meetings Act. We're going to go through the process that we normally do, which is work with the county, the manager, who knew about the contract, who the county attorney, who's part of our write-out team, knew about the contract. We have done absolutely everything, and we will continue to do everything to give the people the resources they need. And if you want to argue about whether or not we should do that in an urgent need, keep going.
Be pre-approved, the contract should be approved by the court. That's all I'm saying.
Right, and in that particular case, it could not be.
Judge, this contract was here for a month and a half. How long was this contract, how long was this contract in the county before?
I guess we'll just sit there and say nothing here.
How long? I'm asking staff. How long was this here? How long was this contract running, sitting around the county before it got signed?
It was ready for the last agenda. Was on the.
No, I'm saying, before it was signed on on one eleven, when was the contract here? Anybody know that? I mean, I don't, that's what I'm saying, I I don't know why we just can't.
That contract was verbally executed the day that we ran tests, which was December the twenty-fourth, period. That contract becomes valid on December twenty-fourth. The formality of it, and just so you know, the contract itself actually got date, backdated to December first. So if there were, and 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 again, one more important piece to understand about the spawn contract is that we, in emergency management, namely me, went to the city of Corpus Christi and made certain that people's tests could still be completed after we hit that not to exceed. Why did we hit the not to exceed?
Judge, nobody's arguing with.
There were eight thousand tests that got done.
Value of the contract and that it was the right contract and it was a good.
Right, and it was an urgent need and we did it properly.
Before it got signed when we had an agenda. That's it.
Because it was already done under the December twenty-fourth date. I mean, you you all.
And executed on the eleventh and the twelfth. All I'm saying is, why couldn't.
As a formality, it was mysterious.
Been put on the agenda for us to see and for, and for us to tell the world what a great thing was done. This, no one is arguing.
You have made a complete
Oh, here we go.
decision to not say that you want to see any contracts. You said that you don't want to ratify them. Your county attorney has said they're already contracts. If I've signed them under my four eighteen powers, so why do, why do you now, you now want to see them? I, I'm the one that said, bring everything, and you said, don't bring everything.
I want to see them before they're signed.
Right, you can't do that if it's urgent need. I guess you wanted to spend Christmas Eve with me, because that's when we did the deal.
We had an agenda on one five. We could have brought it on the fifth. We would have voted for it, and then you would have been able to sign it on the sixth or the tenth.
Already done. It was already done on December twenty-fourth. I mean.
I just have a question for the county attorney. So Jenny, the language that we have is sufficient to process payment?
The, the language on the agenda as it stands is not a vote to ratify or not the contract that was executed. So as far as the question of whether it can be paid or not, we have already asked for guidance from the attorney general. And we're not issuing anything, you know, until we have that guidance from the attorney general.
Okay, I I'm gonna have to.
We're not issuing what?
Okay.
I'm not gonna say anything contrary.
I'm gonna have to visit with you about that.
What she's saying, finish her.
I've already heard that.
She said she's not saying anything contrary to what?
Our request to the attorney general is to find out whether the powers that are executed uh by the emergency manager, management, uh emergency director here are sufficient without ratification from the court to pay the bill.
They have always been, they have always been. There is nothing contrary in the law today that would even dare suggest anything else. We have run RFRs. Are we gonna lose it?
There's an attorney general.
We might be. Hold on, hold on.
Three in the room.
Hold on, hold on.
They're in the room.
Could you sit, anyone?
He's okay.
Okay. Okay, all right.
I think we're way off point here, so I.
Well, I I think we're way off point too. I mean, all I can say is that, again, we're going to hopefully encourage all of you to understand that you are welcome so that you can be a part of these FEMA discussions, one at a time, of course, uh not multiple times. And there is, um, obviously a a disconnect that we can, if you want to put on another agenda item, or I can speak to you directly, but I don't know what the concern is. We have always, always done.
I don't have any concern. I just want a yes or no to process payment. That's it.
We've processed payment on every contract. Just so you know, I bind the con, I bind the county once I sign. You see this right here? The minute I sign it, I bind them.
But Judge, there's an attorney general's opinion that's been issued in Goliath County. That's why I think she's asking.
We're off, we're off topic. I'd love to put it on the agenda. I'd love to discuss that with you.
We can't, that's what I had on.
But I'm happy, that's not the issue here. If you want to talk about processing payment, let's put it on the agenda. But we can't do that right now. And I know all about that case. And we actually, remember I just said we have FEMA PA one hundred percent advanced funding? That's why we did that. So that we would have a funding source that this court accepted and approved that is here now, that TIDAM has already said we will draw down against. You are earning money on dollars that this job as emergency manager brought to this county.
So let me help out on here. I think we have to pay this contract because that attorney general opinion was not made aware to this, to to this court until after she's done that. That was why I put on and then tabled to discuss, look, we've got to get some clarity now to me. I get it's just an opinion, but it is an opinion that.
It's an opinion. That's all it means. We run the statute.
That's the only thing out there now related to anything, because there is no case law on this. So that may be the point, that again, we may need to get some sort of deck of action with the courts to give us clearance on.
Go right ahead. Go right ahead. I mean, I want, I want to make sure that if you have future agenda items, just get them on, but we've got to be able to stick to this.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with paying spawn on this contract, because I don't think.
I'm glad, because that's, that's important.
I'm just trying to help. I mean, sorry.
You're doing what?
I was just trying to help on this contract, so there's no dispute, so that, so I just rendering an opinion.
There is no, there is no dispute.
Well, there's a, I think there is a long-term dispute, but on this one, I don't, I don't know what we do. I mean, I just would ask that any of these contracts going forward be put on the agenda.
Only if they are, don't meet the eligibility of urgent need. That's, we follow the law here. That's how it works. Emergency management follows the law. And the law is, and our emergency plan states, that where there is urgent need, that we be able to sign contracts. And let me just say to you that what you're suggesting is that puts this county and all the two hundred fifty-three counties in serious peril if you think that during urgent need or during times of crisis when there is a declared emergency, that we would need to come to commissioners' court to execute contracts. That is completely contrary to the Disaster Act of nineteen seventy-five. It is completely contrary to any way, shape or form, the way we have been conducting business in the past.
But Judge, because of.
And it's absolutely clear to me that what you need is a legislative fix. Go get it done.
Or a league, or a, or a, or a court fix to give us a court order. That's all I need.
Fix that would, that would probably be joined by all two hundred fifty-three counties, TAC and CUC, Brent. There is a reason that incident command structure is done the way it's done.
I understand all that.
It's the reason the governor has the ability to suspend laws and procurement, jump on there. So when you attack these powers, you are attacking the governor's powers to do the very same thing in urgent need. We're not talking about things that are not urgent need.
Attorney general just, just issued an opinion that indicates.
On budgetary issues only.
That bind, commit, bind court with with funding.
Budgetary issues.
Right, no, but it, but it's funds. These are all taxpayer funds. They're not, they're not out of any way.
I'd love to have this debate with you. Let's go have it at a, at a mock trial in front of a hundred kids. Let's not do it here because it doesn't make any sense. You want to argue that the merits of a case.
Trying to wrap this up. I mean, I am, but you keep bringing, I'm, I'm ready to move on.
No, I.
And and we can put it on for another agenda. That's why I tabled it to put it on for another agenda.
I'm happy, I'm happy to have it, but that case is a hundred percent distinctive. And again, I thought the whole point was to learn more about the contract. That's why we have it on there. To understand what that contract did. You talk about transparency.
Judge, she's just asking a question on getting it paid.
Right, and what I'm saying to her is, you do it the way we've done every other contract for two years. The invoice comes in, it's a valid contract legally when we have offer and acceptance. I signed. I signed under a power that is absolutely a part of our emergency management plan, which needs to be read, because that plan, it has exceptions to the procurement in addition to all the powers that we have over here. And those get questioned every single time. And that's why those contracts get vetted. You know what we also did by executing this new contract? We didn't just cure the idea of, wow, the cartridges went from X to Y. We also were able to add strengthening language for FEMA. So Hagerty looked at that contract, county attorney looked at that contract, Chris DeSpahn looked at that contract, the city of Corpus Christi executed the same contract. We have a process here that protects this county. What hurts this county is when we don't live up to our commitments. And when we don't understand that we need to have extra support for emergency management, who's doing what it takes to get this done. You know the worst thing in the world is to know that when you execute those contracts, that you're gonna have a court that's gonna say, you know, maybe you shouldn't have done that. Rather than celebrate the fact that we have the funding in our own treasury to get it done and to keep people safe. This is what's so distressing for us, is that we're working overtime without the support that we need. And all the support is, is understanding the law.
Can we just move on so I don't.
Understanding the law.
I don't want. Have any problems with the contract, because it's great. We need to provide to the community. My only question is here because the language is different from the other ones. So that's the only question that I just want to make sure. And I want to defer that to the county attorney.
She got the contract. They looked at the contract.
Yeah, the contract is fine. It's just the language.
Yeah, can we just move on? I'm tired of getting.
It is fine.
Said we're, we're terrible people, so can we just move on so I can go be a terrible person somewhere else?
Who said that?
Oh, my gosh, every time you say, I'm, I wish we could celebrate.
You just said it about yourself. I, I didn't say a word. Brent, be, we'll get you a little bit of help. You're fine. You're, you're a fine person.
That's the pot calling the kettle black, so.
Okay, we have a lot of work to do.
Move on, we're so off point. You made your point, Judge, over and over and over.
I was talking to Ms. Hernandez directly.
We would like to leave. We've already, we've done the court's business. I don't.
I appreciate that you're not the presiding officer, and once I gavel us out, we will. I wanted to have that conversation with Aday. Please don't interrupt. We're done there. Thank you, okay? Thank you, Aday. Um, I'm gonna move to adjournments and memory. And, um, I have one, but if you need to leave, let us know and we can do it next time.
No, I can do it. I'm ready to go. I have two, two. Whenever you'd like to go, go ahead.
No, I'll go last. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, the first one that I have, and I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time reading it on my phone, is Roland Romero Martinez, who passed away on January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. This is the brother of Rosie Hicks. He was born on July sixth. To Romero and Flor- and Flori- Florinda Martinez in Corpus Christi, preceded in death by his wife Lori and father Romero, survived by many relatives. Uh, in his younger days, he was a student athlete, standout athlete excelling in football and baseball for Moody High School. In the early and mid seventies, hit the first home run in Moody baseball history. I thought that was pretty cool, that regional play, at the regional playoff level. Thought that was pretty cool, considering how great Moody baseball has always been. He was one of the pioneers that helped start the legendary traditions of the Moody baseball program. Was also very proficient in martial arts, earning his first degree of black belt in the late seventies. Our, my condolences and the court's condolences, I know, on, um, um, the loss of Mr. Martinez. Uh, my second one is, um, uh, Bill McIntyre. He was the father of, uh, Jack McIntyre, uh, local eye doctor here and, um, former father-in-law of Colleen McIntyre, former city councilperson here. Um, and, um, he was someone that, he lived a long and and fruitful life. I think, um, ninety-four, ninety-five years old. Uh, but he was a, I didn't know him personally, but I know how fondly Colleen and was of him and how much, um, um, his son loved him. So condolences to the McIntyre family as well.
Commissioner, do you have any?
I just found out a friend of mine, uh, Abel Perez. We were high school buddies. And, uh, he passed away Saturday, I believe. And he was a Vietnam veteran. My condolences to his family. Thank you.
Okay. I also asked Maggie. Okay. I also asked Maggie, I don't know, did we get any more information on Ms. Garcia's mother from yesterday?
Well, I just, in the same vein, um, I just found out yesterday, but I'll, uh, make certain that I do a more proper tribute to a dear friend of ours in the hospice world. Um, that's Ivan Garcia. And her mother passed away, and we will make certain that we honor her, uh, with her, um, but I guess next court would be the most appropriate time. And then I also had, um, let me just pull it up here. I told you about Nick Adame's son last time. His name, his full name was Aaron Gabriel. And Aaron Gabriel Adame gained his wings on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Aaron was born on July twentieth, twenty-third, nineteen ninety, to Dr. Nicholas and Sylvia Adame, and was raised in Corpus Christi. He was an amazing son, brother, uncle, and friend. He was a graduate of Mary Carroll High School, class of two thousand and eight. He then went to study his passion in theater arts at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. While attending, while attending there, Aaron started one of the original LULAC collegiate councils. He pursued his dream of traveling the world, doing what he loves, working on theater productions. Aaron dedicated his time volunteering at the local Aurora Arts Theater on his downtime from tutoring. Aaron was described as loving, big-hearted, kind, and ambitious. He always had a smile, even through his darkest days. He could light up any room he entered. He was such a light in people's lives and great best friend to all. He loved every person in his life, especially his family. He is survived by his parents, Dr. Nicholas Sylvia Adame, six brothers and sisters, Sonia Adame, Dominic Adame, Oscar Guerra, Nicholas Adame, Elaine Herrera, Nikki Logan. Additionally, he was uncle to eight nieces and godfather, uh, to Isaiah. Uh, special gratitude, uh, went out in the obituary to Krista Spawn Shoreline, the eighth floor oncology staff, particularly Dr. Aftab Mohammed, and Dr. Maria Zarzour, also an oncologist at MD Anderson. And, um, uh, actually today is the viewing, for anybody that knows the Adame family, from five to seven. A rosary is following tonight at Memory Gardens. And tomorrow, oh my goodness, I'm wrong about that. Today is Thursday. So Thursday, Mass is today, at, gosh, it was at ten o'clock. Yesterday was the viewing. We missed that. Um, at any rate, our condolences go out to the whole LULAC family. Uh, LULAC number one is the original LULAC. Nick Adame has been a, uh, Delmore Board of Regents. He has been a huge activist of this community. Wherever there is injustice, Nick is there. And, um, it seems like an injustice to me that his beautiful boy was taken from him at age thirty. Our children were the same age, and it just, we're all just heartsick about the loss of this beautiful child. So at any rate, um, our condolences to all those that had adjournments in memory today, and, um, we are, uh, adjourned for the clerk. It's ten two eight, ten twenty-eight AM. Thank you.